Hi, good evening. Hello, everybody. Welcome. We're gonna get going here, so I'm gonna call to order this meeting of the Board of Education. If you could please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
It's America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in the great and eternal.
Thank you. Can I get a motion approved in the meeting agenda? Dr. Francis? All those in favor of approving the meeting agenda? Alright, pass this five zero. Thank you. So the first order of business is our recognitions, which I'm guessing is why most of you are here tonight. So Mr. Mayo and I are gonna step over that way. Yep. Alright, so this is one of my favorite parts of what we do. We actually get to recognize our students and staff for some of their achievements. So what we will do is work through each group. We ask that you would remain here until the end of the recognitions tonight. At that point, we'll take a brief pause, and everybody can stick around and watch the rest of the Board of Education meeting. Now, okay, that wasn't on your plan? Alright, so first up would be the Greenwich Public Schools Para-Educator of the Year finalist and the winner, so Larry Ford, where are ya? There you are.
Hi. In March 2013, Connecticut State Education, Department of Education, Connecticut Department of Education, and the School Para-Professional Advisory Council renamed the Connecticut Para-educator of the Year Award to be called the Anne Marie Murphy Para-educator of the Year Award, in honor of Anne Marie Murphy, a special education para-professional who was killed in Newtown. Anne Marie worked one-on-one with Dylan Hockley, who had special education needs, and protected him with her body as they both died on that horrible day. Superintendent and school administrators in Greenwich are invited to nominate one Para-educator who has demonstrated exceptional skill and dedication in the performance of their job. Identification of the 2020 Para-educator of the Year will be made at a ceremony held in Hartford in the fall. The 2020 Para-educator of the Year will serve for the 2020 calendar year. And individually, we recognize each of the Para-educators that we've nominated to be considered for the Greenwich Para-educator of the Year. The Anne Marie Murphy Para-educator of the Year program recognizes outstanding Para-educator contributions to schools and communities, and it honors Para-educators who have demonstrated exceptional skill in their performance of their jobs. This year, we have two Para-professional Para-educator nominees. Unfortunately, we're only allowed to send one name to the state. Even though we call every year and ask for an exception, they say no, and they've told me to please stop calling. But we always have exceptional people that we want to send forward. So we're here tonight to honor our two people. I will introduce them both, and then I will tell you which one of the two has been selected to represent Greenwich at the state awards ceremony. So first, I'm gonna ask Suzanne Coyne, the Assistant Principal from Western Middle School, to introduce our first candidate for the Anne Marie Murphy Para-educator Award, Ms. Julie Pisani. Please, please hold your applause until the end, and then we'll give you an opportunity to recognize both of our outstanding Para-educators.
Good evening. Ms. Julie Pisani. Ms. Pisani has worked at Western for the last eighteen years. That alone means she deserves this award. And anyone watching her would think it's her first year because of her enthusiasm and patience she shows for students each day. And these are with some of our most challenging students in the school. Those that helped nominate her can describe her best. Ms. Pisani is flexible in her, in tune with her students' daily moods, successes and challenges. She knows when to step in and assist academically, behaviorally, or emotionally. She's able to de-escalate potential situations with her ability to read student cues, remain neutral, positive, yet firm. Ms. Pisani refuses to accept a student's worst effort, and she celebrates their success, big or small, with genuine enthusiasm. By creating relationships built upon high expectations, respect, and encouragement, Ms. Pisani is able to greatly impact on only her students, but the classrooms lucky enough to have her. Julie, thank you for all you've done to support the students and staff at Western. How about another eighteen years? No? Oh, just go. Come on up.
Jen Benzavango to please come up and introduce Ms. Ryan Mayo. No relation.
I brought my sidekick, Rafi Lindia, with me. She's really the person to give the award today. Ryan Mayo begins each day checking in with her special education teachers for her students, and determines individual needs for the day. She quickly anticipates areas of focus, engages next steps within seconds of arrival, sometimes needing to adjust her plans to address unexpected behavioral blips, or extend an academic lesson when her students are ready for a challenge. Her day is so diverse, it often includes facilitated communication between peers, supporting play-based interactions in kindergarten, data literacy in fifth grade, and everything in between. Her work with our students is vital, as she is their most constant learning support in any given day. And when students are adjusting for personalities and expectations of each teacher, Ryan quickly becomes their voice, their constant, and the greatest support to facilitating what can be very challenging for students with language processing and social language challenges, often in play with students with more comprehensive learning needs. But above all, Ms. Mayo is a beloved member of our school community and student support team. Her students continue to grow and flourish as a direct result of her dedication and genuine love for the children each and every day. She is most deserving of this recognition, and we couldn't be more proud to honor her today. As Rafi put it, "I just love her."
As I said earlier, both Ms. Mayo and Ms. Pisani are examples of all of the best qualities of Anne Marie Murphy and the rest of Connecticut's Para-educators. However, we can only send one nominee forward. It is therefore my pleasure to introduce you to the 2020 Greenwich nominee for the Anne Marie Murphy Para-educator of the Year Award, Ms. Julie Pisani. You may all clap.
Alright, next up is the Senior Class President, and actually, our Student Government President, who can't be with us because of a minor injury. Ms. Rayman?
Hi, I'm Lauren Raymond, and I am the Liaison to Student Government from the Board of Ed, and it's my pleasure, as the Liaison to Student Government Executive Committee, to recognize and thank our outgoing Senior Class President, James Heavy, and Student Body President, Alex Kostakoff, who couldn't be here, he's having surgery on his wrist right now. And on behalf of the entire Board and Administration, we thank you for using your student voice, often with humor, and to inform us on the issues of importance such as student spirit, decreasing student stress, and what to do with opportunity block. Having participated in your monthly Executive Committee meetings, it was an honor to hear your ideas, offer you feedback, and see you all grow and expand in your leadership roles and your dedication to the students you represent.
You know, we attended a meeting monthly with the Student Government Leadership, and I just have to say that Jamie and Alex were such a force, and were such leaders on that committee. SRO had thirty-five students signed up. Jamie went out, and Alex went out, and then they made it a hundred and...how many was it? Hundred and twenty-five at the end. So they're the embodiment of school spirit. Go Cardinals!
They also, by the way, address the Board at every meeting, so if you stick around a little while, you'll get to hear the humorous side and also meet the incoming folks every other time. Alright, so next up is the Euro Challenge, Federal Reserve Challenge, Mr. Telemann.
I want to begin by discussing what the Econ Club actually is. About four years ago, this group was founded by a group of sophomores who just graduated last year. They wanted to have their own club that took part in economics competitions. I at first said, "No, thank you." I had a lot of things going on, child on the way, taking over the Model UN Group, which is a lot of work, and they persisted and persisted until I said, "Okay, let's see how this goes. You guys are sophomores, none of you have taken Econ, and you want to do these Econ competitions. How are we gonna make this work?" So we made it work. Every Thursday, they came after school, they learned Econ, and they took part in their first competition. And they came in first in Connecticut, which was an amazing, amazing thing. In the time since then, we've now expanded that group to include students from ninth all the way through twelfth grade, and we have unwittingly made a full program that has ninth and tenth graders do the Euro Challenge, and eleventh and twelfth graders do the Federal Reserve Challenge. At the heart of both of those competitions is monetary and fiscal policies, and the challenge of implementing them, whether in a Euro area of nineteen different countries that use the same currency, or in the United States. Twelve Federal Reserve regions with very different backgrounds, regions, and needs. And they also require teamwork. Students take roles, they have to cooperate, they have to suggest policies, sometimes they have to debate, and they all have to do it within a certain timeframe that makes it really challenging. That said, I've probably spent a hundred hours with this group of students over the last year. I went into the city with them five times to see them compete, stayed after school until five o'clock some days with them to give them pointers and to make them redo everything that they did the day before. And ultimately, I really got to see them grow. They would deserve recognition, whether or not they did really well. And by the way, they did really well. I'm gonna go back a few years and say that both groups started with, I wouldn't call them, they just, they came up short in their first efforts at both competitions. In their first one, three years ago, the Euro Challenge was not invited back for the second round. The Federal Reserve Challenge, two years ago, their first run, were not invited back to the second round. Last year, the Euro Challenge made the semifinals and then finished fourth in the whole competition. This year, they again made the semifinals. This year, the Federal Reserve Challenge made the finals, made third in the whole competition. So I can honestly recognize that the students I'm gonna call up here tonight are the, now, they went from being also-rans with no knowledge of economics, some of them, to being the elite in the competitions. Every bit as worthy of winning as any of the other teams there. So that said, I'm gonna call them up. We have certificates for you, and Melissa has the trophy for the Federal Reserve Team, so when we take the picture, we'll make sure to have that trophy out. So first, we'll have Melissa come up. Melissa Wu. Catherine Yang. Jovi Aling. Kent Schneider. Monique Nikolov. This is your Federal Reserve Team. And then for our Euro Challenge Team, Sophia Pronina, Wyatt Radson, Uma Penpar, David Katz, Adam Kaufman, Luke Myers, and Autumn Kim. Thank you, everybody.
We have Ms. Fancher and Ms. Byrne.
I'm Lisa Fancher, and I am the coach of the Greenwich High School Odyssey of the Mind Team. For the past three years, Hamilton Avenue, Eastern Middle School, and Greenwich High School have participated in Odyssey of the Mind, an international educational problem-solving activity that takes, has one competition, the state tournament, every year, and if you place first or second at the states, you go on to world finals. Students learn to work as a team, cooperate, work in a budget, and problem solve, and be creative while doing it. And really, the process is more important than the results. So they work from September until March for the state tournament, and these three teams went on to the world finals at Michigan State University, and they participated in the competition with forty-four states and eighteen international teams over Memorial Day weekend. This was an amazing once-in-a-lifetime experience for these students. They got to be surrounded by kids from all over the world, excuse me, and they got to really experience being part of a team. They got to learn from other kids, they got to show their creativity, their resilience, and we're very, very proud of all of the students. I'd like to invite the Hamilton Avenue Team to stand up and join me. Isabella Rahabak, Destiny Alexander, Rio Lowell, Michael Fratero Sanchez, Leah Herrera, and Giorgio McGlades.
So can I have my team come up and join me, please? We just have a few of our team here tonight, 'cause several of them had other engagement this evening. But let's have a big thank you and congratulations for our team members here tonight. We've got Cindy Lee, Uma Graz, and Grace Darno. Our other team members who are not able to be with us tonight were Kira Dibas, my daughter, Naomi Park, Amrutha Nandakumar, and Hanon Stern. So we did a great job, and thanks a lot.
The team from Greenwich High School included Shera Mann, Alexander Rofanos, Ashwin Savamohan, and Marcus Mann. Please come up.
So what they didn't mention is the most impressive thing about Odyssey of the Mind is the adults don't help. The kids have to do everything on their own, and to just stand against the law and watch them do it is pretty amazing. Next up is the National History Day national competition. These folks have traveled a great distance, I think, today. So Mr. Hall? And I think Ms. Hawes, too. Just you?
So my name is Aaron Hall.
And I'm Courtney Hawes.
And we both coach National History Day at Greenwich High School in the We the People Program in INLAB. National History Day attracts more than 700,000 students each year from all fifty states, DC, Samoa, Guam, Puerto Rico, China, Korea, and South Asia. And our students prepare their projects in either individual or group exhibits, performances, documentaries, websites, and individual papers. Three thousand students from around the world make nationals, and we are literally coming right off the highway. In fact, two of the students that, or three of the students I'm gonna mention, are actually somewhere in New Jersey as we speak, so they're probably at a dead stop. So if I could have the following students come up. Cynthia Chen, Lupus Gazianis, Alex Hanna, Toby Hirsch, and Emile Perdue. And while they're coming up, they created a senior group website on ranked choice voting that is already garnering quite a bit of attention. We were sharing articles about, several of our presidential candidates are interested in seeing this work. It had a significant role to play in the Maine elections. We also have Callie Headbabbney and Sadie Krieger are two of our students that are en route. They created a senior group exhibit on plastics in our oceans, to great claim. And Gracie McCooey did an individual senior performance on the amazing Hedy Lamarr. If you haven't looked up information about her, please do so. But phenomenal amount of work put in by these students, and quite an incredible accomplishment to send eight of our students among the few number that get to go to the University of Maryland and scramble back as quickly as they can to Greenwich, during finals, by the way. So round of applause for our National History Day.
The next recognition is the Boys Golf State Champion Team. Mr. Santilli, come on down.
It clearly takes a huge commitment to achieve what these young men have achieved, basically the past four years, but in the past few seasons, you know, three FCAC championships and back-to-back state championships. I think the biggest achievement or the biggest commitment they've made is probably this evening, knowing that the US Open is on right now, Tiger Woods is playing, and Jackson's streaming it in his pocket, Billy's DVRing it, Ben's dying to tell him what's going on. But these young men are probably some of the most amazing men that I've coached in my twenty years. Accomplishments obviously speak for their talent, but on and off the golf course, I can't say enough about all of them. I could go down the line and give you, you know, a big history of all of them, but I'm sure it would get kicked out of here. But, you know, all FCAC, Jackson, Freddie, and Tyler Sedell, who's not here this evening, all FCAC West, was Billy Nail, and Ben Ropiak, who is standing right behind me. You know, we started the season off solidly, but we had a little bit of a beat down by Brunswick twice, and the season could've went either way. But by the time we got to mid-May or so, we kind of started to, you know, show what this team is all about. And the Holland Championship, out of thirty All-Stars, Greenwich and these men behind me finish one, two, three, four, and five out of thirty players, which mathematically, I don't even think is possible, 'cause I've never seen that in my twenty years. Not only did they finish one through five, they had a seventy-three by a freshman who won it, a seventy-four, a seventy-four, a seventy-five, and seventy-five. So as a Darian coach said to us, and he didn't say it happily, he felt like the second event, the second-to-last Avengers movie, when the Hulk got beat down so much that he just couldn't come out of himself. It was at a Darian's golf course. But then they went into that week, and after I saw that, I said, "All right, we have some hope." There was articles in the paper saying that if Darian doesn't win the state championship, there should be an investigation. So we used that for a little hunger. And after that, they basically just mopped up the rest of the season, and every guy on the team broke eighty, which again, rarely ever happens in a postseason. So again, I could stand up here all night talking about it, but I just wanted to say that I'm extremely proud of all these gentlemen behind me, and I'm sad to see that my three seniors are leaving. It leaves a big hole in the lineup, but hopefully, there's a few seventh through eighth graders out there that are on the way up, and I'm sure that the people that we do have coming back, Tyler Sedell and Tyler Sedell, are gonna step up and take over for what we're about to lose. So we'll introduce the players. We have Billy Nail. Ben Ropiak. And Tyler Sedell. Glad you're lying to us, they're gonna stay, 'cause they're all going home to watch golf. How's Am I?
So I guess I'll just have John Michael, John Rowan, and Colin, if you wanna come up now while I explain what this is all about. So I'm Kate Bolger, and I, well, I guess I'm officially the coach, but I'm really just there to unlock the room for these guys. So we participate in a competition called Cyber Patriot, and starting in the fall, two teams from Greenwich High School participated in the Air Force Association's Cyber Patriot Competition. The competition this year competed more than 6,300 teams worldwide, competing over a handful of weekends during the fall and winter. Each competition lasted about six hours, starting Friday afternoons at 3:15, during which teams just like this were tasked with securing a computer running one of three computer operating systems. Like any competition, there are always ups and downs, this one with the sweet sound of a Mario tune playing every time the team would win points. This one with the sweet sound of a Mario tune playing every time the team would win points. Students are tasked with finding viruses, missing software updates, password policies, corrupt files, open courts, and more to secure points for the team. In Connecticut, there were 42 teams participating this year across three divisions. And after the two initial rounds, our teams found themselves in first and third place in the state, earning spots in the state round. After the state round, our teams were placed first and second of the 18 Connecticut teams that advanced, earning two spots in the semifinal round, from which 12 teams in the country are chosen for the finals. It was during the semifinal round that our team encountered a brick wall, otherwise known as the California Teams, during which dreams of an all-expense weekend competition in Baltimore faded. In the five years that we've participated, this is the first year that we've earned a spot in the semifinals, as well as the first time that we've placed first in the state. So congratulations, gentlemen. So Raoul. Colin Moreno. John Fernandez. John Trahanus. And Micah Trahanus. Smiling? Congratulations.
All right, next up is one I'm not going to understand at all. It's our Science Fair winners. So Mr. Bramonte, if you want to come down. Now this one, we have so many, I'm going to give you the certificates.
English, I will try. Hi, girls. Good evening. I'm Andy Bramonte, the science research teacher at Greenwich High School. It was another incredibly successful year for our research program. For the 10th year running, at least one GHS student was selected as a Regeneron Science Talent Search Scholar at Connecticut STEM, which is held in early February. Four of our students participated amongst 300 from the lower Connecticut area, ultimately competing for three top ISF prizes. And of course, GHS students won two of the three. At the Connecticut Science and Engineering Fair in March, 17 of our students competed. An astounding 16 of these kids were selected amongst the top 15% of projects as fair finalists and went on to win more than $85,000 in scholarships in cash and five of the six ISF spots that are awarded to the best projects in the fair. At Connecticut Junior Science and Humanities, or JSHS, four of the five top prizes were awarded to GHS researchers, including four trips to compete at the National JSHS in Albuquerque, New Mexico. There amongst the winners from all the other states, GHS students received first and second place finishes, totally more than another $20,000. On the same day, 11 student researchers participated in NCC's Science Fair here in Norwalk, taking five of the top 10 prizes. Two of our research students were selected for prestigious 2019 summer research programs, one for RSI at MIT and the other for Simmons, which is held at SUNY Stony Brook. And finally, only weeks ago, five GHS students competed amongst 1,200 of the brightest kids on the planet at Intel ISF in Phoenix. The results were once again outstanding. In total, GHS researchers won more than $150,000 this year in scholarships and awards. It was incredible. So will the following students please join me onstage as your name is called. I would suggest you sort of, there's potentially 18. So I'd probably go, you know, stand towards the front. And what I'm going to do is as I call each name, come on up, and then I'm going to tell you a little bit, a little snippet, about what each one of the students did this year. And as I call your name to describe it, could you please step forward? Cynthia Chen. Hallie Clausy. Sam Florin. Tyler Fox. Hannah Goldenberg. Bennett Colling. Hiba Hussein. Rayne Jane. Matt Jester. Autumn Kim. Alex Pajapoff, I guess, how you serving? That is news. Nick Liu. Colin Moreno. Shun Sakai. Justin Speaker. Zach Wang. Melissa Wu. And Kyle Jeong. Okay. So as I call your names, step forward. Cynthia Chen. For Cynthia, energy conservation remains at the form of our efforts to find alternate energies. Cynthia developed a smart window at a thin film using tungsten-dog vanadium dioxide that would allow infrared sunlight heating of the home in the winter, but block it in the summer months to keep the home cool. Awesome. Hallie Clausy developed a rapid portable solar power detection system for breast cancer. In her device, low levels of CA-15-3 antigen in a patient's saliva can distinguish between normal and stages 1 through 4 of breast cancer. Her device holds a lot of promise as a rapid detection system for both developed and underdeveloped countries. Sam Florin. Unlike many of our Science Fair projects, Sam's was more mathematical in scope and focused on gerrymandering, which is the creation of unfair voting districts for political gain. Sam developed a new metric based on graph theory that can examine and ensure appropriate alignment of districts so that it better represents the population relative to the surrounding region. Tyler. Tyler, many of us depend on plastics, plastic utensils, styrofoam plates for our summer picnics and barbecues. Unfortunately, these materials persist in our landfills for hundreds of years. Well, Tyler developed a new insulating tableware from cornstarch and water repellent thin film that offers the same properties. However, it decays in only days. It was awesome. Hannah? Hannah, step forward. Hannah completed a two-year study where she discovered many of the harmful components of e-cigarettes, including significant amounts of diacetyl, which causes irreversible lung damage, known as popcorn lung. She went on to discover that the more than 50 harmful components of e-cigarette papers include induced chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, much like their tobacco counterparts. So that certainly food for thought of many, as many people look to these devices as a cessation tool for tobacco cigarettes. They're just as bad. Hiba. Hiba developed a new treatment for heart disease often caused by accumulation of plaque within the patient's arteries. She engineered a nanotherapy that can magnetically deliver a light pace, a fat dissolving enzyme often found in the pancreas, to the arterial brokerage where her newly-designed smartphone app would sense the actual dissolution of the plaque in only minutes. It's really cool. Reyna? Recent research findings by Dr. Sam Ramsey, who visited GHS this spring, which is really cool, has provided compelling evidence that the disappearance of our honeybees can be attributed to the infestation of bee hives by the varroa destruction, which is a mite, a parasitic mite that draws fat bodies or liver from the honeybees. This fat body is really responsible for many of the functions of the honeybee. And it's now is very clear as to why they're starting to disappear in commonly collapsed disorder. Well, in Reyna's research, she developed a dual-function, dimethyl-emitting beehive entrance way that will remove and kill the varroa mite that are attached to the passing bees simply by their rubbing action as they go into the hive. This thing is incredible. Autumn Kim. Autumn developed a new honeybee venom peptide, PLGA nanotherapy, that can successfully cross the blood-brain barrier, which is really cool, to selectively target cancer cells based on their cell wall lipid content. Today, effective anti-cancer agents have been unable to do that. So it's really exciting. Colin. Colin, I'm going to try and get this right. Universal methods to treat cancer remain difficult due to the specificity of the many forms of the disease and desire to eradicate cancer cells while leaving the neighboring healthy cells unharmed. Colin tells me he dreamt of this treatment, later engineered it in a unique, precise, personalized treatment scheme using deoxyribosines as nucleic acid probes and molecular logic gates. In his genetic-based cancer treatment, mutations that lead to the formation of cancer cells are detected, triggering a cytotoxic protein during nucleic acid translation, which will kill only the cancer cells, leaving the healthy cells unharmed. Justin Speaker. With over 40 million cancer contact lens wearers in the US alone, many are susceptible to site-threatening infection due to poor lens hygiene. Justin developed an inexpensive and effective lens cleaning system based on use of riboflavin in UV light that prevents growth of even the most progressive infectious organisms. Awesome. Let's see. Melissa? Although skin melanoma is treatable, it still accounts for nearly 80% of skin cancer-related deaths due to poor detection and diagnosis, often by time-consuming and expensive biopsies. Well, Melissa tackled this problem and developed a portable, smartphone-based system where thermal and color images of the suspected lesion are taken and analyzed by the phone in only seconds to produce a diagnosis with better than 99% accuracy. And finally, Kyle Jeong. Last but not least, Kyle. Did I miss anybody? Sean, oh my God, I do this every time. I'll go back to you. Early diagnosis of Parkinson's, this is Kyle. Disease can lead to a better quality of life through management of the symptoms as well as cure through research with those afflicted by the early stages of the disease. For these to occur, early diagnosis must be simple and sure. Kyle developed a computer algorithm that can provide a certain diagnosis of the disease based on patient data and test results that are currently only marginally successful. And let's get back to Shun. Where are you, Sean? Ah, there you go. Water pollution is the focus of Shun's project. As mentioned many times, bacterial water contamination, particularly by cholera, can cause serious intestinal illness. Shun developed a rapid, simple, and effective water filtration device based on silver nanoparticles embedded in a sorry cloth that, when electrified, removes nearly all of the bacteria, making the water safe to drink. Wow, I lose my voice. How about a big hand for these guys?
These are your future Nobel Prize winners right here. Next up is the Connecticut Association of School Administrators, Administrator of the Year. Greenwich Administrator of the Year, Dr. Kara Bowles. Come on down.
I almost blew. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to recognize Mrs. Barbara Ricchio, who was honored on May 30th at the Connecticut Association of School Administrators as an Educator of the Year. This award goes to those administrators who go above and beyond the call of duty to support students in education. Barbara is retiring this year after 35 years in education. She has developed strong relationships with colleagues, families, and students alike. She is revered as someone who has created a warm collaborative culture within the New Lebanon School community. For six years, she has attended numerous board meetings, collaborated with architects, supported feasibility studies, and ultimately helped to influence the building of the new, beautiful New Lebanon School. Barbara leaves behind an outstanding state-of-the-art building that will serve our leaders and community for generations to come. Clearly, her legacy will be long-lasting. Please join me in thanking Barbara for her many years of dedication and service to our Greenwich community. She is very deserving of this award.
All right, Barbara's going to be sorely missed over at Newland for sure. Next up is the Greenwich Public Schools Teacher of the Year.
It's my great pleasure to introduce the Greenwich Teacher of the Year, who will go on into the competition for the Connecticut State Teacher of the Year competition. Crystal Kissman. Crystal, come on up here. Crystal's the embodiment of personalized learning. She has taken this strategy and has made it her own. When you enter her classroom, you can see her students hard at work. They are self-directed rather than teacher-directed. They work at their own pace, choosing projects that meet the learning goals that they have established for themselves. We would all have benefited from being a student in Crystal's classroom. Crystal has transformed how teaching and learning looks in the classroom. I am proud to present Crystal Kissman as the Greenwich Public Schools Teacher of the Year. Blake Lee Steinbach, who's the co-chair of the Distinguished Teachers Committee, come up. Blake Lee? No, Blake Lee? There you are. Chair.
I thought we were going to practice our comedy routine this time. Hello, good evening. The Distinguished Teachers Awards Committee has been recognizing excellence in teaching in the Greenwich Public Schools for 35 years now. As a distinguished teacher selected by the committee this year, Miss Kissman personifies a criteria of a truly distinguished teacher, and she has her own fan club. On behalf of our committee, I congratulate you and wish you luck in the state program. Congratulations.
You know what's a like today? Invite Christine Edwards to come up. She's representing the Kiwanis Club, but she's also on the Distinguished Teachers Committee.
Thank you. We're pleased as the Kiwanis Club in Greenwich to provide her with a award on behalf of Joseph Mitchell Kay, who was a member of the Board of Education, an extremely active Kiwanian, president of the Kiwanis, and what we call the lieutenant governor for a district for New England. And on behalf of the Kiwanis, we present her with the Joseph Mitchell Kay Award. And thank you.
All right. So we have amazing students, teachers, parents, obviously. Thank you all for coming. And next, we have two special recognitions. So Mr. Mayo, please come back over here. So first, Peter Tessie was unable to be here tonight, but the town has issued a certificate of special recognition in honor of Mr. Mayo's continued dedication to the Greenwich Public Schools, especially for his service as the interim superintendent of the town of Greenwich. Next up will be Angela Schmidt and Jen Benzamengo for the Greenwich School Administrators.
I distinctly remember calling Ralph last May after an end-of-year meeting with Ann Caravillo, and he answered the phone with his go-to greeting of "What's up, girl?" I told him, "Ralph, I just met with Ann, and I told her you were the man for the job of superintendent, and if they'd ask, you'd say yes." And he laughed and said, "Well, Jennifer, no one called yet, but I'm glad I have at least one person's vote of confidence." We had a good laugh, and about a week later, I sat in the boardroom and applauded proudly as he was named interim superintendent of schools. What few know about Ralph is what a silent but strong support system he is. Last year, when one of my teachers passed away suddenly, he was my first call because he is and always will be a mentor and frankly, a second father to me in many ways. He pushed me when I needed to be pushed, holds me back when I'm in the clouds. And not only did he check on my staff daily that week, but came by school to make sure we were doing all doing okay and to see if we needed any help. And this as the Eastern Middle School principal, not in any other leadership role but colleague. And that is the mark of a true leader. His leadership came at a time when we truly needed it, and he has led this district with pride and unwavering dedication as its superintendent. Thank you for your leadership, your mentorship, your friendship now and always.
So I'm losing my voice. So if it does, I'll turn it back to Jen. I first met Ralph as an assistant principal and a new member of GOSE. Ralph was the co-president, and I remember thinking there was no one he didn't know. Over the years, I got to know Ralph as his co-president and often sat across negotiation tables with him to the wee small hours. We worked together with many superintendents, and each one presented a new and unique opportunity for Ralph as he shared knowledge of his town to pave the way to mutual understanding and respect. Ralph was that co-president who always defended our membership and fought for fair and equitable solutions. As principal at Eastern, Ralph reached out to his feeder of schools to try to ease transitions from elementary to middle and to build greater collaboration between our staff and his. That collaboration is his legacy and continues today as we still visit each other's rooms and plan for student success. One of my favorite memories of Ralph has always been being able to check in on my old students and know he would have a story to share. This year, I was reminded that as GOSE co-presidents, Ralph and I always hoped to work with a superintendent who would make a difference and with whom we could find common ground. Well, guess what, Ralph? We found one. It was you. During our monthly meetings and phone calls, you always listened and heard the issues we brought forward with care and mutual respect. Ralph's mantra is and always has been "Kids first." And this shared concern allowed us to resolve more issues than I have seen in all my years as co-president. We thank you, Ralph, for your guidance, support, and most of all, for taking the time to listen. We will miss your leadership, and don't be surprised if we still have you on speed dial. Thank you.
All right. So next up is Carol Sutton from the GEA.
All right. Don't worry, Ralph. I'm not gonna say anything embarrassing. Well, I'll tell one story. So I met Ralph many decades ago, over three decades ago. And even when I met him for the first time back in the eighties, when I first met him, I knew he was extremely special to the school and to the school community and to everyone he touched. Ralph has seriously done everything in the district. He's done everything. He was a teacher. He was an athletic coach. He was a class advisor. He was up there with SRO, doing that with a good friend of mine. He was the head of student activities. He was a housemaster. He was a principal. And finally, he's the superintendent of schools, and it has been just tremendous to work with him for the past thirty-plus years. And as I said at convocation, when it comes to GEA, Ralph is truly one of us. He is one of the teachers. That's where he began. So since Angela, you know, shared a favorite story, I think Ralph may not even remember this, but I do remember years and years ago, we took the ninth graders for a few years to Camp Sloan up in, I guess up in Lakeville, Connecticut, and we did it overnight. And I do remember that the first time we took them, Ralph was the housemaster, and I would do anything, so I went. And we were, the students didn't really understand what a sleeping bag was, what it really meant for late October. So, you know, people were a little bit cold, but we were fine. And I just remember standing by the lake at one point with ninth graders. We had a bonfire and Ralph truly watching a lunar eclipse. And we were out in the woods, and we're watching this lunar eclipse, just amazed. And I remember Ralph standing there and saying, "The trip's gonna be fine. Everything's gonna be fine." And in a way, I see that as metaphorical for this year. We went into a little bit of darkness when we lost yet another superintendent. And out of that darkness, because of Ralph, we slowly came back into the light. And that's what happened. And for some people, that is going to be a fond memory. The other thing I would say about Ralph is that many administrators say, "I'm a collaborative administrator. My door is always open." And sometimes it's true. But with Ralph, it is always true. And when it came to the GEA leadership, he listened to us. He took notes. He brought the notes out and said, "The last time we were together, we talked about this." When I asked him to speak with teachers, he did. He always listened to our concerns. And even better, he always asked me how I was doing. And that's gonna make me choke up because that doesn't happen often either from the superintendent. So Ralph, we're gonna miss you. GEA's gonna miss you. We're so glad you're not going very far. And since this is the week of swag, so Ralph gets a bag, you know. Ralph gets a shirt. Ralph, I'm gonna give Mr. Bernstein his after-negotiations. We'll see what that looks like. And Ralph gets a sticker, and Ralph gets a donation to the GEA Scholarship Fund to honor him and his service. So thank you, Ralph, and thank you, everyone.
All right. So next up are Karen Mersch and Christian Diamond from the PTA Council.
It is truly an honor to thank Ralph Mayo on behalf of Greenwich PTA Council. Ralph, you stepped in at a crucial time for the district and worked incredibly hard this year to not only learn the role of a superintendent, but to lead. We simply can't thank you enough for your adaptability and willingness to serve where needed. You were the right person at the right time to step in and help bridge a lot of gaps for us and to work with all parties. Parents were thrilled to see you. Staff were thrilled to see you in the buildings throughout the district, and the kids were excited to know who you were. From a council perspective, Karen and I had the pleasure of meeting with you for all those Monday meetings, and council members were grateful that you came to our monthly council meetings to listen to our concerns and to share district updates. When you took over this position, we are sure you never imagined some of the crazy things you would have to handle. The budget was definitely a huge challenge, but you took on the task with zeal. Thankfully, the snow days were a few, and the weather wasn't too bad. But the one thing we did have an abundance of was water. Yes, this was the year of the flood, and your calm demeanor certainly led us through the challenges here at Cos Cob, Greenwich High School, and even the flood at Ham F. As a district, we certainly learned from the challenges, and we were proud of the cooperation that we witnessed as schools reached out and welcomed children, and even the Boys and Girls Club and the YWCA helped us out. Another highlight of your year as superintendent was the opening of the new New Lebanon School. And what a joy to see that new building become a reality after so many years of planning. In closing, we are just thrilled that you took on the job and hope your transition to interim headmaster at GHS is an easy switch. And while we have no idea of the challenges you will face as headmaster of GHS, we certainly hope the next year will be much drier. The next thing is, the nice thing is that this is not a goodbye, but a heartfelt thank you. On behalf of council, we have a gift for you. It is not a book or a tie. It may be a writing implement, which you can use when you sign all those diplomas next year. Thank you.
I'm gonna wrap up the celebrity roast of Mr. Mayo in a moment. No, 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 stay right there. So I actually, I had been to Eastern to visit the school, I don't know, probably about a month before. We had a need, an opening, perhaps, and walked the building with Ralph. And you can walk any school with Ralph, or you can walk anywhere in town with Ralph, and everybody knows Ralph. He's truly the man about town and the man about the schools. And he took that to heart this year. He spent a lot of time in the buildings. But I spent that time with him, and I was just amazed by the energy in the building and everything that goes on with the teachers, with the students. It really was an amazing thing to see firsthand. So not very long thereafter, we had a need. Turns out, Mr. Mayo held a certificate for the superintendency. Who knew, right? Yeah, exactly. Who would've known you prior? So when I called him and asked if he'd like to be considered for the position of interim superintendent, his response was just what you would expect. Whatever the district needs, for however long the district needs, I'm just here to help. And he really meant that, and he means it now. You know, from the roof at JC to the budget, to the water, to every little thing, you have risen to the challenge. I remember a previous interim superintendent said, "Well, interim superintendents come in a couple flavors. There's the ones that come in and they keep the seat warm. There's the ones that come in and they burn the place down. And then there's the ones that come in and kind of keep things moving." You don't really fit into any of those categories because you definitely didn't sit still. You didn't burn anything down. We had a lot of water, no fire. And you didn't just keep things moving. I mean, the progress in the district this year is palpable. It's utterly amazing. And I think some of that is really a testament to you, the calmness that you've brought to this position. Really, it speaks so much. I know Lauren thinks we have a secret friendship. You're a friend, you're a neighbor, but I've learned a lot from working with you. And if there's anything I learned, it's whatever the next challenge is, that's the next challenge we're gonna tackle. So I, as a parent, and not a board member, but a parent of an incoming ninth grader, I am so thrilled you're going to be at Greenwich High School next year. Absolutely thrilled. For those of you who don't know, this was Ralph's dream job. And so this is sort of the opportunity of, I think, you know, for you to fulfill that dream. And I'm so happy that you're going there, and that's something that you've always wanted. And if you see the energy when he's in the school and he's interacting with the students, it's a little different than when he's interacting with us at meetings or with staff. That's where you wanna be. I know you miss being with the students, but we appreciate everything you've done this year. So first, Kenna, I know you're here somewhere. When this is all over, the board would like you and Ralph to have a nice evening at a restaurant I know you both enjoy. But we also have something else for you. And typically, this is a gift that's given to departing board members and people that have been around a long time. And it's something, you know, you should probably wait to have, so I might keep it. And I know forty-two's not enough. I might keep this in the box, but it's a school belt. And it's engraved on it, and we really do appreciate everything that you've done for us, everything you're going to do for us. And, you know, I value every moment of our friendship, so please don't go far away. All right. This one pains me. I mean, really pains me. Like, he's going down the street, okay? This one pains me. It pains most parents. Kim Eves, you're gonna have to come stand here. I'm sorry. Yeah, you do. I know you like to sit in the back. No, it's not gonna happen. Kim has been a part of the Greenwich Public Schools for nineteen years. She's part of the institution, part of something every parent has, and I'm gonna talk more about you later. But right now, I'm actually... Chief Heavy, are you still here? Oh, chief, hey. Peter Tessie wasn't here. Would you mind reading this for me? Thanks.
Certificate of Special Recognition presented to Kimber Lee Eves in honor of her nineteen years of dedicated service to Greenwich Public Schools, especially for her service as Director of Communications, celebrated on this thirteenth day of June 2019. Peter J. Tessie, First Select. There's more. So of course, I'm not as funny or as entertaining as the other James Heavy. Oh, he's still here, good. Real quick, I just wanna say, I wanna thank you. I've been the police chief for seven and a half years, but I've been a Greenwich Public Schools parent for fifteen. And that ends on Monday. So hopefully, you can still keep me on the email app so I know what's going on at Ten Hillside Road. The neighbors usually tell me, but I'd like to stay on the loop. So a certificate of appreciation. Kimber Lee Eves has faithfully discharged the duties of Director of Communications for the Greenwich Public Schools. Furthermore, in numeral situations and in partnership with the Greenwich Police Department, she has performed tasks with outstanding professionalism in ensuring the safety of children of the Greenwich Public Schools through effective communication. I therefore, James J. Heavy, Chief of Police for the Town of Greenwich, hereby commend Kimber Lee Eves for her dedicated service to the citizens of Greenwich, Connecticut, and with this, place her name on the historical files as an honorary member of the Greenwich Police Department Command Staff. Effective thirteen June 2019. And the police officers know I'm pretty chintzy with awards, but there's a Chief's Award of Excellence that I can award immediately for somebody for doing an outstanding job. And she also receives one of those. So again, we wish her well, and their gain is our loss. So again, congratulations and thank you. Where's Kim to take off? Where's Kim to take off?
Eighteen years and 15 superintendents ago, during the reign of what I like to call Roger the First, Jim Bolger asked me to sit on a committee to investigate bringing the IB Middle Years and High School program to Greenwich. It was my first opportunity to work alongside Kim Eves, and I quickly realized I was in the company of greatness. Countless committees later, from Mission and Vision Development to Distinguished Teacher, I continued to watch in awe of her professionalism, effortless command of a crowd, and efficient yet tireless work ethic. We shared many a laugh and quiet moments, and more than once, we both said, "You can't make this up." But she always picks up the phone, always has a solution for every problem, and never turns you away. Even when the request is so small or not in her purview, she persists and supports. The loss of Kim Eves will be felt for years to come, because not only is she the voice of Greenwich Public Schools, she's our historian, greatest advocate, and dearest friend. Thank you for your dedication to the district, the community, and all of us. We'll miss you terribly.
So when I came to Greenwich 19 years ago, my very first assignment was a teacher at ISD. And although I had taught many schools, coming to Greenwich was a whole different experience, and it could have been very overwhelming. That is, if Kim had not come into my life. I had the pleasure of teaching Cameron, her son, and together, we formed a partnership that made my first year very memorable. Whether it was parties or field trips, Kim could always be counted on to be there. Not only was she a wonderful parent, but she was an integral part of the school's launch. She worked closely with the principal to make ISD a reality, representing the parents and being a member and a voice for the community. Fast forward a few years, and as a new principal, Kim helped me roll out my communication for life and set me up for success. Over the years, Kim has been my guiding light as I battled power failures and, of course, the attack of the chimney swift boats. Somehow, when you reached out to Kim at 7:00 AM, she was always there, and she could always calm a raging storm. Through the hiring of assistant principals, interviews with reporters, or dealing with those difficult annoyances principals typically face, Kim always had the right words to get you through anything. As a member of the district data team, distinguished teacher, or the face committee, her insight and vision provided perspective and vision. Somehow, knowing Kim was there made things feel just a little bit easier. I can't even imagine next year, knowing that familiar calming voice at the other end of the phone won't be there. There are no words to describe the gratitude and appreciation I will always feel when I think of you. You will be missed.
Usually when Kim was calling me, it was about a snow day. All right, next up, Carol Sutton.
So Kim, 19 years. 19 years ago, when Kim came to the district, I didn't meet her. In fact, my first contact with Kim was also through Cameron, except he was in ninth grade at the time, and he was in my class. And then I encountered Taylor in various extracurricular activities that we did, and so hearing that they are adults and doing amazing things is really quite fun to do. When I thought about what I would say, I just, I really, there were just, truly for me, there were no words. Just no words. When I found out that Kim was leaving, I, you know, I cried. I said, "I think it's time to go home." But some of the words I did write down were these: articulate, smart, astute, thoughtful, reflective, honest, calm, supportive, hardworking. There's no one else as hardworking as Kim. Respectful and professional. And I'm going to say respectful and professional again. I truly believe that we don't even know what Kim has her hand in. What we do know is that everything that you can think of that goes right, everything that has gone well, somehow, Kim has been involved in it. So Kim, you're a force. We're going to miss you, the teachers are going to miss you. And, well, I didn't think of this before, but may the force be with you, or are you the force? I don't know. But we also have for Kim a bag, GEA swag, we have a sticker, we have a scholarship donated in her name, and I am not giving Kim Eves a T-shirt, no way. We'll give her something next week, and maybe she'll show it to you. Thank you.
All right, next up are Karen Mersch and Christian Diamond for PTA Council.
You'll have to forgive me if I weep through this. The magic of words is that they have the power to do more than convey meaning. Not only do they have the power to make things clear, they make things happen. Kim, it gives me both great pleasure and deep sadness to be standing here this evening. First and foremost, I'd like to offer you our thanks and congratulations. I'm not one to relish bidding a friend to do, nor letting a valuable and dedicated administrator go. However, I know that you will only be a stone's throw or a text away. You are and have been the keeper of words and the voice of this district since 2000. I know how hard your role is. You have been the voice of 12 superintendents and numerous school leaders. Your words have been used to educate parents and town leaders alike. They've been the calm in the storm during moments of crisis. They've soothed our soul in times of sorrow. They've been the harbingers of joy through 19 years of graduations, convocations, administrative appointments, student and staff recognitions, and so much more. In fact, for a time, your voice was, it was your voice that made the joy of hearing at 6:00 AM, telling us about school closures. And to be honest, that may be the only time I didn't hear, enjoy hearing you speak. But you are more than a communications specialist. In many ways, you are the heart and soul of the district. You are our historian and memory keeper. Most people do not truly understand the value of public relations. It entails so much more than writing press releases and providing crisis management. Yours is the practice of building positive two-way communication between our schools and Board of Education and the public, the parents and stakeholders. The success of our schools and the students they serve depends on outstanding communication. Yes, excellent schools need amazing educators and strong curriculum, but they also require the active involvement of parents and the community in order to succeed. Your words are often the catalyst to getting the type of parental and community engagement that students need to succeed. That's why it's called public relations. Information's important, but relationships are essential. Formalized communication's a full-time job and investment that meets tangible and intangible benefits, which are often not fully appreciated until they are lost. Jim Rowan once said, "If you just communicate, you can get by, but if you communicate skillfully, you can work miracles," and you've done that. On a personal note, I've enjoyed the opportunity to sit with you and discuss all manner of topics, and I will miss you tremendously. I'm sure that there are many things about the Greenwich Public Schools you'll miss, however, I'm guessing that these lengthy meetings will not be one of them, so I'll wrap up. There are truly no words for me to share to express our gratitude, nor are there enough languages for me to use to say thank you. The dedication that you've shown to the Greenwich Public School District in your 19 years, during which time I have never once seen you get flustered or lose your cool, like I am at this moment. I know that you will bring the same dedication spirit and positive attitude when you relocate to the other side of town. It has been a pleasure, it has been an honor, and an incredible education. We wish you all the best, and know that our loss is their gain. And as such, council would like to present you with a small gift. Please think of us fondly when you use it.
All right, hang on, we have a technical issue. I need my glasses.
So I want to thank Kim Eves, and after that heartfelt speech by the PTA Council, we have a contrasting speech, and ours is purely humorous and lighthearted, and we send you off with a smile on your face. To Kim Eves with love from the Board of Education. All Greenwich students were asleep in their beds. Visions of a snow day danced in their heads. At Mission Control, Ms. Eves, sound asleep, was dreaming of... Was dreaming of surveys and the secrets they keep. When all of a sudden, there arose such a clatter, she sprang from her bed to see what was the matter, and what to her wondering eyes should appear but two fire trucks and eight firemen in gear. And then at her door, a tall man so fit, she knew in a minute must be Chief Kick. Ice on the roofs has melted, he boomed. Water has entered 15 schools, and we're doomed. The fire police were first on the scene. Our response time fantastic, a sight to be seen. Kim ran to her phone and woke up Mr. Mayo. She suggested a snow day to prepare for the demo. But a day missed from school, Mr. Mayo declared, would be greeted with emails of a kind most unfair. He texted Chief Heavy, who without delay texted, "Sledding looks fine and less traffic today." At Mission Control, Ms. Eves then recorded a message so fast it beat Captain Cording. She skillfully crafted eight ways to deliver on voicemail, on email, on text, and on beeper, on website, and pigeon, and Facebook, and Twitter, and then opened her window in the last hour of night, shouting, "Happy snow day to all! It will soon be all right!"
All right, so that ends our recognitions. You're welcome to stay for more of the board meeting, because there's going to be plenty more meetings. Or if you'd like, you can exit now and we'll take care of it. You'll have your time, Miss.
Oh, okay, thanks. I was just thinking.
Yeah, we'll record the podium.
Where should we stand, or just to ask?
Behind the podium, when the speaker comes, yeah. All right, we're going to ask everybody to settle down. We've got some more meetings to do. All right, so the next order of business is the consent agenda. Have you made a motion for the consent agenda? Dr. Francis, second, Ms. Dayton, any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda? Passes 7-0, thank you. All right, next up is our school welcome. Mr. Schmidt, thank you for being patient and letting us use the building. We're happy to be here.
Glad to have you here, really. Good evening, Chairman of the Board, Mr. Bernstein, members of the board, Superintendent Mayo, members of the cabinet, and guests. First of all, I would like to take a moment and just thank our distinguished teacher who was here earlier, Chris Powers, and her advanced fan members for performing right before the meeting. I am Gene Schmidt, the Principal of Cos Cob School, and it is a pleasure to welcome you here. This is a rare opportunity for us, because usually, we have all the budget meetings and don't have a chance to showcase our school. This has been an interesting year for Cos Cob School, and we wouldn't have made it without Kim and Ralph, definitely. In September, we celebrated 25 years since the building had been rebuilt due to a fire. Weeks later, our building flooded, and we had to relocate many of our students and staff. However, right before this happened, our staff completed our strategic plan, COLS, for the 2018-19 year. On the vision of the graduate capacities, we chose, respond to failures and successes with reflection and resilience. You couldn't believe it. Part of our belief statement was that by empowering our stakeholders, the students, the staff, the parents, the partners, we could respond to failures and successes with reflection and resilience. Little did we know that we would be living that statement for the months to follow. Mr. Mayo recently asked me, "How was my year?" And I quickly responded, "Great." The Cos Cob community came together, as it always does, and helped to ensure that no matter what, we were Cos Cob strong, and nothing could keep us down. I would like to take this opportunity to thank our parents, our students, our staff, and our amazing PTA for all of their support throughout this year, and for all that they have done and will continue to do to support us. One of the focuses of our SIP plan was that we wanted to empower students with structures and talking points about the reasons for choosing their goals, that they chose this year, and why they chose the work that they did to put into their portfolios. The structure allowed the students... The structure allowed the students to choose the work they wanted to present to parents that showcased their successes, their failures, their reflections, their planning, and their resilience during their student-led conferences. They say a picture's worth a thousand words. I hope our very short video does the same, showcasing out the three key levers for change: creating a more personalized learning environment, empowering stakeholders, and reimagining time and space.
My name is Zane, and today I will be interviewing Martina about flexible seating. Hello, my name is Martina, and I'm in third grade at Cos Cob School. What is hard, is it hard for you to sit on a traditional chair? Yes, because I never get to use my energy, and because I usually lean on my chair, and that is dangerous. What would you rather sit on than a traditional chair? Uh, I like to sit on the yoga ball, because it helps me move around safely, and helps me pay attention and learn. Can you tell us a few rules about the yoga ball? You have to keep your feet on the floor, and if you can't find a ring, you can't use the ball, and try not to make too much noise, and try not to jump too high. Um, I have a question. What do you mean by ring? The ring that, that holds, that stops the ball from moving everywhere? And remember our motto: We're here, we're there, we're everywhere. Oh wait, that's not our motto.
The writing piece I wrote on the wall was one of those same fiction. I created this piece because I love being in front of people and having a mistake. One way I have improved my writing is out of details, and just to my camera.
Okay, and then this was the end result?
Yeah, so this is, so I taped it on my iPad, because we have keyboards. And then, and then, and then, so. This year, one of my math skills I have done was talk. I can explain my thinking and try to understand others. For example, multiplication, I can decompose numbers. Let's say the problem was 15 times 9. I could do, I could decompose 15 by making it 10 and 5, so it could be easier to solve the problem.
This year, one of our school's issues was student live conferences. I am lucky enough to be a teacher, as well as a parent to children of Cos Cob School. Doing it from a teacher's point of view is very valuable, because parents can actually come in and see some of the work that's hanging out of rooms, some of the stuff that's taped on an iPad, some of the stuff that they publish, and other projects that are ongoing. From a parent's point of view, it was really cool and important to see how much work it actually gets done during the day, and how hard this kid worked to publish their writings, to learn how to use technology like the iPad, and know that the social skills that they
Really glad you are here. Thank you very much, Mr. Schmidt. All right, next up, we have our public hearing. First up is the GHS two new government.
Good evening, members of the Board and guests. I'm James Heavey, the outgoing senior class president, so I'll keep it short, because we have our two new presidents who will be taking over for next year. But before I do, I just had some quick remarks. I did not prepare them ahead of time, which is something Alex always warned me about. However, he's not here to hear them, so fingers crossed he'll go well. We wanted to convey, both Alex and I, and he's very upset that he couldn't make it here tonight, our utmost gratitude for everything that you guys do on the Board, helping our initiatives, helping us to get a better educational experience, and really providing Greenwich with an opportunity for the best education system that we could have. And that's something that we're extremely grateful for, all of the work that you guys put in, and something that we hope will go forward as far as the collaboration between the Board and student government going forward. We'd also like to thank the community, because everything we do is because of the stuff you guys do, and you can't phrase it more complicated than that, but it's really here because of you guys. So thank you for everything. And with that, I would like to introduce our new student body president and senior class president. Our student body president is Zane Cotter. He served as the junior class president for this year, and will do a great job next year. And my replacement for senior class president is Lucas Gazianis, who's also, we're excited to have both of them take over and do great things.
Thank you very much, Alex. First, let me thank James for the wonderful job he did this year, organizing a hugely successful SRO and a wonderful senior prom, I heard. I also want to thank Alex and this year's entire executive committee of student government. I've never served on ExCom before, but this year's officers were extremely helpful and welcoming when we had the chance to meet, and I have no doubt that they'll be an incredible resource for me next year. On that note, let me also thank Ms. Lynch, our ExCom advisor, who I just met, but who has already emerged as a great source of help, as well as Ms. Prellia and Ms. Suwak, who have been my class advisors for the past three years while I occupied other officer positions. I've spoken in front of the Board once before, last winter, presenting a plan a classmate and I had developed for the Opportunity Block. But today, I'm speaking to you for the first time in an official capacity, where it's my job to present the sentiments of my classmates and not just my own. So when Zane and I come here to address you all throughout the next year, it's a special opportunity to hear from representatives who care deeply about reporting and promoting their classmates' ideas. I'm especially excited for this role, because I've always taken an interest in the policies that make up our school day. I'm a believer that any practical proposal merits the same consideration regardless of where it originates from, and that means it can come from our superintendent or from a freshman in student government. One thing we've already discussed at great length in our ExCom meetings is student engagement, and we have plans to gear student government towards a more collaborative unit where our reps feel empowered to share and create off of their ideas. Beginning in the fall, if a rep creates a serious idea or a proposal that receives 100 signatures from any students in the school, ExCom will address it during one of our mass meetings. We'll open up the floor for input and debate, and even spend time behind closed doors tightening up the proposal before potentially voting on it in a mass meeting. This is to foster an environment where students don't feel like the concerns they report every meeting are becoming lost in a Google form, an environment where they don't have to wait for others to act on an issue that they are the most passionate about. It's in line with our vision of one of the most productive student governments we've seen at this school, and I'm excited to bring forward to the Board some of the great ideas that will undoubtedly come out of my senior class and the rest of student government. Next year is going to be one that tests our patience. There are highly important issues that students care about, like Opportunity Block, that have yet to be resolved, but I believe that I'll also find it extremely rewarding. I'm absolutely looking forward to the challenge of serving as president of the senior class, and I can't wait to come back here in the fall and begin working with you all. Thank you. Student Body President, Zane Cotter.
Thank you, thank you. Before I formally begin, I just want to thank Alex Kosikov, who is not here, for his three work through, for his three years on the executive committee in student government. And I've worked with Alex since I was the freshman class president, and you know, I've watched him grow both physically and intellectually. Yeah, he was like here, now he's almost my height, into the passionate and well-read force of nature that he is today. And so, ladies and gentlemen, if you could please join me in giving him the biggest round of applause, so that he can hear it all the way at the hospital. In addition to that, I'd also like to thank Mr. Pietrowski and Mr. Mayo for their unrelenting resolve, despite being thrust into new positions. As a student, I understand how difficult it is to drop everything you know and to learn something new. We do it every fall. So thank you, gentlemen, and a round of applause for them. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayo, members of the Board, administrators, parents, assistants, and distinguished citizens of Greenwich. My name is Zane Cotter, and I am the student body president of Greenwich High School. And I realize very few people in the grand scheme of things get to say that they were their school's student body president, and so I am beyond honored and humbled for the opportunity, for the opportunity to not only be the student body president, but to also be able to speak at these meetings and share my thoughts with the greater Greenwich community. And what are these thoughts? I want to talk about where I come from and how that is reflected in the Greenwich I want to create. My father was born in the Gaza Strip, and my mother in Damascus, Syria. None of my parents were born into wealth, or had even remotely any connections to rely on, not in the Middle East, and certainly not here. And yet, through hard work, and nothing but the sheer desire to succeed and to better themselves, they have managed over their lifetimes to fulfill the American dream, and to leave their children better off than they were, to move to Greenwich, one of the wealthiest, most secure towns in the nation, so that their children could succeed without financial burdens. I imagine that most of you, at least those among you who are parents, do what you do for the same reason: for the children, for the future. I've learned from my parents the importance of hard work. "Nothing is free," I would always hear, "not even the air we breathe." I've grown up listening to those words, and despite living in this affluent town for almost half of my life, have tried to work for and appreciate all that I have been given. And so, unsurprisingly, the Greenwich culture I want to create is a hard-working one, one where anyone, be they from Byram or Old Greenwich, can work hard and be judged based on nothing but on their merits and on their passion for success. Ladies and gentlemen, I ask that in your never-ending quest to improve the lives of students across the district, you take care to not contribute to the growing culture of entitlement and the notion that we don't need to work hard for what we have. Because the true development of character is when you have a goal and you fail countless times, but then after hours, days, months, and even years of brutal effort, you succeed, and you find happiness in the absence of sadness instead of the other way around. Give students the opportunity to fail before they succeed. It is the only way they will learn. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have the GEA comments. Good luck, Carol.
Thank you so much. That was inspiring. Good evening, Principal Schmidt, Chairman Bernstein, and Board members, Mr. Mayo, Superintendent, and Cabinet members and community. Well, see, I've been talking a lot this year, so I'm very proud and honored to represent over 900 members of the Greenwich Education Association. And this evening, as Zane said, Zane, I didn't have one second to write an amazing speech like you just wrote, so if this is a big fail, it's fine. It'll still be completely fine. I'll probably talk to you again next year. But I really wanted to say that this evening, for me at least, and for all of us, is really about what it means to be part of this very large Greenwich Public School community. And I represent the teachers. They're in the throes of end of the year. Their heads are spinning around. They're trying to keep the students calm. I know Cos Cob has to do that for a little bit longer than anybody else, but I'll be here, I'll help them out. But I also think it's a wonderful end to the year to recognize six paraprofessionals who are really some unsung heroes in their schools, and to have one emerge as the Paraprofessional of the Year. I wasn't even here when it was announced, but Julie Visani of Western Middle School. Our paraprofessionals are the reason why many of our students succeed. In the NEA, they call them ESPs. They're called Educational Support Professionals, and that is truly what they are. They provide the support for the students, and therefore for the teachers, and they have professional skills that are essential to our students' success. It was wonderful to hear about the Administrator of the Year, Barbara Riccio. I've known her since I became president of GEA. I was there with her for the opening of the new school. I know how hard she worked to make that come to fruition, and I know how much she'll miss the school, but she left behind a legacy that will last for generations. Zach and James. Zach is in here today, James is. Thank you so much. It's wonderful to also be introduced to Zane and Lucas. I did ask, hey, James, wait, before you go. I was talking to Zach the other night at the PTAC dinner, and I asked him if you gave him his goodie bag.
So I have it.
Oh, 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 Alex, I'm sorry.
It's actually his orange bag of goodies. We've been missing each other. We were not, well, usually, he's just skipping out, it's something to do with that.
Okay, Alex, don't worry. But I did ask, I did ask, no, I asked Alex, and I said, "Did James give you your goodie bag?" He's like, "Huh?" So thank you for giving it to him. That's beautiful. GEA appreciates you, and what I wanted to say to you that night is, don't forget to keep in touch with your teachers. They really want to hear from you and hear how you're doing. And buy some nice school supplies. It was also this week where we honored people from PTAC, and it's a wonderful part of the community to be here this evening with the outgoing president, Karen Hirsch, the incoming co-president, Cricket Diamond, and the incoming co-president, Brian Paldunis. Are you the co-
Vice president.
Vice president, okay. They've got a structure like nothing else. I wish GEA had that as well. How amazing to see the Teacher of the Year. I know for you, Mr. Mayo, that was extremely, extremely difficult. When you take 900-plus people, you zero it down to, you know, a few, a pretty large handful of nominees, you put that down to six, and then you have to choose one. I don't envy you that job at all, and we are so proud of Crystal. All year long, we've heard from so many scholars, athletes, activists, students, academics. It's just been amazing to see what the results are of our education. I also want to draw your attention, tomorrow morning, if you're not doing anything at 10:30, 13 seniors will graduate from the Windrose Program, which again, if you don't, if you don't know about it, or you don't know somebody, you may have no awareness of what that is. But these 13 students possibly would not be graduating if it was not for Windrose and for what the Board has put forward to create that program, and what their teachers and the administration has put- and for what the Board has put forward to create that program and what their teachers and the administration has put forward. I'm definitely going to be there. They'll also get to walk with their classmates, but 10:30 tomorrow, if you haven't heard of Windrose, you need to check it out. And then, of course, again, as part of our community, there's all of you. I'm looking forward to hearing from people tonight to talk about their interests. Board members, we always look forward to the work that you do and are thankful and appreciative for that. Cabinet, same thing. You guys are amazing doing the work of this district. And at some point next year, when I see you again, we'll be greeting Dr. Tony Jones, who will come in and take the helm and steer us hopefully ever forward. So, thanks for coming tonight. Thank you for people who come every, every single meeting. This is truly a wonderful community in which to work, in which to be educated. And GEA, thanks you very much and have a great summer and we'll see you in August. Thanks.
Good evening, Superintendent Mayo, Chairman Bernstein, Principal Schmidt, members of the Board, Cabinet, and Community. My name is Karen Hirsch, outgoing president of PTA Council, and with me are Cricket Diamond, incoming council president, and Brian Paldunis, our incoming first VP. Council would like to extend congratulations to the eclectic array of overachievers whom the Board honored earlier. We're proud of all of tonight's honorees, including our stellar and soon-to-graduate, and, missing, GHS student government and senior class presidents, who've spoken out and out so passionately to advocate for the needs of the GHS students this year. We also would like to welcome Lucas and Zane, and after tonight's speeches, we truly expect great things from you. The numerous awards given tonight are further proof that our students and our staff are truly extraordinary. Tonight marks both a beginning and an end. This is my last time standing up and addressing you as president of the PTA Council. It is the last Board meeting of the school year. It's also the beginning of a much-needed summer break for us and the planning for the 2019, 20, the beginning of the planning of the 2019-2020 school year for you. Tonight's agenda items not only reflect on the past year, but give us opportunity to look forward and discuss what we want to accomplish in the year ahead. So, when discussing the assessment calendar, we remind you to make sure that the proposed schedules are designed so as to guarantee minimal disruption to classroom learning opportunities. National PTA believes and Council concurs that the high-quality assessments provided provide valuable information to parents, teachers, and school leaders about the growth and achievement of our students. Parents should know not only how educators will be using this data, including which assessments will be used for future placement and what weight each carries, but also how it can be used to support their child's academic growth outside of the classroom. Parents should not only be notified as to when their students' results will be available, but that they be available, which is why the long-promised and yet-to-be-launched Parent Data Portal is truly necessary. Turning now from data to instruction. The Innovative Teaching and Learning Report notes the development of publishing of personalized learning playbook for parents. And while Council had an opportunity to see a draft version of this earlier in the year, we've yet to see the actual playbook for parents. It's both necessary and needed as it could be yet another tool for parents to use to support their students' education at home. The report also notes a presentation on screen time, how much is too much, which highlights concerns that we have raised with the administration at numerous meetings. Council's requested an in-depth look at digital learning and more specifically, screen time, to get an accurate account of how much time is spent daily on devices and how they are being used within each program. Many parents have expressed concerns about the proliferation of devices, especially within the elementary schools. They question how they support academic achievement and whether the benefits of digital classrooms outweigh the risks. And while Council has not made much headway in obtaining data on usage nor analysis on efficacy, we continue to advocate for the creation of a district policy on screen time and digital wellness.
Continuing our focus on wellness, we are glad to see tonight's update on the PE curriculum as physical education is a key component in serving the whole child. Research shows that where children are fit and receive the proper amount of exercise along with proper nutrition, they gain valuable life and social skills, perform better in school, and are able to learn at a higher level. Much like PE, career and technical education uses lessons students learn in science and math and shows them that what they learn in core academic classes can be translated into the real world and introduces them to career pathways and opportunities which can have a truly positive effect on their futures. We applaud the district's efforts to provide these future-forward programs. Speaking of physical activity, there is a pressing need and desire to get renovations and improvements to Cardinal Stadium underway. The stadium plan was designed and approved by the Board last year to take into account the needs of student athletes and those who come to support them. It has been said that there is a difference between getting the job done and getting the job done right. And from past experience, we know that what we create today will be there for students for years to come. And as such, future needs must be taken into account. We hope that tonight's discussion will provide some clarity and allow this project to move forward. Last, but most certainly not least, is PTA Council's annual report. Council not only represents, but works to educate, advocate for, and support Greenwich Public School PTAs and the over 9,000 students and families that they serve. We are committed to working to improve the education, health, and welfare of all children. We urge you to take the time to read our report as it details the countless contributions made by Council's Board of Directors, 14 committees, and our 15 PTAs to our schools and the community overall. Reports from each committee and PTA detail contributions in areas of academic and extracurricular programming, social-emotional learning, family and community engagement, and facility improvements, not to mention the thousands of volunteer hours given, and all this can be found in the report. Our committees and PTAs have truly moved mountains this year to support the health, well-being, and education of our students, as well as the vision of the graduate and the district's strategic plan. Accordingly, we would like to thank the people responsible for getting so much done. Our PTA leaders and countless volunteers, the Council's Board of Directors and committees for their tireless efforts on behalf of the students and families in the district. At this last business meeting of the school year, we want to thank the Board of Education and the Cabinet. We are fortunate to have such dedicated and caring individuals focused on asking the deeper questions so that each program and facility is being used to best benefit our children and their education. We look forward to what can be accomplished by working together, focusing on collaboration and communication, to make every child's potential a reality. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank PTA for the written report of all the PTA activities. If you read it, it's just a really amazing document. How much enrichment goes on thanks to the parents and the community. Thank you for that. All right, next up are our community comments. Per Board Policy 9325, speakers each get three minutes. You'll get a 30-second warning and then three minutes will ask you to please stop. If you go over and you can't fill all your comments in, you should feel free to email us. The board address is on our website. We ask that you be appropriate and respectful, that you offer objective criticism of the district operations and programs, but not concerning individual district personnel. If that does happen, we will stop the conference. All right, we're going to start, and I'm going to apologize right now if I mispronounce names. I need to find my glasses, though. That's the good news. All right, first up is Jennifer Wick and Priya Shenak. Before you start, the next speaker is Karen Kobolsky, if you want to get ready.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I am before you on behalf of an ever-growing group of parents concerned about increased screen time in our schools, some of whom are here tonight. We ask for a review of the current use of technology in our classrooms and defined usage guidelines going forward. There are educational factors to be considered, as well as social, emotional, and privacy considerations surrounding the district's increased use of technology. As our elected representatives, we call on the Board of Education to provide transparency and independent data analysis. Let there be no mistake: personalized learning equals increased screen time for our children and decreased direct instruction for our children. When I ask how many hours my child spends in front of a screen during their day at school, I deserve an answer and I should not be met with resistance. Where are the usage caps? Where are the usage guidelines? Where is the third-party data to support that this technology experiment is benefiting our children? When I hear at a PTA meeting that there is not enough money to bring Greg Tang in for full-day math workshops for our teachers, yet thousands are spent on Dreambox, an adaptive math video game, then there is a problem. When I hear at a PTA meeting about the administration's desire to push technology more and more into the younger grades, presuming that more technology is always better, then there is a problem. Our message is clear: the Board of Ed needs to provide unequivocal direction to our incoming superintendent about what the district's technology policies will be, and parents need to be a part of the process. Data analysis as well as teacher input are critical. But in the end, it is our children that are being affected. Therefore, as parents, we must have a voice. We are asking the Board to address this pressing problem in five specific ways. We are asking that this Board give parents evidence to prove the benefits that our children receive from an omnipresent screen in front of them. We would like to see the research on age-specific usage and time limits.
30 seconds.
We ask that this Board make available to parents the number of class hours spent on devices. We ask for written guidelines and proper usage and time limits. We ask for parents to receive specific information about the primary learning apps used by the district. And finally, this Board needs to significantly decrease the use of individually-assigned iPads in elementary schools and require judicious, limited use of these devices only on an ad-needed basis. Thank you very much.
And next up is Karen Kobolsky, and after that, Tom Agresta. Karen, are you still here? No. All right, Tom Agresta. That's all right. After that is Rick Raul.
Thank you for your time. I'm actually glad I came to this meeting. I saw the achievement of our students and our educators. It really is what the school is sitting about. I've always said, and I think some people can back me up, I think we have probably the best district in the state. And I've had experience as well as districts. But what I'm here to talk about, and this is something that I've talked about since the beginning, and some of you may have not heard this. We were about to build a stadium, and it's good. Let's build a stadium, let's update the stadium. The problem is, we have a track that's 440 yards. It is the only 440-yard track in the states, the only 440-yard track in the world. They run 400 meters. Think of it this way: if our football field was 96 yards, would we leave it that way? Anybody? Would we? Why are we not fixing our track? Not only that, is for our, we have two teams, a boys' team and a girls' team. Those are the two largest teams in our school. They are full participation. If you are on that team, you compete at a varsity level as much as four times per meet. There are schools, you don't get cut from the track team, by the way. There are other teams you get cut and you don't participate during the competition. This is the only, I think it's the only team that does it. Not only that, track and field in this state is a unified Special Olympic sport. I've seen our athletes at that level. They are phenomenal. I don't think we can do that in a lot of sports. So once again, I don't understand why we don't make our track compliant like every other track in the world. On top of that, we have a six-lane track. Our two teams were second in the FCACs, our boys' team and girls' team were second in the FCACs. We cannot have an FCAC meet because you need to have eight lanes. Why are we not making eight lanes? We are spending a ton of money on parking, but we don't have a track that is compliant. I don't understand this. And another thing I learned, if you go to where they do the pole vault, that goes highs 14, 16 feet, you go where they do the high jump, it is surrounded by asphalt. Imagine if they missed the mat, they're hitting asphalt. Why, again, we don't have an artificial surface that is safe, that is better? And also the football-
30 seconds.
Okay. I'm going to ask you all a question. When is our track going to be compliant? That was a real, that was a real question. All right, Peter, thank you. Well, we should make this compliant, or are our track teams second-class citizens? By the way, we have people competing in the Nationals this weekend. They're there right now. That's how good our track people are, our track kids are. It only makes sense. We're spending millions of dollars. Let's fix the track. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to speak this evening to the stadium project. I have had the pleasure of speaking with many of you before the meeting and trying to discuss some of the nuances. Obviously, in three minutes, I cannot address everything that's going on with the current stadium project. However, you are aware that the GAF has recommended some different concepts to be considered in trying to move this project forward and to try and get it done in a timely manner and provide the amenities that we believe the students at the high school deserve. I would like to address one point, and I think many of you know me, that there is no way that the GAF is looking to propose anything that would be substandard. Everything that's been proposed is something that in the end would be the envy of all Fairfield County teams and something that this community would be very proud of. So, there was some back and forth about cost of buildings and the architect that just drafted a letter, which was submitted to all of you, I guess, about two days ago. And we really haven't had a lot of time to get into all of it. But, you know, his cost, the architect that was hired by the stadium committee at $350 a square foot, that may be. And maybe they'll estimate that when we get down to that point. The estimates that were provided to you by the GAF come from experience. They came from engineers. They came from consultants. They came from grassroots, from those of us that have been down there and have built the buildings and put up the lights and just recently put the scoreboard up. So, we have a very good hands-on feeling for what things cost. I will say that many of you know me, I'm building a high-end squash facility, not two blocks from here, 10,000 square feet of, 7,000 square feet of new space, 3,000 square feet of rehabbing a 125-year-old building. And I can tell you that my costs are below $300 a square foot to complete that building. So, I'm sure that your architect is used to dealing with schools and facilities that he named in all kinds of towns in upstate New York. But with all due respect, he is not from Greenwich, Connecticut. He doesn't live in Greenwich, Connecticut, nor is his firm here. So, if he wants to come in and we put the project out to bid and bid those numbers and they are the least expensive, then so be it. I doubt that would be the case, but that's how our process works. We'd like to see that happen that way. But in any case, it was 20 years ago when a group of us got together. And in essence, I'm just thinking about it, the seniors we're going to graduate on Monday weren't even born yet when we started making improvements-
30 seconds.
-at Cardinal Stadium. So, it's important for us to be involved. We did it back then as a community. We came together and worked together as a community to make these projects happen. We want to continue to do that. The GAF is here to try and work with the Board of Ed, not against it. We would recommend that the Board of Ed truly look to put together a building committee of folks that are users, that have a local experience, that have the local knowledge. Not elected officials, not our paid staff that are overburdened as it is. Get those people together. Let them truly decide how we're going to put this project together. And let's work together as a community to do it. Thank you very much.
Marjorie Castro, followed by Christina Mitchell.
Good evening. I am Marjorie Castro, head of Eagle Hill School. I'm here tonight with a group, we just heard from them, of parents and some of our students who have come with me. I'd like to begin by saying Eagle Hill School has always had a very positive relationship with the Greenwich Public Schools, and I think that's important to start with. We have participated in professional development with your teachers offered by both schools- We have participated in professional development with your teachers, offered by both schools, open to teachers from both of the school districts. We have been invited to be a part of the decision-making on issues such as the new start times and transportation during the last school year. We have worked closely with the professionals in the Greenwich schools when our students transition back to jointly ensure their success. We feel very much that we have very good colleagues in your school district, and I think they would say the same about us. But tonight, we must share our disappointment in the recent late and rapid decision of the district to withdraw transportation for our students to Eagle Hill School. We were not invited this time to be a part of this decision and learned about it through a letter from Lori Ann O'Donnell, the chief operating officer, that arrived in June, though it had a May 23 date on it. We are here to respectfully ask that the Board reverse this decision, or at least delay the decision in order to participate in a larger discussion around special education services in the town of Greenwich. Transportation is just a piece of that conversation. Eagle Hill School is not a typical independent school. We specifically address the needs of children who learn differently and experience many learning challenges. We are a state-approved school, just as all of the schools in the Greenwich School District are as well. Eagle Hill School provides a transitional program for students with learning challenges including dyslexia, dysgraphia, dyscalculia, ADHD, and executive function weaknesses. Our goal is to remediate the students' skills and give them the tools they need to be successful as they transition back to a traditional classroom setting. Many families make a major sacrifice to send their children to Eagle Hill. The average tenure of a student at Eagle Hill is three to four years, and about a third of our students transition back to their public schools.
Thirty seconds.
Let's see. We add, the average cost of each regular education student is more than $20,000 in Greenwich. These parents whose children require special education services, which we estimate would cost the district $30,000 to $35,000 per student, are providing direct savings to the district. Our families are only asking the district to provide transportation for their children, and I will send you the rest of what I wanted to say.
(applause) Thank you. The next speaker is Christina Mitchell, followed by Chance Patterson.
Good evening. Get my glasses myself. My name is Christina Mitchell. My son, David, has been a student at Eagle Hill School for three years. This past year, my family moved to Greenwich to be closer to Eagle Hill. I have been a public school teacher for over 20 years, and prior to moving to Greenwich, I, like you, was elected to be a Board of Education trustee in my former town. I personally know how many long hours you put in as a trustee. This night is an example of it. I know how hard you all work to try and do the right thing for the educational community of Greenwich, and I thank you for your commitment, your dedication, and your volunteerism. Because I have sat where you now sit, I understand how policy is made for school districts. I also know that some policies, like the policy of providing transportation, in this case, for documented disabled students who live in Greenwich and attend Eagle Hill School, is something that you do have the power to change, because that is the role of Board of Education trustees. You make policy. Some policy is guided and/or mandated by the state. This policy is not. While the state of Connecticut puts parameters on transportation, it also gives local school districts discretion over transportation when it is reasonable and desirable. So I ask you, is giving documented disabled students busing to and from school not reasonable and desirable? By evoking the current Greenwich Public Schools' transportation policy, after years of providing disabled Greenwich students busing to and from Eagle Hill School, the Greenwich Board of Education, whether you realize it or not, is, in effect, choosing to violate the rights of children with special needs. I am quite certain that this is not your intention.
Thirty seconds.
But Eagle Hill students and families, this feels like discretionary discrimination. As a board, I ask, we ask, that you change the current policy so that Eagle Hill students have their guaranteed right to take a bus to and from school. By changing this policy, you will, once and for all, be securing the rights of children with documented disabilities and concurrently doing the right thing for the Greenwich educational community at large.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Burden, Mr. Burden, Mr. Check.
I think it's really important that we start the timer when the person begins to speak, not when they appear at the podium.
All right. The next speaker is Chance Patterson, followed by Kelly Thompson.
Thank you. I have my family here, Tatum Patterson, Eagle Hill student, Leo Patterson, Eagle Hill student, my lovely wife, Laura, and we have a senior, we have a freshman at Greenwich High, and so you're looking at a family that's benefited by both the Greenwich School District and Eagle Hill. So we're winning on both sides at the same time, and I won't add to the parade of praise for Mr. Mayo, but love Mr. Mayo and respect his role in balancing the budget, trying to make sure that there's enough money around to fund projects, maybe the track in a couple of years, whatever the case may be. At the same time, you have the opportunity to make your own decision. And I think here is a case where we are affecting these kids in a way, this is a school like Dr. Castro talked about, these guys are going to be coming back to Greenwich, right? That's the goal, to put them back in the high school soon, and so they need to be connected to the community. It makes no sense to me that every day they're going to be walking out and seeing all their friends in the neighborhood getting on a bus, and they're now prevented from riding. And I know there's some other issues here around other schools who fall below the 50% Connecticut resident quota, they're going to want the same thing, right? And there's more money to be spent there. I would say to you, though, those students aren't, they're choosing to go to these other schools. They're choosing to go to a private school that doesn't support children with learning differences, they're going to religious-based schools. Our goal is to not have them in Eagle Hill. As much as we love Marjorie and her added magical experience, we're winning when they're back in the school. So I think you could make the case that we're much more connected to the future of Greenwich School District, and you have a basis for distinguishing us and allowing us to make sure these kids be a part of the community even when they're not in the school district formally. So let's let reason and fairness overcome equity towards these other schools. I think we have a special case to make here. So love you, Ralph, appreciate your role here. I think the Board has a, you know, an opportunity to make this a winning situation for everyone. So thank you.
(applause) The next speaker is Kelly Thompson, followed by Patty Murphy.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to thank the Board of Ed for giving us the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Kelly Thompson, and I'm the mother of an 11-year-old boy who's currently finishing his second year at Eagle Hill. I stand here with moms behind me and moms and dad in front. We're all parents of children who take a Greenwich Town Bus that we share with other private school children every day of the school year. We are here representing a large group of concerned parents. You will see over 600 people signed our petition since Monday. More than 600 of us feel strongly enough to be here, both in person and in spirit. As a group of parents who are residents, taxpayers, and voters, we stand here asking you to establish a fair policy for all Greenwich students, no matter which school they attend. We voted you all into your positions, and we ask and look to you to represent us all fairly and equally. Every day, our children get on the bus with kids they know from the neighborhood. My son's bus, for example, carries 15 to 20 kids to three different schools. Eagle is the last stop, barely a mile from Greenwich Academy. Are you really saving that much money by cutting our children specifically off and not going the literal extra mile? We already, as parents, take on a financial burden of paying the expensive tuition fees at Eagle Hill because it's a necessity that the town was not able to provide us. By doing so, our children are taken out of the educational mainstream that saves the town a substantial amount of money every day. Yes, it is our choice, but now adding transportation to these costs makes us even a harder nut to crack. The way in which this late decision was handled and delivered negatively impacts us all and is a shock to the parents, like all of us sitting here, who depend on this transportation. To be given this decision with little notice and with little transparency is wrong. Most Eagle Hill families by now have enrolled or re-enrolled with the assumption they would be provided busing for the next school year. Losing that transportation will create an additional burden for many, if not all of us.
Thirty seconds.
Please, we implore you, do not leave our kids at the bus stop.
Next speaker is Patty Murphy, and then I think it's John Souza, Angelica Arenas, and Juliana Souza.
Good evening. I speak tonight as a Greenwich resident and taxpayer, one of several on the Eagle Hill Board of Trustees, to urge the Greenwich Public School District to reconsider canceling busing service for Eagle Hill School families. Notifying our school community of this decision in June, after a significant number of Greenwich families decided to enroll and re-enroll in Eagle Hill, assuming that buses would be available for the 2019-2020 school year, seems abrupt and unfair. Not only do we object to the decision, but also to the process. Eagle Hill School is a hidden gem in the Greenwich community, a community that values diversity and respect for all individuals. We are a state-approved special education school whose children require highly specialized educational instruction due to language-based learning differences. Our families do not aspire to attend Eagle Hill School. They need to. Our families choose Eagle Hill because their children could not access the education they need in a mainstream school environment. Having a child with special needs is an enormous strain on our families, not to mention a staggering financial burden. Our parents pay the hefty tuition for an individualized education, often in addition to the cost of multiple therapies and testing. As a school, we are good neighbors and participants in the Greenwich community. We offer an annual speaker series free of charge to anyone who would like to attend. We teach our students to be role models of civic responsibility with several community outreach programs. Many students volunteer to help at neighbor-to-neighbor, serve dinner at a local soup kitchen, or visit with Alzheimer's patients each month through our Sweet Readers program. The presence of private schools enhances the community's property values and directly contributes to the bottom line of the Greenwich Public Schools' budget. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, per pupil spending for fiscal year 2017 in the state of Connecticut was $19,322. Factoring in capital expenditures and operational costs, we can safely round that up to $20,000 plus per student. In fact, the.
Thirty seconds.
The per pupil spending for an Eagle Hill child in the Greenwich school system would be much higher because that child would require special services from the public schools. By choosing to send their children to Eagle Hill School rather than stay in the public school system, our Greenwich families are effectively saving the town taxpayers approximately $1 million annually. Greenwich administrators were unable to quantify the savings rendered by this specific decision on busing, but given these buses are shared with the.
Time.
Private schools, we assume it is negligible.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
(applause)
Hello. My name is Angelica Arenas, and I am the parent of two very remarkable Greenwich residents, John and Juliana Souza. I think the Board is already aware of the type of school EHS is and how devoted to these children we all are. This is why a last-minute decision to strip these children from transportation, which is already shared, came as a shock to all. Here are some facts about a particular student, my daughter, Juliana. She attends, she attended Greenwich Public Schools, and despite all efforts from everyone tasked with her education, she was not flourishing. Her IEP is complex, thought-out, thorough, and it includes special transportation. I have a digital copy of her IEP, because go figure, I opted for a cost-effective delivery for the town. With that being said, how is excluding her from an existing bus route and a bus stop going to benefit anyone? We already had to make the heartbreaking decision to pull her from her district school, saving you, the Board of Education, and Greenwich Public Schools approximately $20,000 to $30,000 a year. And now, thanks to a rash and hasty decision, she will be pulled from mainstream transportation. Given that her IEP specifies special transportation, how much more money is this irrational decision going to cost the Board of Education? I know what it costs us already. It has cost us, John, Juliana, and myself, our peace of mind, our access to appropriate education, since busing is now a privilege for the learning disabled, and most of all, the one key player it has cost, my daughter, access to friendships, independence, and the feeling of belonging. I am accountable for my children's education, and I am holding you accountable for her transportation to such education. In honoring Mr. Mayo's Kids First, let's put our kids first and give them the access they need to their specialized school. Thank you.
(applause) Hello. I'm Juliana Souza, and I am a resident and a proud Eagle Hill student. Thank you, Board of Education, for being here to listen to my speech. Thank you, Eagle Hill, for educating me to be here. Riding the bus is very special to me. It lets me be independent and meet new friends from other schools. My neighbor and I get on the same bus together because he goes to Greenwich Country Day. Using the bus, I get to school at 7:20 a.m. because my stop is last. My school days start at 8:15. I like using the extra time to organize my day. Taking the bus means getting up at 5:45 a.m., but that's okay because it lets me create a routine that helps me with time management and makes me responsible to get out on time. It scares me to have to get on others, on another special bus by myself. It's not, it's not fair that because I don't learn the same as them, I can't ride the same bus. That, to me, is discrimination, and it hurts me to think that just because I am different, the bus doors will not, will be closed for me. Please do not make me feel more different because everyone is different in special ways. Include all EHS students on the bus. (applause)
Hello. My name is John Souza. I'm here to support my sister, Juliana Souza, and Eagle Hill School.
Include all EHS students on the bus.
My name is John Souza. I'm here to support my sister Juliana Souza and Eagle Hill School. My sister has already given up a lot, and she has worked very hard to always be independent. Taking her off the bus because she is different and putting her on a special bus will take away all that she's built. She will lose her friends, her routine, her independence, and her feeling of being like any other kid. I know 47% is less than 50%, but think of it like this: 47% is greater than 3%, and it all allows 100% of Eagle Hill students to get on the buses that are already on the road. Please keep my sister and her schoolmates on the bus.
The next speaker is Alon Khati, followed by Pat Coleman.
Good evening. We stand here before you as devoted parents to our children, community, and our children's elementary school. We're members of the PTA my wife has sat and continues to sit on, the Green Schools Committee, the Nominated Committee, the Book Fair Committee, as well as one of the co-chairs for one of the largest fundraisers and a class parent for the last four years. We chose to be an integral part of our children's school, not solely for our children, but also for the betterment of the entire community, for which our family has resided for more than 30 years. This is a sad story. Despite years of begging and pleading with the principal of our school to conduct testing on our daughter, who exhibited signs of having a distinct learning disability, the response was always the same, quote-unquote, "No, she does not need testing. She just rushes through her tests," end quote. In the fall of 2018, we scheduled a meeting with the principal and told her that either she does the testing or we're going to have it done outside the school, at which point she finally acquiesced. It took the school more than six months to complete all the testing of the course results, and the IEP, it showed to be needed across all subjects. By the time the IEP was implemented, there were three months left of third grade. I think it's very important to note that the neuropsych evaluator, who met our daughter over a three-month period, said, and I quote, "She was one of the most compliant and friendly students we have worked with this year. She has such a mature and socially appropriate personality," end quote. Our daughter entered the fourth grade this year, and she was completely lost in every subject. In November of 2018, the PPT team asked to meet with us. They told us how amazingly well our daughter had progressed, so much so that they were actually cutting back our special ed hours because it wasn't necessary. We were skeptical. Within three hours, three weeks of that meeting, our daughter came home with star test results that showed that despite being in the fourth grade, she was reading at a second-grade reading level. The principal re-administered those star tests twice more. The first time, the score was the same. The second time, my daughter came home and told me that the principal had, quote-unquote, "helped" her, and with all of the answers, end quote. And inside of just a few days, her score went up miraculously 179 points. We were outraged and concerned. We worked through the interim superintendent of schools, who appointed a chief officer of PPS to look into the matter. That proved useless. In a collusive effort, the chief PPS officer aided and abetted the principal by working to cover up these injustices. In the end, it was the superintendent of schools who did his own investigation and felt that our daughter would be better served in another Greenwich public school. My daughter's worth more than two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Khati. If you'd like, you can submit your comments to the board.
I'm going to continue.
No, we're going to turn the microphone off. We would ask that you...
Well, then I'm going to speak without a microphone.
Well, we'd actually like to get on with our meeting, sir. We allow three minutes to every other speaker. You should reach out to us. Mr. Khati, we would ask that you allow the next speaker. Please, we have a full meeting to continue with. Well, you're not signed up. We have other people who've signed up.
Right. Wait three and a half hours to speak, and I'm...
And you have the same three minutes everyone else did, and you may email us your comments.
Thank you very much. We'll take it to the press. That's what we'll do, and we'll tell them that you are unwilling to...
Thank you very much. We appreciate you.
And I'll tell you what. You are a poor... I'm calling you out.
All right. Our work, you really can't do that. Please stop. You want me to do it? Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to the next speaker. It was Pat Coleman. Thank you.
My name is Pat Coleman, and it's important that my wife Danielle and I share an event that occurred at Old Greenwich School on January 29th of this year. It's equally important for you to know that we are more concerned about the response and aftermath of the event. On that Tuesday afternoon in January, our eight-year-old third-grade daughter, an IEP student, returned to the classroom to prepare for dismissal and to attend the school's afters program. She discovered a message written on her iPad that read the following: "Hi Shay, my name is the Ghost. I'm the one who drew the bloody eight on your name tag. I'm also the one who drew the bloody dog on your name tag, too. Just to let you know, I'm going to kill Scarlett, your dog, and I'm also going to kill you. And I'm also going to take away all of your Beanie Boos. Just to let you know, you're an effing butt. I hate you." While our daughter's educational experience has been positive, administratively, we're so troubled by the lack of urgency, process, and empathy to this death threat, and that's what it was. The principal spoke to our daughter about this death threat without either parent in attendance and then sent her to afters. We received a phone call from the media specialist after school that there was an inappropriate message and that our daughter was fine attending afters. It's preposterous. The principal left the school and later said to me that night, "I had to drop my daughter off at swimming." No calls by the school were placed to us, or the police, or the district security, or the Board of Ed when the principal and I finally spoke that evening. I called the police that night and met with them. They came to my house. They told me we were absolutely doing the right thing by reporting this. They referred me to the Special Victims Unit that specializes in these matters. They were terrific. I was assured by SVU they were on it to sit tight. SVU shared that they had not received a call from the school that evening. Before school resumed on Thursday, I met with the principal and asked if she concluded her due diligence processed with the police and was deemed secure. She said she had not and still had not met with the police. Forty hours had gone by. The principal and I discussed, while some could surmise this threat was a prank, everything needed to be ruled out before ultimately drawing the conclusion, especially when children are involved. Still, my daughter remained home while 600 children returned to class unknowing there was a death threat that was currently being investigated. I asked if she alerted the class and the school families. She did not. On Friday morning, I again spoke to Special Victims, and they told me it was secure. They go back.
Oh, she pulled the cord out over here.
There were two subsequent meetings. Just to paraphrase, the acting superintendent said mistakes were made, and there was a need to hold a transparent meeting with the class, and further a town hall with the school would be a good idea. The deputy superintendent felt the appropriate steps followed in response to the threat were appropriate. The class meeting ensued. I asked, "How would you react if the same threat occurred?" To give you a sense of the response, a question was asked several times by two people until one mother stood up.
The next speaker is Brandon Yu.
I mailed my comments, and I got a one-second reply. I'll speak to the Greenwich Times. It's disgusting.
Thank you.
The principal's got it out. Thank you for nothing. That's just what got to happen. It works.
Okay. We'd ask that you please refrain from comments. Next speaker is Brandon Yu.
Do you expect me to act? Okay. I only have three minutes, so I shortened my speech. Good evening. My name is Brandon Yu, and I'm an eighth grader at Western Middle School. This year, I chose technology addiction for my capstone project, and I am here to talk about my findings. Compared to the past, today our schools are more digitally oriented and, quote-unquote, low in students, Chromebooks and iPads that they can take home after school, during the weekends, blah blah blah, and even keep doing summer vacation. And all students need to do is sign a, quote-unquote, "digital citizenship contract," which is rarely followed up on, and for the most part, students are simply trusted to do the right thing. No, they don't always do the right thing. The American Academy of Pediatrics links excessive technological use with lower academic performance, sleep problems, obesity, behavior problems, increased aggression, low self-esteem, and depression. Bad stuff. At my school, Western, a sample 47-minute class may be, and often is, completely online, which would include sometimes watching a video on Google Classroom at the beginning, followed by classwork on a Google Doc or Google Classroom, planning and checking homework on Schoology, and free screen time at the end, once you've finished everything. It is nearly impossible today to avoid technology in the Greenwich Public Schools, where everything from homework to standardized testing, yes, standardized testing, is done using Chromebooks. And yes, for the record, I have had Chromebook assignments in gym class. So, where does this come into me? Well, most of my teachers will say I'm a kid that needs personalized learning, which is the purpose that the Board of Ed purchased the Chromebooks about five years ago. I received my iPad in fifth grade, which is much later than many of the incoming students today receive theirs. However, I believe that this did not at all hold me back academically. As a matter of fact, I believe that it benefited me not having the Chromebook for the first five years. I have seen the detrimental effects of this change when I compare the way I was taught in second grade to the way my brother, a rising third grader at Parkway, is taught today. I, therefore, would propose... I chose... Okay, first of all, I chose this topic because in elementary school, I said that technology's not at all holding me back, but in middle school, my grades slipped from As to Cs. Not good.
Thirty seconds.
Oh, okay, fine. I'll skip the part. So, my solution is to completely eliminate use of the iPad in elementary schools with the possibility of... No, I'm not done! With the possibility of giving fifth graders, quote-unquote, "trial" Chromebooks in fifth grade. Studies have shown their large part in elementary school development and social and excessive technology use limits that class interaction. It becomes more important in middle and high school, and there the best solution would be instead to place a hard limit on use. They should also give students a choice of whether to use a Chromebook and not let them keep them over summertime. Thank you for your time.
I wasn't done yet.
Thank you, Board, for hearing me tonight. I, too, have similar concerns about the leadership at Old Greenwich School. And my daughter's graduating this year, so it'd be very easy for me to just let things slide and move on, but I'm concerned about the leadership of the school as it pertains to generations and people of younger age who are going to be going through the school. We love OGS and all the things that it represents, but we have seen some things. There was an incident in November of this past year with my daughter and several other students, where a teacher, for lack of a better word, was having an out-of-body experience. The students didn't know whether the teacher was sick or whether the teacher was on drugs. It was four students in a room the size of a closet getting music lessons. The teacher was confused, eyes bulging, throwing things at the students and not letting...
Mr. Bartlett, I'd ask that you refrain from talking about individual and district personnel.
I'm not talking... I didn't mention a personnel.
You don't have to mention the name used...
No, no, I'm not mentioning a personnel. Other people...
I'm just trying to follow our policy.
I'm sorry. You've interrupted my time now, okay? My understanding is there's not a back and forth.
No, but when you asked me to follow our policy...
There have been many others who have spoken about the principal, and you allowed them I will be talking about the incident, not the person who's been doing it. Okay. So, there was terrible communication from the principal of the school. We got a phone call... By the way, ambulances were called, police were called, okay? The kids were terrified. We got a phone call from the principal two hours later, a message. "Just so you know, there was a little incident at school today, and you know, you may hear something from your daughter later on, but just wanted to know that the kids did a great job." That was the message. They felt threatened. They didn't know if someone was dying, and that's the message that we received. We subsequently learned from members of OGS staff about concerns about a certain staff member at the school that had been voiced to the principal of the school. A Google search showed disturbing information about a certain staff member in the school that hasn't been able to be verified because the documents are sealed. We only asked the school district two things: that a certain staff member did not return to the school, which, by the way, they didn't, and I applaud you for that process; and number two, we wanted to know what the principal knew or didn't know about this certain staff member.
Thirty seconds.
So, we can know whether or not the principal's judgment was appropriate in allowing that person to remain as a member of the faculty if, in fact, they had prior knowledge. This is not an accusation as to whether they had prior knowledge. We have asked for the information to find out if the principal did, and we have received no communication back from the district as to that situation. Thank you.
The next speaker is Julie DeShaw. This is the last speaker that's signed up. If there's somebody else that wishes to address the board on an agenda or non-agenda, I might ask them to...
There's another list outside.
There's another list outside.
Of additional names.
Yeah, I think somebody might be leaning on a light, so if we could...
Good evening. My name is Julie Deschamps. I serve on the PTA Green Schools and the Greenwich Recycling Advisory Board. Thank you to the Board of Education for eliminating the toxic and wasteful styrofoam trays in the district cafeterias starting next month. This is a step in the right direction to safeguard our children's health and the environment, but the most responsible choice has not yet been implemented district-wide. In April, this board resolved to investigate alternatives to the styrofoam trays while stainless steel trays are trialed at New Lebanon School. These alternatives are limited to three options: first, disposable paper boats; second, single-use polylactic acid, or PLA, compartment trays; and lastly, reusable trays. Since an appropriation was not requested for reusable wares and dishwashers, food services will likely begin using a paper boat like this because the PLA trays are cost prohibitive. Paper boats were piloted numerous times over the past decade, first at Parkway School in 2011, and then in spring 2018 at all district schools one day a week. While safer, the paper boats have limited use and functionality. They are unstable, difficult to hold, do not allow for separation of foods, are not an ample size to fit all lunch items, and they're wasteful. Nearly half a million paper boats will be thrown in the trash this school year, to be incinerated at a cost to taxpayers and the detriment of our air and soil quality. Again, I'd like to ask you to consider a request for an interim appropriation at the start of the new school year to fund reusable wares and dishwashers. We should not wait another year, another budget cycle, when the responsible solution is right in front of us. Reusable stainless steel trays and dishwashers have been vetted this spring at New Lebanon School with success. This system... Between the adoption of reusable trays and other waste reduction measures, the waste stream has been reduced fifty percent by weight, removing an average of fifty pounds of liquids and recycling each day, or extrapolated to over nine thousand pounds annually. At just one school, imagine the savings district-wide. The dedicated kitchen staff, custodians, and monitors have given this approach positive reviews. Students can handle the trays easily, and there's an ample space for all lunch items. But most importantly-
Thirty seconds.
-students are experiencing sustainability, environmental stewardship, and civic responsibility in the cafeteria, not just the classroom. This is the model the district should follow for the coming school year. A reusable ware system pays for itself in just a few years when savings from purchasing, hauling, and disposal are taken into account. A reusable ware system is the proven and responsible solution for our budget, the environment, and our children's education. It should be funded and implemented in the 2019-2020 school year, and we should not wait. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. The next speaker is Lenny Fahey, followed by Caroline Nierom.
Hello, Board. I'm a parent of three special needs children. We have two IEPs and one 504. We have attended seven GPS schools, including preschools and summer schools. At all seven schools, we have experienced GPS breaking my children's civil rights and/or not following the IEP, documented as recently as yesterday in a PPT meeting. A few examples: an assistant principal told me that if I didn't allow her to send my child for a forced hold at a mental institution at 9:30 a.m. on a school day, that she would make sure that I did not get custody of my children in my divorce by claiming I was a negligent parent. I got this on the record. She said it into a microphone. She and her colleagues repeatedly all lied, as they were unknowingly on the record, about what transpired that day, and they got caught breaking my son's civil rights repeatedly. The outcome: you paid for my son to be outsourced for the past five years, and you promoted her to principal. This is one-tenth of what she perpetrated on my family. Is that what we here in Greenwich value and what we want to promote? Last summer, in an on-the-record meeting with the town attorney present, the district agreed to pay for residential school for that same child. The town wrote the IEP that he would attend residential school, and you would pay for it. Fast forward a month, and Mayor, excuse me, the special ed administrator, who had never attended a single meeting, phoned in the message that, quote, "we misunderstood," and that we would not be getting anything. My son was in the room when this message was relayed, and he was supposed to start school the next morning at 10 a.m. The assistant principal and the special ed representative were literally holding onto my shoulders and sobbing into me, saying that they could not believe what they were perpetrating upon me. They sat there telling me how to get my child what he needs. The assistant principal walked out of the meeting and called Mr. Mayo, who had been superintendent for a few weeks, to beg him to intervene. We were prepared to sue the school district for stay-put the next morning. The two administrators told me we would win in court one hundred percent of the time, but Greenwich continued anyway. A principal told me on video that my seven-year-old son likely caused a miscarriage for a teacher. These three people are employed by Greenwich despite the same people being listed over and over again tonight. Greenwich special ed operates in a penny-wise, pound-foolish manner. I have talked to superintendents for seven years. I don't have a child at Eagle Hill School. It's another penny-wise, pound-foolish argument. And special ed is such an enormous part of your budget? You have a $5 million sue-the-families budget line item? You are outsourcing kids not because they are moving into this district, but because you are not, you are failing them repeatedly, over and over again. This is nothing compared to what I could tell you tonight, but I only have two minutes. I know many of you up here. I can show you videos of these teachers, principals, vice principals-
Time.
-and you should get it together.
Thank you. We've got one minute. If you haven't spoken before, only three minutes. So if you've spoken before, you're not going to be called again. So Caroline Nierom, the last speaker that has signed up that hasn't spoken before. If there's someone-
My wife's speaking for me.
Well, we'll call her, that's fine.
She's speaking. Danielle Coleman, yes.
She can come up when the time is right. So if you want to speak and you haven't spoken before, I'd ask that you be prepared to be on the left-hand side. Thank you.
He's five. He is an innocent child. May I stress innocent, and may I stress child, and I may cry through this whole thing, I'm so sorry. He is struggling, may I stress, struggling to receive the support he needs. He's regressed significantly this year, but we're being told at PTs that he's having a great year. Our son is coming home almost every day from school, crying, tantruming, and perseverating from anxiety. He's becoming aggressive with school staff because he's that dysregulated throughout the day due to lack of proper supports. He recently hit a teacher, and the school didn't want to recognize this. I had to demand an incident report. The school also didn't inform me of this incident. My son did after school. It was not written on his daily behavioral chart. His behavior will only get more aggressive and disruptive if someone doesn't help him soon, and he is five! He's been denied a registered behavioral technician, which he so desperately needs. What is it going to take for my son to be successful in this system? That cheery and dreamy video that you guys saw earlier only reflected what a neurotypical child experiences at COSCOB School. Did you see any representation of the special needs community in that video? You wouldn't, because that would have reflected struggle, no matter the technology. What you saw was student-led conferences. What you didn't see was my son, who couldn't lead me through student-led conferences. What you saw was neurotypical children appreciating the flexible seating. What you didn't see was my son struggling despite the flexible seating. What we saw was an inaccurate depiction of how the school district functions and the lack of support and opportunities my son receives because there is no program in place to support the autistic community. This is a systematic problem that will only continue to swallow budget funds through litigation and outplacements. Please consider serving all students in this district and giving the autistic and special needs population the support and opportunities that their peers are given. Thank you.
All right, so if you come up, if you wouldn't mind identifying yourself, because we don't have you signed up. Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Padai, and I'm going to finish what my husband started. In the end, it was the interim superintendent of schools, thank you, you're sitting here tonight, who did his own investigation and felt that our daughter would be better served in another Greenwich public school. When she arrived at her new school, that same star test was re-administered, and our daughter's test results were exactly the same as they had been prior to the principal helping her with answers. We were also told by her new school that our daughter was given allowances at her prior school that were outside what had been written in her PPT. To add insult to injury, before turning over our daughter's academic file, the principal closed out our daughter's record by saying she was dismissed for social issues. I'm going to repeat that line from your neuropsych evaluator, in which he said she was one of the most compliant and friendly students we have worked with this year. She has such a mature and socially appropriate personality. There were more than a few staff members that know all of our children and were shocked at what they heard, so much so that these staff members called us at home to ask us what really happened. The principal places appearances and her need to preserve her reputation above all else. Students' academic welfare and ensuring their success are unimportant to her. It is completely confounding. Obfuscating real issues coupled with veiled efforts to mollify parents' concerns for their children is an ongoing pattern with her. Ensuring that her tenure is maintained comes at the expense of all else. This leader not only put our child in harm's way, but also looked to tarnish her record for the rest of her life. Our daughter was nothing more than collateral damage to her in her quest to ensure the optics that her public illusion remained intact. Her harmful and deceitful actions were only compounded by the chief PPS officer who aided her in the cover-up. I can, I literally can't understand how you sleep at night. When did it become okay to subordinate the needs of a vulnerable child? Don't look away. To protect one's reputation? This must stop here and now. We stand here before you, the parents of several children, members of the PTA, and integral part of their schools, asking you for the last time to make change.
Thank you.
Hi. How do you do? Hello? Hello? Okay. Hi, my name is Randy Caravella. I am Greenwich Athletic Foundation founder. I'm here tonight to speak briefly about Cardinal Stadium. We have put a plan in to you guys, which is a little contradictory to the plan that you originally agreed upon, but with the new situation with the bleachers being condemned, we think the plan that we brought forward is a responsible, fiscally and timely manner for you to at least consider at your next meeting to take a vote, because the kids deserve better now. And the plan that you have is going to run into obstacles, and it's going to take more time to get done. So we're hoping that you'll look at a plan that can store the team rooms, the bathrooms underneath the bleachers, and get it done in a timely manner. We are offering to offer managerial assistance, financial assistance, time and energy. You know, you've done a lot with KDNG. It was great that you had them do a new drawings with the team rooms underneath, so we hope we can work together and get one of the drawings either KDNG did or one that Rick Kroll has gotten, that we can move together and get this done quickly and benefit for all the kids at the high school. That's all I can say.
Thank you very much. If you could identify yourself, please.
Hi, I'm Danielle Coleman. I'm Pat's wife. Our daughter Shay was the one who received the death threat, and I'm going to pick up where he left off. After five weeks after the death threat, there were two subsequent meetings that finally occurred with the deputy superintendent and acting superintendent, which ultimately met with an admission by the acting head that mistakes were made, and there was a need to hold a transparent meeting with the class and further thought a broader town hall with the school was a good idea and should be pursued. This was after the deputy superintendent felt that appropriate steps were followed in response to the threat. The class meeting failed to assuage many of the parents' concerns. The town hall never happened. During the class meeting, there were several tense exchanges when this question was posed to the principal. How would you react if the same death threat occurred today? To give you a sense for the response, the question was asked several times and by two different people until one mother sat up and said, "I feel like I need to pull my daughter out from class right now." Some of the families spoke of their children being interrogated during the nearly month-long process without prior parental notice nor approval. The school psychologist was not part of the due diligence process, but merely a counseling resource for those in need. The emotional threat was never acknowledged by the principal. She told me my daughter was fine when they called me that day. The class meeting ended when the acting superintendent asked the class to decide whether the principal should be removed or not. There was disbelief among the parents, and the meeting ended immediately. We've had two follow-up phone calls since the acting superintendent was clear with him, with the acting superintendent, and were clear with him that people are fearful of retribution when it comes to sticking their necks out. His call at that class meeting would be met with angst. He didn't disagree. I further, we further shared that scores of families have come forward to us and told their heartfelt and painful stories at Old Greenwich School. Some of them have hired attorneys and have advised to seek remedy. He again expressed concerns and said to keep pressing, so now here we are. I have expressed all along that I wanted to be part of a solution for transparency in creating clear protocols moving ahead. We still do, but it's time that the Board hold the principal and the deputy superintendent accountable for the inept handling of a death threat that occurred to our daughter. Other voices and stories must be heard. An independent and thorough investigation should occur. Voices should feel safe to come forward. It's time now for a leadership change at Old Greenwich School. We were told to be patient. She's relatively new at being a principal. She has worked in schools for a long time. I have not been a principal for a day. I would never leave the school and go pick up my daughter from swim practice if there was a death threat like the one my daughter received, and I sure as hell wouldn't give a student his answers on an exam. That's crazy.
That's the end of our meeting. Next up, our monthly report, the superintendent's report.
I gotta change this plug.
All right, Mr. Mayo.
Yeah? Okay. Good evening. As this is my final Board of Education meeting, I wanted to thank the Board for giving me the opportunity to be the superintendent of the Greenwich Public Schools. It is, it was a dream come true for me. The other night, though, at the Greenwich High School senior awards ceremony, on reading the memorial and community scholarships, I was able to reflect on my twenty-seven years at Greenwich High School. I began my career in 1976 and left Greenwich High School in 2004 to be principal of Eastern Middle School. I realized Monday night that I belong in Greenwich High School. Is it part of me? It is where I grew up. So thank you for that opportunity as well. I also wanted to thank the Cabinet as well because of their good guidance and friendship. We're an amazing team, especially in a crisis. The building principals have been tremendously supportive, and I commend them for their efforts each day in their buildings on behalf of the nine thousand students in the Greenwich Public Schools. Finally, I want to thank the teachers and professional assistants for demonstrating respect for their students and caring for their well-being. They are where the rubber hits the road, and if they don't have a grip, then all of our plans are for naught. I promised the Board that we would review the current Parks and Rec MOU and make changes to it that would benefit our students, not adults or outside groups paying to rent our fields. That initial meeting will take place on Monday, and I will report back to the Board on the progress we have made. There may need to be additional meetings, but I will continue to attend until we have a new MOU that is satisfactory to the Board of Education in place. In the meantime, Peter, you need to appoint at least one Board member to the proposed field study committee that will meet during the upcoming year. The administration is going to appoint Dean Watson to represent facilities. So if we can get that done as soon as possible, that'd be great. Lastly, we have found a, we think we have found a postable paper tray that does not contain PFAs to replace styrofoam trays that are currently in use. We've also requested a sample and pricing for a five-pound paper boat for use at Greenwich High School, and we will continue the practice of trayless Tuesdays and the use of those paper boats. paper boats in our K-8 schools. I don't have any prices yet. I, we haven't even seen the products yet, so I will update the board when I receive additional information. Thank you.
All right, so it's reports of officers, committees, and liaisons. Dr. Francis.
Not exactly sure how to do this, but I know sometimes we do have a little bit of discussion with the superintendent's report. So, this has been a difficult start to our meeting. Well, I'm sorry. We had a wonderful start to our meeting, and then we had a difficult portion. And, you know, we as board members, and obviously I'm not speaking for everybody, but I think there's clearly a difficult emotional response to this kind of a situation, do not manage our personnel. But I am quite sure that we all feel that our students do need to be at the center of decisions, of care, and of those things. And I would simply say that I hope that these issues are being addressed with care. And I know that you certainly care about our students, and I'm hoping very much that these things are being taken care of. And I sort of feel the need to say that so we can kind of try and move on to sort of the other issues on our agenda, but I would feel uncomfortable not at least making some kind of response to things that we've heard.
Mr. Scher.
It's late, so I wasn't going to bring it up, but since Gaetan opened the door. Hope is not a strategy. So, to be candid, I think, you know, some of these issues are not foreign to any of the eight of us, or shouldn't be foreign to any of the eight of us. You know, we're all out there in the community. We hear this stuff. The real question for the eight of us with the superintendent is, what are we going to prioritize and what are we going to focus on? How are we going to properly represent the people that elected us that we actually represent? And I'm glad we're going over agenda for next year. I'm glad we're going over budget because some of these stories, this is not the first time any of us have heard them, but what we cannot do is continue to delegate it to the administration and not make it a board-level discussion. So, it's unfortunate that it's all coming now, but, you know, we don't live in a place where we can have perfect weather or perfect storm. Hopefully we have perfect weather on Monday. You know, we have to have a serious conversation about all these things that we've heard, and it's overdue.
Ms. Dow.
Yeah, sorry if this is out of order, but I just wanted to, sorry. Yeah, I'm finding a hard time letting go and moving on. I know it's our saying, but we started off the meeting really positively, like you said, Gaetan, and I want to get back there. But the three things that I guess I heard from, and I just want to understand how we could sort of add this to our agenda, or how we're going to discuss it tonight or in the future. I think the clear things out of public comment was Eagle Hill, digital, I guess, too much time, screen time, however you want to call it, and special ed, right? Those are the three things I kind of forgot. And if we want to add it to the agenda, it seems like we can talk about did, screen time and special ed is probably more of a long-term thing, whereas Eagle Hill is kind of more immediate. So, I don't know how we want to go about that, if this is something we could do offline or do here, but we did want to raise that.
If you want, you've got the opportunity to respond.
We've heard about a lot of different issues tonight. If you want to go right to the transportation piece of the issue that we talked about tonight, we have a fiduciary responsibility to town of Greenwich. You guys can override me, that's your choice, but if we provide Eagle Hill with transportation with less than 50% of their children living in Connecticut, then we provide another school with the same transportation. It's just an issue that I have with, not with Eagle Hill, my daughter attended Eagle Hill. My son taught there. I have no issue with Eagle Hill. And if anybody says I'm bringing someone's civil rights, they're going to meet me outside in the parking lot. Okay? Well, hey, you know, as I'm not. But I think there's another school that's right at the borderline. We've got to decide. Where are we going to spend our money? Are we going to spend on yellow buses, or are we going to spend on the classroom? We have a 1.95 increase next year. I worry about that.
Ms. Raven.
I think it's one thing to decide, but what I took from the feedback and the comment is maybe the way we approached it, because maybe we have more flexibility in how we notify and give, if this was something that we were going to uphold the time to make adjustments, it doesn't sound like we did that, just from my point of view.
Yeah, we notify our parents in the school district about transportation in August, so that they can make plans if they are not eligible for, for transportation. So you remember, one mile for elementary, 1.5 for middle school, or two miles for the high school. We notify them in, when they get their August packet, if they're eligible for transportation or not. Eagle Hill got a notification in May that they were not going to be receiving transportation or not.
Ms. Scher.
I candidly, to the premise of my colleagues, I, we can spend our time focusing on what the administration is doing, how this got started, what happened with Eagle Hill, the notification, all the rest of it. Obviously, it's created a problem, you know? And I, candidly, I don't think it's real productive to criticize Ralph at this point. However, if we go do our homework, which I think we, we, you know, anyone to criticize Ralph at this point, it's not real helpful. And I'm not suggesting you aren't, or, and I'm just saying, you know, I'm hearing people criticize in the public, and it doesn't move us forward. However, our policy, if you haven't read it, 0.51, okay, which covers transportation, it's buried in a policy called other administrative procedures. It's actually one line long. So the board has not made this as a policy on transportation clear. That policy was written in 2005. It was last updated in 2008, okay? And the only thing that is in, that relates to this is procedures, which as you know, as Ms. O'Neil will tell you 100 times, we don't review procedures, we don't approve procedures. I guess we kind of review them, but we don't approve them. And our procedures have not been updated through 2008. And the one line, and there's conflicts, by the way. There are conflicts. If you go through it and read it, there's one area where it talks about special education transportation for kids, and it kind of talks about, doesn't discern whether they're public or private. So there's a little bit of a conflict in there in the procedure. The one procedure that talks about transportation for private schools, it's one line that says essentially the administration should implement it per statute. Okay? You go read the statute. The statute says, "We're obligated to provide transportation above 50%." It's completely silent and leaves it up to us what we do below 50%. So I think we've got a little bit of a mess associated because our policies are not tightly to our procedures. Ralph Mayo did not create this situation. As I say, this has been in place since 2008. I don't even remember who was the superintendent in 2008. What I would suggest we do though, as a board, is we should probably look pretty quickly at our policies. I would even suggest we do it, because there's going to be a suggestion later, maybe relating to Cardinal Stadium, that there is a special meeting we have to call. I think we should very quickly look at that and decide whether or not, asking for information from the superintendent, as Ralph has highlighted, do we want to make modifications to this? Do we want to leave it as it is? What do we want to do? I feel the need, I don't know if anybody else does. I'm very concerned that we have a big population, special ed. By the way, we also heard tonight, some of the parents at Eagle Hill may have IEPs from Greenwich Public Schools that it's, that outline transportation. So there's a whole, I'd like to understand all the legal, hold on Ralph. I'd like, I hear from them, I'll hear from you, I'd want to get all the information, I'd want to understand the legal ramifications that the board is facing, because the board faces those ramifications. The administration does, but we're the ultimate people who are responsible to that. So I would want some more information, and I would also really want to understand in detail, and you know this, this won't cause a surprise, I will want to understand the cost impact, because all of us have learned through start time, for any of those of you who were here, there is no, oh, just take out a bus like a piece of Lego. It doesn't work that way. When you change something, you have to recalculate the whole network. There may be savings, there may not be savings. If we had to provide transportation for somebody else, it may cost more, it may not cost more. And we've learned that quite painfully through the transportation. So I just see some work to do, and I'm going to, however we get to it, agenda planning, we need to figure out this work plan, and I think letting this just fester through till September, where there's a great uncertainty with Eagle Hill is not going to, for me, it's not an acceptable answer. But, you know, my colleagues, I appeal to you, you'll have to figure out what that means for you.
Mary, are there any students from Eagle Hill that require special transportation from the Greenwich Public Schools?
The student was placed by the Greenwich Public Schools at Eagle Hill with an IEP, and that IEP had special transportation on it.
If the student was placed by the Greenwich Public Schools through their IEP at Eagle Hill, and that IEP had special transportation on it, we would be required to buy, to provide the transportation. I think one of the compounding issues here is that many students from Eagle Hill are from New York State, and New York State has different regulations about transportation, which is confusing. If you live, and I'm not an expert on the New York State, so I'll give you my understanding, it's what's called a full FAP state, Free and Appropriate Public Education. If you have an IEP, you're entitled to transportation if you go to a private school in New York, if you live in New York. Connecticut does not have those rules. So when, we explain this a lot to parents when they come and say, "I want all my services here," which is a New York State regulation, but not a Connecticut regulation. So the only children who are Greenwich residents who would be required to receive transportation through their IEP would be students that we place, that are placed by the Greenwich Public Schools at Eagle Hill. Any other student, they may have an IEP from Greenwich, and it may say special transportation, but because they're not placed by us, we're not required to give those services because Connecticut is not a full FAP state. Does that make sense?
Ms. Daden.
I think the state statute is very clear. I think we should handle the policy issues at a strategic board level during agenda planning, and not go into details on management at this time. We have agenda planning later in the session. I really feel that being responsive to the public is a great thing, but we have to handle it through the policy level. So can we please move on with our business agenda, and then when we get to agenda planning, we can schedule those items at a later time.
All right. So reports of officers, committees, liaisons? Dr. Francis?
Strategic Plan, we have a, we can confirm, is it June 18th at 2:00? I'm sorry, that's about to. Strategic Plan, June 18th at 2:00, we'll be meeting with Tony Jones as well to discuss that. PGC, we have a wrap-up meeting to do some cleanup work probably, in terms of cleaning out some old policies, and we will be back in force in the fall with trying to finish up our K work. Curriculum Council, we had a follow-up meeting in terms of the capacities of the vision of the graduate, and talking about ways to improve the continuity of that K through 12, and I think that's it.
Just New Lebanon School on time, under budget. If you haven't been by there, the old New Lebanon School, not to be confused with the new New Lebanon School, has been demolished. It went very well, so much so that we had put aside money for hazardous material remediation. We've got some savings there that'll go back into our contingency, so it is looking more and more positive in terms of that. We continue to chase our payments from the state, that's been actually very productive. And, and the work will begin once school is over there, they get an extra day because we took a day off for the move-in. Once school is out, you'll see the work begin on the field and the parking lot. So by the fall, that campus will be, be looking good.
All right, if there's no other reports, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is discussion items, the GPS assessment calendar.
What you had before you are summative assessments that we give to all of our students throughout the school year. You all asked for additional information of, from what we had done in previous years. I sent that to you today with a link to our previous summative assessment plan. Actually, there weren't just summative assessments on that plan, there's also testing that, you know, that we do throughout the school year. And I also sent you what we do at the high school when a student is not performing grade low.
Dr. Francis.
So, for example, the COGAT, which was in the old assessment plan, I'm assuming we're still doing that? It just, so what were sort of the criteria for which tests were put into the new report and which were not? Because it seems like we are doing, for example, I, my understanding is we're still doing the COGAT in second grade? Is that true or not?
I believe we use the COGAT for. Yeah, for ALP, yeah.
Mr. Scher.
This is maybe through Ralph, through Mrs. Bricee. Probably two or three years ago, you presented to the board a deep discussion about the strategy, the process, the research, and everything that's behind this. Is there anything that was in that report that is different than what you're presenting here? It looks like it's exactly the same, and I'm just trying to understand if there was any change, because this is just the schedule. I'm interested to understand, is there some change to assessment strategy or everything that you documented to the board previously?
No, we still have a comprehensive approach to assessing students, right? And this is the state summative assessment schedule, I believe, right? For the purpose of policy, to present that to you annually. But our approaches remain the same, again aligned.
So that, what we got before is still valid?
Absolutely. With our screening, diagnostic, formative, and summative approach, that is still valid, yes.
On the assessment plan, is there anywhere where we get the results from the foreign language acquisition test, the SOPA test? We never seem to see that data.
I believe that's the lost links you're referring to? The lost links assessment, is that what you're referring to?
Is that what you, is that what you used instead of?
Yes, that's the state assessment, and I believe we reported that data most recently through the Humanities and ESL report, so that data was presented.
Having not compared the data, sorry, that was sent to us this afternoon, which is high level, are we testing more or less? Because I've been getting lots of feedback from people that feel like there's been more and more testing creeping up, and so. It doesn't seem that way. That's why I'm confused. So if you could explain that to me.
So I think it's a school-by-school discussion, and we do monitor that. It might be within the formative assessment process, certainly, and specific to their SIP goals. Again, I don't want to speak. Again, I don't want to speak right now off the top of my head, but we do monitor that building by building.
But as a district, you feel it's about the same, more or less?
I would say it's about, it's the same. Again, we're always examining how much time we are testing the students and the purpose of our assessments. The need for reducing assessments, collapsing, or is there a need to introduce something so that we can get the results that, or use, get the data that we need in order to make those decisions for students? It's significantly less than years past, which we've gone through that whole process.
Ms. Olson.
My question simply is why? Why is it, why would it be that one elementary school has significantly more testing than another? It's school to school, so I'm just curious why.
There might be the different progress monitoring tools that they're using. So based on a particular goal that a grade might have set, then how, how are they progress monitoring against that to see the growth?
And we're saying that we have, we have, there's significantly less testing at elementary schools than there used to be.
There has been, yes, in the past. There used to be at least 37 assessments that the students would go through on an annual basis at the elementary level.
And this, I guess this isn't a question or a comment, but just, we hear about anxiety and test stress and screen time, and all of a sudden we're, the fact that we even had, you said 37 assessments?
When I first arrived in 2012, yes.
Now we have, you don't have an exact number, but now we have...
Well, what you see here are essentially, yes, the assessment.
So I guess if we are going in the right direction, we need to go a little faster.
Ms. Dayton.
I mean, this all looks very familiar to me, from what I have always known that we've been doing since the last four years. But the one thing that I'd like to find out more about is called ECRA Growth. I'm not familiar with that. Who runs that assessment?
It's actually not an assessment. It's the, it's the calculation that, the formula that we report out through ECRA, and you get that report through the achievement updates. So that's, I think, the purpose of this is letting you know that in September, in January, and where else is this, is it in June, that we will be reporting out that, that growth model to you. And that's, those are the reports that Jen Lau prepares for you.
Does the ECRA Growth go out to parents in individual reports?
No. Again, there's that formula, very complicated formula, that's embedded within the system for ECRA, where it takes all of the history of the past assessments, I think, I believe it's at least six to eight assessments prior to that history. And then every time we administer a benchmark assessment, it recalculates and helps you communicate the growth of the student.
Okay, I'm gonna put a plug in again, as I have in prior meetings, to, over the next year, move to reporting on individual student growth through a mailing or an email to all parents, so that we have a truly individualized snapshot of each child.
Currently, just so that you are aware, right now, we do send the STAR letters home, which does report growth. And that goes out, elementary, they determine a date where they all send it home at the same time, and middle school sends those at home, to home as well.
So, Mr. Scher, hang on, pass to you in a second. As a parent, I find the STAR to be an isolated data point that doesn't really help me out. So I'm totally with Jennifer, and I think there's other nodding heads up that we really want to see the bigger picture sent and shared with parents, whether it's in parent-teacher conference. It's gotta be shared, because we want them to be active participants in child's learning.
We completely agree with you. And again, that was a promise a few superintendents ago when we first launched the STAR assessment, right? So we are examining, what's a better way to communicate the achievement and growth of our learners? And we agree that that isolated assessment is not the best way. But again, that was a promise that was made, and so we're adhering to that. As I had shared, the intent was that through ECRA and ECRA, there would be that possibility, but it's just not possible right now, so we'll continue to examine that.
Mr. Scher.
I'm just gonna full, Megan, the reason I brought this up, and I'm glad Jennifer brought it up too. The reason I brought this up is, this whole subject, we were presented a number of years ago as a board, a full strategy. It actually came up in a meeting where we wanted to talk about achievement. Instead, we didn't get a discussion about achievement, we got a discussion about assessment strategy, okay? It was kind of a off-topic thing, but it ultimately turned out to be very helpful, because that was the presentation of the whole strategy that underpins this. That's why I just asked the question. Has anything changed from three years ago? You just heard the answer, no. All we've done is execute. I would encourage people to go back and read that document in detail, because it was, it's an excruciatingly detailed document about all of this that's behind this. The point I wanted to make, at the same time, we were told as a board, okay, by the then superintendent, okay, Bill Mcursie, through his CIO, that they were implementing ECRA as the aggregator of all of these scores, so that we could get an individualized growth expectation for every kid in the district. We were shown a sample student profile that would include that plus other information that would be sent in summary form to all parents. It was never done. It was a shock two or three meetings ago when we heard, you know, this continuous criticism of ECRA, and then something about it couldn't be implemented. We have to get to the bottom of that. We need to execute. This is for Tony to do. We need to execute on the commitments that are made to the board, and the board shouldn't find out a year later that it wasn't done. This has nothing to do with Ralph Mayo. I'm sure if he were long enough, he would have found this one and cleaned this up too. But we've got to go get that, and candidly, I don't know how many times, though there's those of us who have kids serving, attending Greenwich Public Schools serving. It feels like that sometime. Is that either prison or the military? I'm not sure which one I just referenced. Attending Greenwich Public Schools. The STAR assessments come in, and the relative performance is against the entire United States. I'd be surprised if there's a kid in Greenwich who's any lower than the 95th percentile. It's, it's a useless document, and parents have been talking about it for a while. So when we get to a agenda planning, Mr. Bernstein, I was thinking we didn't need to add this, but maybe we do need to add this in detail.
Dr. Francis is gonna tell us that it's on there.
Yeah, it's on there for our September meeting. I had a specific conversation, and I'm sorry, I don't see what I'm about this, specific conversation with Dr. Jones about it, explained your perspective, at least if I understood what you were giving me on this subject, and that we wanted to fully understand this. And if it's not, if for some reason we really cannot use this program, that we want some tool for it. And this was my impression of the view of the board, and that this is what I wanted us to discuss at that meeting.
Ms. Doe.
I mean, we really agree so completely like this. So I think we should celebrate that, and it's very... And so, it's very clear that we all want to see change, whether it's as a parent or as a board member. And I have this excuse that, you know, the software can't do it. I mean, having worked in the software industry, then let's get a different provider. I mean, we must be a huge contractor then. So fix it.
Anybody else on this? All right, well, thank you, and we are gonna see this very early in the fall, so I'm gonna consider that. All right, next up, Cardinal Field, Mr. Mayo.
Thank you, Mr. Bracy, the hits just keep on coming here. So, a while ago, we all, the Board of Education, not we, but you, voted on Plan B for Cardinal Field. Plan B was to erect bleachers, and that was pretty much it as part of Plan B. But the other part of Plan B that people need to, the public needs to understand, is that we kept the field facing the same directions, north and south. If we wanted to do anything with the track, we would have had to change the, the track to an east-west direction, which would have cost the district an extra, it would have been a multi-million dollar addition to the, to the project. So, I mean, I, I agree that track and field is not running on a field that we can have an FCAC championship meet on, but we still can have an FCAC meet on it. So that's, that was that part of that. We received $3.9 million from the Board of Education in taxation, and we had two conditions, actually three conditions, to get the, the full 3.9. But to get the first 1.8, our, the conditions were, we look at putting the facilities underneath the stadium, which you receive those diagrams with your packet. And also, we look at a public-private partnership, and you've seen the GAF's proposal in those documents as well. I'm recommending that we stick with Plan B and go forward, because it's not just about the stadium, it's about Greenwich High School site plan.
So, I'll jump in. I missed the last stadium committee, but I've now read the minutes that are online and I've looked at the documents. And I, I guess, really the point that this is at, there's the plan we've accepted, there's basically four flavors of what putting things underneath would be. We actually don't need to make those decisions now. The critical decision that needs to be made is whether or not plumbing and electric go underneath such that future plans, because the, the money that was approved by the BET and then the RTM is just about the bleachers. Right now, it's about the bleachers and it's about future design. It doesn't actually pick one design over any other design. It's design money. That's...
According to, according to the May 11 thing we approved, March 11 thing we approved?
The first phase is about the bleachers, Peter. The bleachers, the press box, the elevator, paving...
Yes, a last question.
Right, lights, yes, absolutely, but I'm talking now. Okay, it's, it's about that, and then it's about the money for the additional design work. What comes, what it comes down to is, if we are at any point going to do anything underneath the bleachers, you have to design the bleachers in a way that maximizes the space, and then you have to make sure that you have the necessary hookups underneath, so electric and plumbing. What we decide to put underneath, if anything at all, it doesn't need to, isn't a decision the board needs to make at this time. It's something that should be properly assessed out and discussed, because when you start looking at the options, you start losing square footage, or you need bigger bleachers, which presents zoning challenges, because as the bleachers get bigger, they're higher, and that, that presents a different ball, a different set of circumstances. So, so the idea, the ideal situation is to maximize the space under the bleachers and put the hookups in. And I guess the question, I think, Ralph, that I had asked, I had asked you, and I think you have the answer, is, can that be done in the existing funding that we have before us now to do the work?
When speaking with Dan, I, we, we believe we have enough money to, to do that, to have the infrastructure underneath the bleachers in case, just in case we need it. But we're gonna need storage underneath the bleachers regardless, so there's gonna have to be some infrastructure underneath the bleachers, no matter what.
Ms. Dayton.
I've looked at the plans very, very carefully. I've asked questions of as many people as I could who are knowledgeable about this. And I think under the bleachers for those rooms is an efficient use of space. I think it's wonderful that we took another look at a brand-new set of ideas about the arrangement of buildings on the site. And I did read the letter at the back. There is still a question about the depth of the buildings underneath the bleachers. However, I think that can be resolved by the building committee that will look into very minor details, like how many stalls can fit in each bathroom? What kind of team room? How many people are supposed to be at capacity in each team room? Will the concessions stand, be used for other purposes? This is all committee work that the board shouldn't tackle. So I am saying that I'm very much in favor of the arrangement of the site that puts the buildings under the bleachers as broad direction, and then let the committee decide the actual sizes of each of those rooms.
Mr. Scher.
I think I come out where Ms. Dayton comes out. I'm into two things, you know, penny-wise, pound-forish. And the other thing I'm into is, a bird in hand is better than two in the bush. So, if you're a hunter, you know, follow that one. So, the thing, though, that I'm a little confused about is, I tried to look at the documents we were provided, and the information didn't help me make the decision. So I kind of have some questions. And the one that I did is, I went back and looked at what we approved on March 11, or what the board approved, what we approved on, I wasn't there, but the board approved on March 11. What the board approved is, it said bleachers, home side, bleachers, guest side, okay? Lighting, parking lots and road, new electrical service, temporary bathrooms, okay? Site plan funding, Phase 1 design funding, Phase 2 design funding. So it had a long list of what was in that, was what we approved. So I would expect that the 3.9 million, I thought it was 3.8, but okay, if you're telling me it's 3.9, I buy it, it's 3.9, okay? That, that is gonna cover everything that was in that list, that that's, because that's what the board approved, okay? It subsequently had something that I found interesting, was the same list for Phase 3. I didn't find you could make a decision about Phase 1 without even understanding Phase 3, because this document that we had in Phase 3 is all about building outbuildings, site grading, a whole bunch of other things. And the, the cost for that is $10 million in the document we approved, okay? So I tried, well, it says 10. So anyway, it, the thing that I got lost on, which I'm hoping somebody can explain, is then we got this document that seemed to juxtapose building something under the bleachers with this other building that is contemplated in Phase 3. And then I couldn't square the circle, because on the diagram, it shows that building is 2,000 square feet, page 2 of the document. And then later in the document, it says, we're building this facility, and it says it's 7,900 square feet. So I was hoping Russ Davidson might be here with a fight, or somebody would be here to kind of explain the difference. That was one thing that I couldn't figure out. The other thing is, in the letter, he gives this big range of cost per square foot. He says, I'm using 3.75. Everything in the estimate is 665. So it adds up to much bigger numbers. It shows like 4.5 million for the 79,000, 7,900 square foot building, but it's based on a six, Kathleen was, our CFO, was just checking, our board CFO, was just checking on me to see it wasn't crazy. For some numbers, those estimates...
Can be crazy, but not this one.
Not this one. Okay, thank you. Love you too. So anyway, I couldn't, I'm looking at the information, and I don't feel like I have the right information. So that's, that's one point. The second thing I wanted, hoping somebody could confirm, because I don't think we have the right information, I don't have the right information to make the decision. The second thing, though, is I just wanted to confirm that the steps that we're following, and I think I asked this at the last meeting, is, I know I asked at the last meeting. With Phase 1, we are going to bid to hire an architect, it may be KGND and it might not, based on the bid, for the Phase 1 design, which is that scope of seven items, leaving out Phase 2 design, because that's gonna get bid separately presumably. And the site plan, I guess, is already being done by KGND, so I'm not clear who's doing what. But the Phase 1 design, which is everything, I just bleachers, roads, temporary bathrooms, electrical service, all that, so on and so forth, it's gonna get bid, and it hasn't been bid yet. Right? Because at the last meeting a week ago, they said, oh, well, we really can't do that till we have our funding, and then there was a discussion about, well, why don't you get started? But anyway, so that has to be bid. Then we have to tell the architect, that architect, exactly what we want them to design, right? That, that has next step. Then, that has to go out to bid to... Then that has to go out to bid to potential contractors, suppliers of bleachers, electrical service, parking lots, all of that. And then we're gonna find out at that step whether or not Russ's estimate is right, and we can do it all for 3.9 million dollars, less the design money, right? It may come back dead on, it may come back low, it may come back high. And just so you know, I've been on the board long enough, I remember Misa starting at 20 million dollars and it ended at 47. So if you just spare with me, bear with me if I tend to be a little bit skeptical until I actually see the numbers. But then, once we bid it, then they, then we can decide, or the administration's can decide based on the scope, go forward and do the project. Is that our process?
No, it's not our process. You guys voted on the, on the, on the plan. Now, it's our, it's our job to execute the plan.
I understand that, but you have to go through the steps of getting it.
All the stuff you said about going out to bid, that's our process.
So you have to get the architect, you have to design it, and the, the design is not, as we stand here today, we haven't even hired an architect to do the design of Phase One.
Well, I wanna, I wanna develop an RFP for just that, but I wanted to wait until after this meeting and.
No, I understand.
So that everybody had.
I understand.
Had something to say.
Because I.
We've already developed an RFP to take the bleachers down and, and to rent bleachers for, for the fall season.
Okay, I just wanna understand the process, because I'm gonna make a suggestion in a minute after other people talk. But is there anything I've said that isn't right, Ralph, with what I just said? These documents, what's in it, KGND, their pricing, the process, is there anything I said in there that isn't right?
No, you're correct.
Okay. I wanna be corrected if I'm, if I'm looking at it wrong.
Ms. Dow.
Okay, so Jennifer said something about wanting to put it under, and I have to say, I generally agree with that sentiment. It seems like we're sort of maxed out generally at the high school in terms of our space. And since I am a sports person, I do, I have been seeing more and more where people are utilizing under the bleachers. So I think that in general, generally, just high level, that makes sense. I'm always in support of building infrastructure when you can. So certainly getting electrical and plumbing under there, to me, also makes a lot of sense. And let's also be reminded, since there is one BET member in the audience, that one of the other conditions was that we try to get public-private funding. And I think the Greenwich Athletic Foundation has been very good to us, and I would like to certainly get some of their money. So, just to be perfectly blunt, so, but, I think they, they, there were a couple of the speakers tonight, I think that it behooves us to all work together. I'm not saying it's binary, it's not black or white here. I think that we're all taxpayers, we're all in the town. Let's find out a plan that works for everyone, so hopefully we can come together on this.
Ms. Neil.
So now, we have options presented to us about putting the, some of the structures under the bleachers. This then is not Plan B. So therefore, we would need to have a meeting where we need to vote on what it is that we, we wanna do going forward. The other thing about Plan B is extremely expensive, and if we look at some of the structures that are going to be put on the fields, it would eliminate any possibility at any time in the future of fixing the track, or, or doing anything for track and field activity, the shot put and the javelin and so on and so forth. So that's something to think about. We don't wanna be stuck with the track for another 20, 30 years, and, that we could fix eventually as we go forward. So I, so we still have, and we also need to have a written plan to give to the BET saying that we've complied with the, their, their conditions that they put on this. Also, the GAF has volunteered at the last stadium meeting to provide the funding for the planning, the drawings, the permitting, and all that going forward. So it behooves us to work with them hand in hand and go forward with a new plan and, and stop Plan B, because I really think, if we even look at all the phases of Plan B going forward, it's an extremely expensive project. Just moving the tennis courts and all that blasting and all that, that would go on, would be extremely expensive. And I don't think, knowing that the financial climate of the town, that right now, going forward after this year, we're gonna be looking at a whole lot of capital money. So I think we need to use the money that we have to use it smartly. And if we use it smartly and do projects that we can do efficiently and properly, then maybe people will have some more confidence in us and our ability to do capital projects. And then maybe we will look at significant sums in our capital budget. So we have a new plan to look at and a new vote to take.
Yeah, I have a great deal of respect for the GAF and what they're trying to help us with. However, after 42 years of being in this district and being a student at Greenwich High School since 1968, I gotta tell you, every time we put together a project, we go on the cheap. And there's no reason to do this here. We gotta give these kids the room that they need, and it's not gonna be underneath the stadium. It's gonna be an additional fieldhouse outside of the stadium. Let's stop looking for the cheap way out, and let's build what we need to build. And if it's gonna take longer than, you know, three years to do it, let's do it, but let's stop doing this. That's why we have a new auditorium, because we stopped building after we spent 13.8 million dollars on that high school. We stopped building, and that's why that high, that auditorium had to be replaced. There was supposed to be a fieldhouse outside of that building. There's no fieldhouse because we got 13.8 and we stopped building. The pay-as-you-go model really hurts Greenwich High School.
Ms. Raydman.
So Peter, you're, I don't know if I'm on, am I on? I'm on. I, I thought about this morning when I was thinking about the document, a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush. I did not vote for Plan B in March. I think I abstained from the vote because I was concerned about what is possibly in the land and soil. So whatever we do, so that's where I'm coming from. I support trying to do something under the bleachers. I don't disagree that we need additional fieldhouses at some point, but what are we gonna run into when we try to get to those parts of the land that's on the property? And then we're also starting to butt against, Barbara, you mentioned it, we have our master facility plan, this whole Cardinal Stadium is like adjunct to it. So how do we parallel-track these desires? So I, I would be interested in another vote, and I would be interested in looking for what we can do under the bleachers.
So Dr. Francis, you have another.
So I'm looking for a little information to see if I understand this correctly. It seems to me that if you look at the difference in the cost from the fieldhouse versus the, the work underneath, it's not that big a difference. We're actually losing a fair amount of square footage for not a big difference. The difference comes when you start talking about putting the road in and the rest of the project. So it's not the fieldhouse versus the, under the bleachers that's the big difference in cost. And I really think that we should be thinking about the road as a separate issue, right? The road is not just sort of for the stadium. To me, the road, and the reason I voted for Plan B and was really interested in Plan B in the first place, was because I think we desperately need another in-and-out from the high school, which is separate from the issue of the stadium. So I think we wanna be a little bit careful when we lump together and say, we're just spending all this money on getting another, a fieldhouse, and it's costing millions more. It, to me, it's not just that issue. Now, I still think there's a concern in that I don't have a great sense as to how likely we are to get that road. And I don't know how we can try and figure that out, because if it turns out it's really unlikely we're gonna get the road, then I think it changes sort of how we view the whole, the whole area. So I, I don't know how to make the decision, honestly, but I do wanna say that I think in terms of difference in cost, it doesn't seem like the fieldhouse is that much more expensive than under the bleachers. So I think we, we need to think about it carefully from that perspective, and I think the road is really valuable for other reasons.
Ms. Scher.
I, I think there's a way to get everybody happy here. I've thought about this and, you know, somebody, I mean, that takes a little bit of compromise, but if they, I'm not ready to revisit the whole stadium thing. I suppose we could. I don't like that we've juxtaposed the fieldhouse versus under the bleachers. I don't see it that way. What I see is an opportunity to, you know, this committee's put it together in three phases. I don't wanna revisit that right now either. I suppose we could, but I don't really want to. What I would suggest we do is, right now, we do four things, right? The BOE needs to confirm the spec relating to the bleachers, and I think a spec should include, as an option, rooms underneath the bleachers. We, we need to, Russ's plan adds referee rooms and all the rest of it. I think 'cause he sees it as, oh, well, it's gonna be under the bleachers or a future fieldhouse. I don't see it that way, okay? I see it as, let's confirm a spec, let's, and maybe the spec comes from what the GAF is proposing, because it makes sense to me to put a couple of simple rooms under there, some bathrooms, because we're doing temporary bathrooms anyway, okay? I mean, that was in our spec anyway. New electrical service is in our spec already anyway. We confirm a spec at a high level. I agree with Ms. Dayton, we should not be micromanaging this at a board level. We should do it like we do other projects, almost like an edspec. I hate to use that term. What we should do, though, is we need to get off of this strategy committee, because that thing's about to hit, hit a wall. We need a, I don't wanna call it a building committee, but it needs to be a committee that's focused on this project, that by the way, like any other building committee, it needs to have architects and engineers on it from the community. If you wanna call it a building committee, but Lori's gonna have to do the budget, Ralph, you're gonna go off and start running a high school, okay? Dan's gotta do all of this new capital projects we've done. We need a committee to help support this project. They have to be on it, but it needs to be supplemented. I'd like to see some people from the community architect, maybe we'd use the same people that were asked the same people again who were on the New Lebanon project. But hold on. The other thing we need to do is, we're gonna bid and hire the Phase One architect. I'd like to ask that architect to develop Option One, which is the one that the administration is proposing, with an add-on op, hold on, with an add-on option, which is what the GAF is asking for, which is adding rooms underneath. Let's get those two options designed, let's bid them both, send them out in RFP, we're sending out an RFP anyway, bid them both, and let's find out what they really cost. Because Russ is saying it's gonna cost a fortune, and it's not worth doing, as Dr. Francis just outlined, but his numbers don't make sense to me either, okay? The GAF is, is purporting based on their leadership's ability to build, expressed, known, I mean, one of their leaders is someone who's built more buildings in town, sports facilities than I could shake a stick at at the water club. Maybe he's right. And it, it doesn't cost 3, 4, $500 a square foot to build. I don't know why we don't take both of these. Give them to the architect, say, please do one design, one with an option with rooms underneath, okay? Put the right people on that committee, get them working together, bid it both, we'll get the answer back. If it fits within the 3.9 million without, or the 3.9 million with the contribution that the GAF has proposed to make, which I think is about a million dollars, we can build this, and, and I'm with you, Ralph, this space, if we ultimately can build the real fa, fieldhouse, which is scheduled for '21, '22, by the way, it's not gonna make that schedule, but '21, '22, great. Then we got some extra space that can be used in the future under the bleachers. If that project never gets built, because the budgets aren't possible, the town revolts on FAR, whatever it is, then we got this thing done for students. I can see us do a path here where we can do both, we can compromise, we can collaborate with the GAF, we can have that public-private we want, and we're not closing off our options in the future to build the real plan that you're suggesting be built. And this board, by the way, already voted on and supported.
Okay, so let me remind the board of a couple of things. Once you enclose a structure, it doesn't matter if it's a separate building or underneath the bleachers, that counts against your FAR. The long-range plan, as discussed with the Town Planning Authority, is to actually try to get a change in designation of the high school, which would allow for more FAR. That said, I will also remind the board that the funding we requested from the BET and then approved by the RTM does not actually provide funding for building buildings underneath. So even if we could do it for the money, we didn't actually ask for that in what we asked for from those governing bodies. So we would not be, even if we could try to figure out how to fit something in, whether, whatever it is underneath, we can't do that in the way that it's written. I'd have to go back and look at the, the way that it's written on the, on the sheets, but I'm getting all indications, so. But if, if we could build the bleachers with every connection underneath, and GAF wanted to donate the money for the structures, that's a possibility, and maybe that's something that could go forward. What I would say is two things. One is, I wonder about how much can truly fit underneath, maximizing the bleachers and the zoning issues and all the rest. I think that there's, it's somewhere probably between those four plans that are there, that I don't know if we can fit everything underneath. So at some point, we're gonna have to prioritize, whether it's the team rooms, whether it's the bathrooms, making sure that it's right size. But my initial reaction tonight was, let's maximize the space and let's make sure the hookups are there. So that's one. The other is, I also don't wanna lose track of the road. It is a safety and security issue, it is a traffic flow issue. It, it's not part of Phase One, it's not part of the bleachers, but it is part of the future planning. Just because you put something underneath doesn't mean that you should walk away from that part of the plan, because there's very good reason for that part of the plan, not just the hillside neighbors complaining, but there are plenty of other reasons why you'd want that. So what we need to do tonight is decide how we wanna move forward, whether we want to say to the administration, we want you to maximize the space, we want you to do the hookups, and if we, there's a need for a vote on that, we certainly can schedule a meeting to do that. If somebody wants to actually vote on a specific plan, which would not be my preference, because as I sit here today, I, I'm not the one that could do, right, we can't take action anyway, but I don't know, I don't know what the action would be. Are we really prepared to vote on one of four options? Do we really know enough as a board to be able to do that? Or is it give the direction to use the money we have to maximize the space and to make sure it's ready for whatever goes in, and let the work continue on the, what the next part is? So Jennifer, have her hand up for a while.
The latter. We need to do the latter.
What's the latter?
We need to move expeditiously to design the bleachers with the hookups underneath. We can't lose a single day. I am very worried about the length of time for the permits. We have rented bleachers for the fall. If we don't get this fast-tracked, I certainly don't wanna rent bleachers for the spring season. That would be a complete disaster. So Lori, I'm speaking to you now. I know you have other things on your plate, but I am very concerned about losing any time on this project as we try to get through all those approvals. And I know you're working hard. Peter, in terms of what the RTM approved, I certainly think that they were told clearly we are going to have a new road. I support that, and we cannot deviate from what we have told them we're doing. So I think the bleachers with the hookups is the perfect solution. Let the committee decide the exact configuration, the dimensions of the rooms underneath, and the ed specs come back to the board eventually, and we'll all get comfort at that point.
All right, so I guess this question is to you, Ralph, because Jennifer brings up a good point. I too am concerned, and I think Aton brought up in the last meeting, God forbid, we have to keep renting the bleachers. So can we go through the timing? If we go out for, we're saying our RFP next week, we get a bid mid-July, we start, we take down, you demolish the current bleachers, we put up the temporary bleachers, and hopefully we have them through December 31. And then we build bleachers starting January, and I assume we build the bleachers first, and even if we're building something underneath, then we go immediately to doing that afterwards? We get the bleachers up first, then build underneath afterwards, so that you have something by March for lacrosse season?
The timeline was that the bleachers would come down, and then we start construction once football season. once football season had concluded. So first or second week in December, depending on how far the team made it. And then the bleachers should be ready April or May.
Mr. Scherr.
Candidly, you know, I don't, I don't know where we did this hard right turn. I just want to repeat this again. If we haven't hired an architect, and we haven't done that, and we haven't written that out, we haven't told them what to build, okay? We know what that schedule's going to be. We know how long it's going to be for the architect to do designs. We also know how long it's going to take to bid it, okay? This idea that if we consider and actually get the detailed information about the G A F proposal will somehow slow us down, it's not going to slow us down at all. The architect is still going to take the same amount of time. The bidding process to go out and look is going to take the same amount of time. This idea that we would go and just keep going with our plan, someone to suggest that, oh, well, expeditiously, this will somehow disrupt our plan? No, it won't. We need to get through these phases to get the information, and at the end of that, if it's going to slow us down, quote, because they can't figure out how to phase the construction, then we'll know that. But to use this as a kind of a red herring, to kick the can down the road on this under-the-bleachers building, because the suggestion I just heard was only design the plan we currently have, only bid the plan we have, ask for hookups, and then we'll come back and look at this thing from the G A F later. I'm interested to know, when is later in this, in this, just put on the hookups and we'll look at it later, plan? When is later in the people who are proposing that?
Mr. Nellin.
I have a question also, and maybe you can answer both of them. What do you mean by hookups? If you're going to design bleachers, and you plan on putting something underneath them, they have to be designed very differently than bleachers that are not going to have structures. It's not a matter of putting in a water hookup, an electric hookup. It's a matter of the steel structures and so on that need to support the bleachers. So you have to make a decision. You just can't say, oh, maybe we'll put them underneath. And another point, Fairfield Prep, Brunswick, a number of other building, schools have just done that, put their facilities under their bleachers. It's very efficient. It's very attractive. And I don't see why we seem to think that that's a second-best plan if some of the schools around here are spending good money designing really nice facilities for athletes.
Barbara, I don't think I ever said it was a second-best plan. In fact, I think something belongs under there. Whether everything goes under there is more of a space issue than anything else. Okay, so, okay, so hookups, Barbara, is to make sure that there's plumbing and electrical, so that if you decide you're putting in bathrooms, you're putting in team rooms, whatever you're putting in, you're going to need heating and cooling. You're going to need plumbing. You're going to need lighting. So that's hookups, right? Making sure that those are available. We actually asked the architect how you design this so that you could maximize the space underneath and put things in underneath and the phasing of all of that. Basically, the cheapest, simplest way to put up bleachers is multiple stanchions across the bottom. If you want to use the space underneath, you require, you know, more substantial headers and all the rest of it, and it's going to be a thoughtful plan. You can build at any point underneath. You don't have to do it day one. And I will remind everybody yet again, there is no money in our approved budget to build anything at this point. So it's not about slowing it down. It's about doing it in the way that we've actually gotten the money. We have the money right now to design and build the bleachers. We can future-ready it so that we can design and build something underneath. But we do not have funding at present to do that.
Well, we have somebody who's offered to give us the money.
And I said that before, Peter, that that's fine. They could do, they could offer to do that, depending on what it is that's going to fit under there. We would have to agree that that's what we want under there.
But you won't know what, whether the plan works at all, and you won't know what it costs, and you won't know if it meets our needs if we don't see a real design. We don't have a real design. We have no idea whether that would cost us $4 million, which, by the way, we would never do, or it would cost us $1 million, which, by the way, if somebody gave us a $1 million gift to pay for it, it doesn't change our finances at all, and it lets us get this thing. And by the way, it lets us get a room. Whether it is available at the same time, that's construction planning. The bleachers could go up potentially, so we could still meet our spring schedule, and then after the fact, they can be constructing the room. What I don't know is I have no idea whether Russ's is a good plan or theirs is a good plan. Why? Because we don't have a real design, and we don't have a real budget. Jennifer Dayton pointed it out the other day. I'm not ready to make a decision on that right now. All I'm asking is, could someone go do the real work instead of, I'll say it out loud, Russ Davidson, who clearly is a fan of building this other building, and, I mean, he gave us a budget of $665 a square foot. I don't know whether that's just, he's not an uncareful person, but I don't rely on his numbers to make decisions. So all I'm suggesting is go through the process, right? Then we'll know in September, because presumably that's when we'll have all this information, under the already-laid-out schedule. We can take this up in December and say, are we going ahead with just the plans with no rooms? Or are we going ahead with a plan that the G A F can participate in? We don't need to make this, we won't have enough information to make this decision until a design is done and a budget, a real budget is bid.
So Peter, I agree with you, and what I heard Ralph say, and you can correct me if I get it wrong, is he was looking for input tonight so they could start the process of bidding the architect, to have the architect do that work, and then it would come back.
But it seems I've confused. To hire an architect to design what plan? That's the question.
Option, basic option, option with the rooms underneath. Just give us two. Bid two, and we'll find out the answer.
Now, Russ's contract, I believe, is up. So the G A F has offered to, I don't know if they will, if they, they have offered to at least develop a plan. I don't know if they want to develop two plans, pay for it, and do all that. And that's one of the conditions of the B E T, is to have these private partners. What are you going to do? Give it to Russ? Back?
Can it not be the architect?
Right, Barbara, this is going to get bid out, and we will hire an architectural firm, and they will bid it out, and they will see who they hire. It does not mean that it's going to be any firm that we've used before.
That's true.
They have to design something that we tell them to design.
Yes.
So that's the question. And so before we can decide what we want, we need to have a plan to say, yes, this is the plan we want.
I think Peter's laid it out. There's the basic plan, and there's the what fits underneath, right? Those are the, that's what we want, right? There's a modification, whatever they can discern from that and what Russ has already done.
Input.
Right.
Do you have any?
I guess I'll ask, I'll ask Ralph and Lori whether they have the input they need to go forward and get that architectural work out.
And Barbara, I think what will happen is at the end, this is where I'm going to land, I'll pre-signal it. If it's $3.8 plus a million, and it, and the estimate they gave is correct, and they're going to cough up the million bucks, I'm absolutely voting for that. If it comes back and their plan is $7 million, as Russ is suggesting, well, I'm probably not doing that. So I want to, unless they gave us four, unless you have four, they're not going to give us four million, right? But what I do want to know is, I really want to know what the real answer is, so we can make a real decision, and I will tell you, I've already signaled. If it comes in, in line, as people are suggesting, and it all fits within our authority, including their gift, close enough for government work, I'm on the bird in hand versus two in the bush.
And, and I think it's efficient to build them that way, to put them underneath, and I think that's the way we need to go. And I think we have to have another decision at some point about the road and all that expense of moving. It's a separate issue, but we need to think about it in terms of our priorities, because for me, a priority is the security at the high school. And I know we're in the planning stage, but soon we're going to be in the building stage, and I think we're going to have to prioritize. And I'm not so sure that I think a road and moving the tenants' costs is a priority over the security at the high school. But that's another issue, but I just want to put that on the table.
To me, the road is a security issue, but. All right, any other discussion on this item? Hearing none? Hearing none, we will move on to our next.
Before we move on to the next step, I have no idea what you want me to do now. Not one clue, okay? Lori, do you have an idea? No?
Thank you. I think the discussion was about bidding an architect and having the architect come up with two design plans to bid out until we could finally get a sense of what the true cost is. All right?
Ralph, can I make it simple? Get a design for your plan? Get a design for, hold on. Well, the, okay, the plan the administration and the committee gave to the board, whatever. Get a, get a, get theirs? Get theirs. Bid, bid, bid the original and bid theirs, and let's see what the answer is in September. And by the way, I agree with Ms. Dayton, do not disrupt the schedule that we have.
Okay. All right, with that, we're going to move on to our next item, which is the annual report on innovative teaching and learning. Ms. Purisi.
Thank you. In your board packet and also printed for you at, within your packets, is the first-ever annual report on innovative teaching and learning in the Greenwich Public Schools, presented as information only. This annual report is intended to provide you, the Board of Education, our G P S colleagues, the community with lead information on the overarching goals and vision and core services, and a future outlook on the academic, of the academic office in Greenwich Public Schools. We do look forward to the next annual report on the innovative teaching and learning practices and additional resources provided to all of our learners, so I hope you enjoy reading.
All right, any discussion on this item, Ms. Reiter?
It's not discussion, but I was, I was like, wow, this was really easy to read, the format. So what prompted you to make such a beautiful design as a marketer? I appreciate it.
I think that was it. How do we start to market ourselves in the services at the academic team, which is myself, our program coordinators, our instructional coaches, and show you, again, show everyone what we can provide to the school district and the public? Thank you.
Other discussion on this item?
I also wanted to congratulate you on this amazing summary of work that's been going on in our district that is somehow, in my mind, so nebulous. It's so difficult to communicate to parents what is really happening in the classrooms. But this really does it. And I think as a guide to Toni Jones, it's invaluable. She can read it, and she'll immediately know where we are on our progression. And then I had one last comment on the future readiness page. You may know that the legislature just passed an additional piece of legislation that says it's not enough anymore to do the computer programming curriculum, but now we need a computer science curriculum.
Correct, yes.
And so I am just putting my personal weight behind that, as we see that across multiple industries, those are the skills that our graduates are going to need. And I couldn't be happier with the new law. And I know that that's a long time horizon to work on, that there's no immediate need to jump into the work, but thank you for keeping that in mind.
Yes, and actually, we have already been devising a plan through Library Media Services and STEM, and really, all of us, we talk about computational thinking and computer science that cuts across all of our content areas, so we're, we're not waiting.
So at the end of last year, we did a report kind of on what happened in the district, and we shared that a little widely. I know some of the town departments and the town dove sort of year-end report. I would love to see this circulated, while they have Kim and your many, many ways left. Maybe we could, you know, share this with our friends across the field, and our B E T, and the R T M Education Committee, because I think it really is a nice summary of what's going on in the district.
Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else on this, we'll move on to our next item, which is the Academic Quarterly Report for P E, Health and Safety, and Continuing.
Yes, there's a lot. Yes, there's a lot, yes. So in your packet, you do have the Academic Quarterly Report for Physical Education, Health and Safety, and Career Tech, with a focus on Family, Consumer Science, and Technology Education, which also includes the Wright Tech update for the year-end. The reporting cycle, as far as previously reported, is on the agenda cover, so you have those dates when you last saw reports on each. This report is being presented in six sections with the program summary to orient the board. We have program goals, our program costs, including staff that support, that are being supported by the budget, our program achievements, accomplishments, and challenges, program activities, and the strategic levers for future readiness. And Section Six is an appendix that does provide the supporting materials with regard to Wright Tech, our partnership with. Overall, this Academic Quarterly Report speaks to our ongoing district commitment to standards-based curriculum, high-impact instructional strategies, and our multiple pathways that we develop for all learners to develop their competency, their passion, and opportunity to demonstrate the capacities and the vision of the graduate. As you met last week, with me is Jeremy Boland, our Health and Family, I'm sorry, Physical Education, Health and Family, Consumer Science Program Coordinator. I do want to take this moment to commend Mr. Boland for his first year as a program coordinator for Greenwich and these three program areas. He should also be commended for developing the deep relationships with our teacher colleagues and building administrators, and providing long-needed instructional support and leadership in these areas, focused on how we ensure all learners, adults, and students have access to all of these resources. I am going to hand this over now to Mr. Boland, so that he can share some key highlights. We'll be short, I know it's late, that will focus on the strategies that are working well, and those that will position Greenwich Public Schools to be very focused and future-ready.
Thank you. And thank you to the board for the opportunity to report on the status of Physical Education, Health, and Family, Consumer Science. Preparing this report has provided me the opportunity, as I grow into this role, to gain the valuable perspective I need on the critical elements of each one of these programs. I have five key takeaways that I could talk about quickly. One of the very most important things for Physical Education this year was a recalibration of our test administration for the Connecticut Physical Fitness Assessment, the C P F A. It provided a baseline from which we can now examine the learning activities and instructional methods that have a direct impact on the results and the fitness and wellness of our students. It's also provided an opportunity for collaboration amongst the P E staff in an effort to maintain, if not improve, our culture. Another key takeaway is the community partnerships that you'll find listed for Physical Education and Health. Whether the students are visiting or visitors are coming into the schools, we have strong connections with local resources, providing our students with a wide range of valuable resources, experiences, and resources. For all three programs, I've discovered that we are very well-positioned to expand upon personalized learning strategies throughout the district. In Family, Consumer Science, we have recently completed the development of a sixth-through-eighth grade articulation, so there, we've eliminated the gap that existed at the middle school level. And at the high school level, we have a movement from residential to commercial focus, which will further help develop career readiness.
And with the Technology, Education update, some strengths within that program, we've increased our connections of employers to classrooms and really building on the partnerships and the businesses that are in our community. They come in and speak with our students. We continue to expand opportunities for every student to explore and choose and follow the vertically-integrated career pathway, and exploring further those credentials that they could earn that are of value. Specifically to the Wright Tech partnership, we did want to update you. So we have communicated to families, first, we've communicated to students of this opportunity to access Wright Tech and participate as a junior and or senior in this program. And we also met with families on June 3rd. We do have some interested students. As of right now, there are three that have been reported that would like to take, take advantage of this opportunity. And we continue to work through transportation. That will still be a challenge, so I'm not sure how we're going to work that out, because that was not built into the budget in the beginning of the school year, but we still continue to explore options. With the reauthorization of the Perkins Funds, it's now called Perkins Five. I am now on the statewide task force for that, so. So to be an advocate, but also to learn more of how we then plan to implement this for 2020, because there's some new exciting approaches that will be on the horizon with the additional guidance we'll get from the State Department. So that's, those are the key takeaways and the major updates. I do want to point you to page 36, the appendix, where you will see the Career Academy literature that has been provided by JM Wright Technical High School with the FAQ. Again, that was provided to families and students in English and in Spanish. And we continue to research and design, like I said, the transportation from Greenwich High School to Wright Tech and then back to Greenwich High School.
Ms. Raven.
I don't know if I'm just being a dope, but on page 13, I couldn't figure out what the percentage represented because the percentage for all four tests is actually lower than many of the individual ones. And I didn't know if that was participation or if it was successful ability to do a curl up?
I'll let Jeremy speak to the assessment because he's been steeped in it.
Yeah, the percentage for all four tests is a result of all students passing all four tests, as indicated. And what you see are higher percentages for each individual item, but to get all students to pass all four tests is the challenge. So that's our next step, is examining the learning activities specifically for push-ups and center reach, the two lower of the four.
And then it looks like even, you know, in middle school, more kids pass it at sixth grade and less in eighth. So what happens to kids from sixth to eighth? And then there's also kids that just don't take the test. So what percentage of kids don't take the test?
That is actually a big part of our recalibration this year. The state rolled out new guidelines to make sure that we didn't miss anybody. One of the bigger changes was they allowed a change in the testing window. We used to have to have our reports done by early November. Now they gave us the entire year. So throughout the course of the year, you were allowed to test. We identified mid-April to mid-May as our testing window to avoid a number of different things, but it gave the teachers an opportunity to collect testing information a number of times throughout the year, so we didn't miss anybody. So I did do the numbers for our accountability index. And for the phys ed portion, we are at 95.4 this year. Because of the work that the recalibration team did through the PLC model, we were able to develop some guidelines that rolled out across the district to get our accountability index higher.
Irene, I'm going back to the prior topic about transportation to Wright Tech.
Okay.
As you know, there is a major emphasis with a lot of weight behind it to regionalize transportation for programs exactly such as this, which span across different communities. If our regional education service center can't take up this project and collect money from several districts, then what the heck is the point of having a RESC? This is core to their mission. And I just hope you'll not hesitate to pick up the phone and call Dr. DuMase because this is in his bailiwick, he would be all over this.
We have spoken, but also working with the superintendent of this technical high school system, because there's other schools that are participating in this particular program, such as Norwalk, Westport, we're not quite sure if they're committing, and then there's another district that they're reaching out to. That is a possibility as well. As I said, we continue to research this and, and design the best approach. But you're absolutely right, yes, working with CES.
Dr. Francis.
Couple, couple things, so cut me off if I'm being... One is just for the health. There's, I believe there was an updated plan for the need for that one credit, not until graduating class of 2023. It doesn't say that in here, it just says a 2020, but, right, we're functioning with that's not required until 2023.
That is correct.
Okay.
The high school staff and administrators have been working on developing a plan that will roll out year by year with next year's freshman class. By the time they finish in 2023, they will have satisfied that graduation requirement.
It's just in the document on page four, it says by 2020. And I think that might have been the original statute, but I think there was some new vote or upgrade.
Sure, and I believe we did communicate that information within the course of study guide.
Yeah, correct, in the course of study guide, yeah. Can I ask one more?
We can fix that.
No.
Mr. Sherin.
This may be off-topic and you smack me if it is, or the chairman will smack me if it is. There was a reference earlier to start time and opportunity block, and you may have, you may not have been here and heard that. But other schools have changed their start time who have the same kind of problems we do. One of their solutions was creating a special PE, because like us in the state, student athletes also have to take PE. So I'm wondering if you guys have thought about, so that these, to improve the numbers, creating a PE for athletes that during their block, it requires cooperation between the athletic staff and the PE staff. And I realize those two worlds are sometimes different worlds. But the thing that allows them to do is do their conditioning, that they have to do for their team sport in their PE, and it saves them a huge block of time because they have a conditioning requirement in their sport. I'm wondering if you guys have ever thought about that, so that also it would improve the efficiency and effectiveness of PE at the high school for athletes?
Before you answer, can I just add to that to broaden it? Which is, I think, one of the things we had talked about in start time was just the broader concept of, you know, PE requirement in, in athletes. And if there's some way to try and tie those things together. Right, I know it's, but I'm sort of, I don't care if it's the conditioning or the thing, I'm not that specific. I think it's more... Right, whatever it is to, you know, there, there may be other components of the PE curriculum that needs to be done in some other way, but that, you know, if they're on the swim team, they don't need to take the swim class. Or if they're, you know, doing some other sport, then maybe that influences what other requirements they have to try and free up time for them.
I think that's a wonderful idea, especially when you combine with that opportunity block to expand the amount of time that the kids are physically active. So I'll definitely bring that idea to the high school staff and see what we can't develop.
I'm sorry, just to, just to...
In seventeen more days.
It's, it's not really, I'm sorry, it's not so much to expand it, it's to make sure we're not sort of duplicating. It's like you're not required, right, instead of it, so you're not required to take a PE class.
My perspective is do both, as much physical activity as possible.
Okay, but I'm, I'm looking at it a little differently, which is saying the option that if a student feels like they're getting enough exercise through their sport, right? Well, yes, okay, but I think this was an issue that came up with start time that we had talked about a few years ago in terms of looking at other ways to reduce stress for students as a way to sort of think about how we approach, how we approach our PE and to expand our concepts of what, you know, how do you fulfill your PE, you know, requirements? And that I think there's other ways to look at that.
Ms. Francis.
This was for Wright Tech. There was a statement that said lunch is provided by the sending school, so being on the food service.
Yes, we have to make sure that they have access to lunch before they depart from Greenwich High School.
Anything else on this? Dr. Francis.
Sorry. I sort of wanted to talk a little bit about the goals in here. And, for example, on the PE section, my understanding is the goal is 75% from our strategic plan. And I wasn't quite sure what the 68.7% measurement was being used. It looked like that was sort of, we were being measured up or down from 68.7%, and I'm not sure where that number comes from and why we're not using the strategic goal of 75%.
So 75% passing rate would be the goal. 68.7% is the result of this year's test. And we anticipated a drop because of the recalibration. One of the things that we had discovered going through that process was in the absence of a coordinator for the last few years, people were starting to find resources and equipment on their own. So it was different across the district. So some schools were performing very well, some weren't. So what we needed to do was standardize everything. So we're using all of the cadence provided by the state, we're all using the same equipment. So we anticipated a drop. 75% will continue to be the goal until we reach it, and then we'll set it higher.
Okay, Dr. Francis, one more and that's it, we're cutting you off.
In terms of health goals, I also felt like it was a little lacking in terms of tying into strategic plan. You know, there, we have a tile on student well-being, for example. I just feel like it, it, it could use goals that tie into there. And, and I hate to take Barbara's place here, but I feel like we could use some more measurable goals in this in terms of looking at it and then being able to evaluate it in the future.
Okay, Mr. Sherin.
Are you, I do want to, I, I, this is a simple one. Are you also the coordinator for the wellness program at High School?
Yes, it's K-Town.
Yeah, you have wellness?
Yes.
Which is now health and safety.
We're changing the terms. It's physical education.
Change the answer, protect the guilty.
Per the state. It's physical education, then health and safety, wellness is a result of physical education.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, that's it. We're, we're moving, we're, we're moving on, we're moving on to action items. All right, so the first action item is the TEPL update. So do we have a... Okay, do we, we have a motion to approve the TEPL update? Okay. And there's a second for Ms. Dayton, so Ms. O'Neil, Ms. Dayton. Discussion on the TEPL update. I'll just say I'll be really happy when these indicators are put in place and to see the data that comes out of it, because I think there'll be... I will be happy when these indicators are in place and we see the data as to whether or not practice has truly changed. So that'll be formalized and that'll be a nice thing to see. Any other discussion on this item? Thank you for all the work, all those in favor of accepting the TEPL? TEPL, TEPL, TEPL? Thank you. Passes eight zero, next item, policy. Dr. Francis.
We had three small updates on policies that we discussed before to address the things that had come up. And then there's one policy that we did not bring back. I'm sorry, at the moment, I don't remember exactly what that was, but I think it had to do with rental of stuff and, and equipment and computers in the schools. And I think we just decided we weren't quite ready to, to fix all that. So the three that...
Do you like to make a motion on the three? There you go.
I move to accept the three policies included here with revisions, as well as the other policies that we did not change. Other than 3515.
Okay, so a second for Ms. O'Neil, discussion? Michael, you have the motion because it's on the cover sheet. Question for Mr. Sherin.
Okay, Tom, the last one, this thing marked, says restrictions on use of facilities. I guess this thing's highlighted behaviors and all facets must comply with Greenwich School policies. Did you get a review from Wayne Fox on that specific line?
No.
Okay. Just by way of, I, I think we might need to do that. Here's why. Two years, three years ago, there was an issue raised about GBA using our facilities and how they were disciplining their players. And I had a conversation with Wayne, because it got escalated to us as a board. And I talked to Wayne at the time, and I said, Wayne, can we ask people to comply with our policies? He said, you absolutely should not have that anywhere in your policies. It puts you on a very legal slippery slope. And it, it creates a bunch of problems where now, all of a sudden, you're responsible for the conduct of other people, so on and so forth. So the only thing I would say is, I, I liked it. Laura Erickson and I had a long conversation about this at the time, because it came up actually when she was the board chair. And my point would be, I think we just need to get that legal review before we adopt that.
Well, do you want to just remove it?
Yeah, do you want to make a motion here?
I'm okay with having it in. I could either take it out, take it out now.
Do, do we want to adopt it without that language? And then we could come back and, do you want to amend it to remove that line? That way, the rest of it goes into place and then we can revisit what's...
So why don't you, do I need to make the amendment?
Yeah, you can make a motion to amend.
Make a motion to amend to strike item five under, for policy on 3515, strike item five, restriction on use of school facilities.
I'll second that. Discussion on that? All those in favor of the amendment? Your motion? Question?
Following that, that logic, then I look at number three, and it says vendors must be pre-approved and follow regulations. The pre-approved sounds fine, but now I wonder about follow regulations. What is that?
What is regulation?
Yeah.
Well, I think the regulations, there's, I think there's other things that are not necessarily specific behavior, like you, if you, if you, if you're, if you're hired, if you're using a facility and you're required to use a cafeteria personnel, or if you're using, if you have more than a certain number of people and you need to have a police officer. I mean, those... Right, so I think there's, there's a number of things that are requirements for renting this. This is what we're talking about, right? Yeah, for renting facilities.
Maybe the word requirements is requirements for renting facilities. Because follow regulations, you'd say, well, what regulations?
Well, the regulations are the things that then the administration is going to put in here. And then, and then presumably those would be the things that are appropriate.
Then maybe we should just say administrative regulations, so it's really clear. I make a motion to amend that number three to be vendors must be, be pre-approved and follow administrative regulations.
On policy 3515. Okay, is there a second for that?
Second.
Ms. Dayton, any discussion on that? All of us in favor? All right, as eight zero, as we could vote on the other one. Do you read that one more time?
Yeah.
It was eight zero. It was to put the word administration in number three, the restrictions on use of school facilities in policy 3515. So follow administrative, administrative. Okay, so we have four. We did, we voted on number five, and then Barbara had a question around number four. Yes, so we voted it's, yes, we took it up. Okay, so on the table before us, on the table before us is the amended policies, all the ones we took up at the last meeting, these three, as amended tonight. All those in favor? Passes eight zero, thank you very much. PGC, keep going. Keep doing great work. All right, next up is the annual report schedule.
Should I move that we accept it? Yeah, I move that we accept the... What is this? Oh, I move that we accept the recommended annual report schedule for 1920.
I'll second that. Discussion, yes, of course.
Couple things just to point out. Hopefully, people saw this, but one of the points that was brought up that's changed in here is the start time, so 7:00 PM for all meetings is recommended here. We do have, I think you got the second floor, I can't remember if you actually did or not, but the technology report was left in for September. I think that could be an opportunity based on discussions that had come up earlier about the use of technology, the amount of screen time. We could certainly think about having that included in that. In September? Of 19, yeah, September 19. Yeah, so. I also wanted to point out, because this is new, sort of to open up that space for our STEM and our humanities reports, I moved the emolment report to a budget meeting. Okay, that's new, that's different, so I didn't know if people thought that was wacky or not, but I wanted to point it out in case anybody hadn't seen that. And I did include, so I tried to really move pretty much as much stuff out as possible for those two days. And then I included an item, which is, you know, we have done in the past, which is to bring up one of those reports again at a different meeting. So I just put it in as additional discussion is needed for STEM and humanities reports in the, the meeting to follow that. I think that's all that was kind of new.
Ms. Stowe.
I can't believe I'm going to tell you this, but I actually can't make October 5th. So I, it's my...
We'll miss you.
It's my company's annual outing at the West Point game.
We're coming with you.
So you're all welcome to come, we have like 150 people under a tent. It's a great time, I think they're playing Tulane this year, but I literally can't make it. So I will have to ask for a different date.
All right, so why don't we, we can look at calendars for that, we could do it as a TBD if we have to.
But you approved this as a standard of the calendar.
No, technically not. We've already approved our meetings for the years and this becomes a whole mess.
If you change it, it has, you have to a regularly scheduled meeting. It has to be at least thirty days prior to the meeting.
Oh, so that's fine, we can, we can...
So you would have to do it...
We can do it at the beginning of September.
If you change your regular meeting schedule for any reason, like we're doing with the times of the starts, because right now there's six thirty starts and six o'clock starts are moving to seven. As long as it's thirty days before the meeting, you can make a change without it becoming a special meeting.
So we could vote on that on September fifth?
Right, why don't we poll members before then and then we can vote on it.
I would like to do it soon because the longer we wait, the less likely we are to find it.
That's why I'm saying, all right, so, so why don't we change... Do we need a motion to amend to change that to TBD? We can leave it, all right.
We can leave it as October fifth and then we can change it.
That's fine, all right. Other discussion? I do want to thank you for the hard work, trying to accept all of our comments and it was a little bit crazy. You know, as we talked about during our evaluation, we do really want to try to use our time efficiently. You know, here we are tonight, it is now ten minutes of eleven. Obviously, we had a lot of recognitions. One of the things I think we ought to explore is possibly a separate spring recognition from our last meeting. I really think that it's probably a very good practice. I know some of the spring teams, we don't know until the last minute whether or not they won something, but it may be better to have a separate one. I don't know how people's appetite is for that. Okay, no appetite, very good. Ms. Stowe? We don't have to decide it now, but I want to throw it out there. Okay, we're all started, okay. Very good, so the motion on the table is to accept the agenda plan. Now, of course, we amend our agenda plan all the time, so this allows for flexibility. All right, so all those in favor, please, I think the agenda plan as proposed. Eight zero, thank you, Dr. Francis, for all the hard work along with everybody else that contributed their comments. Kim Eves, no, she's not done. We talked to her during the last agenda plan, that's when we get to you, Kim Eves. All right, next up, we have the acceptance of the Hamilton Avenue building project as complete.
Yeah, I just handed out something that we received from Frank Maza this afternoon, late this afternoon. I'll have this posted on board docs tomorrow, but it's just a final memo that went to the Board of Education and to the town clerk. I also recommend that we accept this building.
And we had asked Wayne Fox for a earlier assist just to make sure that they were meeting the provisions of the town charter and he advised that we could accept the building at this time. So I will move that we accept the Hamilton Avenue school building as complete. Is there a second? Ms. Olson, any discussion? My kids have done and graduated from that, kind of crazy. All right, all those in favor, sign them by, raising your hand. All those opposed? Peter, where are you at? Yes? He was a delayed yes. Eight zero, thank you. All right, next up is the acceptance of the GHS MISA project. I want to thank Joe Ross and Leslie Moriarty for their patience. Yep, they're still here, Joe's awake in the back.
After eleven years, a few hours of stuff.
Right, exactly. And Lauren for her service and every other board member that served on this committee. So why don't we make a motion, I think we have a little discussion. Lauren, would you like to make the motion?
I would like to make the motion.
I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Ed accept MISA.
Ms. O'Neil will second it. All right, so discussion. I will say, we did reach out to Wayne, gave an opinion about the acceptance of it. They have filed a report with the town clerk, they have filed it with the Board of Education. There are some open items and some funding left in there. The building committee has voted for those items to be completed. The town controller, I guess that's its official title, the town controller has verified that there's money in the account and along with Wayne has said that there is a process forward, that the building committee will still be in existence because it's still in the closeout phases with the state. So therefore that money could be sent from that account to fix those things. Would not require interim appropriations from the Board of Education. Mr. Mann.
So once we, well, we voted on Hamilton Avenue, so once we voted on accepting that building, we have a year to get the state to get any money, any reimbursements. So I want everybody to make sure you realize that. Secondly, with MISA, with the PAC, it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful space. However, there's a couple of things that have to be taken care of with MISA and I just want to be above board and let you guys all know what has to be done in that area. And we will have to go for an interim appropriation to get these things done. There's no, there's no way around it. However, we had a great conversation with Joe and Leslie and they will support us a hundred percent when we go for interim appropriation. So the reason I'm saying that is that the flexible expansion joints, that the one that burst and caused the flood at the high school, there's more of those in the building. So we need to replace each one of those, they're the wrong part. Okay? So we need to replace each one of them. I believe there's twelve, but I'll check with Dan when he returns from watching his son compete in a national track event in North Carolina, but I believe there are twelve.
There's eleven, I'm looking back at my notes.
Eleven, okay.
There's eleven.
Oh, good.
We have to replace the remaining eleven.
And my recommendation would be we put a panel under every one of them, access panels, so that we can check them. So also, the front of the stage is going to have to be, we're going to have to do something with the front of the stage so that water doesn't seep up onto the stage and ruin the front of the stage. So we have a plan for that. We won't need an interim appropriation for that. We can, we can do that with the money that MISA will turn over to us to do that work, but the eleven flexible expansion joints, uh-uh.
And just to clarify, the one that broke is an insurance claim, but we learned we can't... We're proactively replacing the other ones so that it doesn't happen. So we're doing it because we think it could happen again, not because they're fault... Well, I don't know, I'm not going to say whether they're faulty or not, but as a preventative measure.
I don't have an estimate. I do have, what, Dan received a letter from the company, not that company, not this company, but a different engineer saying that this part was not supposed to be installed in this particular space in this manner.
Mr. Scher.
Not to belabor the point or ruin the party. Just out of curiosity, how did those joints get designed and installed that way in the first place? And is there any remedy from the people who actually did that?
I think, Leslie, I'll let you correct me if I'm wrong, or Joe. The acoustical engineer approved these parts and not the engineer. So there was a little mix-up with that.
Is this, is this the thing that's in the coral room? That was one of them in the coral room that's making all that, was making all that noise?
No, this is, this is a part that's supposed to reduce any noise. So there shouldn't be anything that's making noise.
I'm sure they're all over the place, right? I wouldn't have lived to know the answer to that, it's just a point of information. But, you know, how did that get specked and how did that wind up happening? That was question one. And the second one was on the water? Water in the orchestra? I presume it's in the, you're talking about the orchestra pit? I presume you're talking about the orchestra pit?
There's water coming, there's, there's water coming up. It's groundwater that's coming up. You can't, we can't identify exactly where it's coming from. It's not something that's going to be fixed, it's something that we have to just keep an eye on.
Okay, I never understood that. And Joe, I don't want to spend too much time on it now, but the whole, you know... The building committee came before us and they said, in order to do this thing, we have to build Cofford Dam. It's effectively going to be a boat and it has to be anchored into the ground so it doesn't, water, the water doesn't push it up and float away. And one of the big issues we were on is, is that thing ever going to leak? And the answer is, maybe in the future, but not now. I'm a little troubled by, I've always been troubled by this, that here we are, I don't know how many years in, and the thing's already leaking. I just, I don't get that one at all. And I'm not, it's troublesome to me that we don't know how this is happening.
Because it has to, it has to be looked at while it's happening. So part of what Ralph was talking about in the front of the stage is to be able to get to it because it, no one sees it while it's happening to understand where the source is. So there's an opportunity to monitor it and then the damage in front of the stage, like the wood part, so it's repairing that sort of visual.
For another time.
So Peter, what we're going to do, Peter, what we're going to do to fix the... One of the solutions is to put metal over the wood in, on the front of the stage so the water doesn't wick up and damage anything. So it doesn't hap, it's not something that happens on a regular basis, but it does, it does happen.
Dr. Francis.
I just was wondering if we could figure out, because when we worked on the, this new policy, we were having a very hard time getting specifics about when is the appropriate time for the committee to hand things over. So if you've got information from lawyers that might be worthwhile for us to put in policy, then I don't know if we want to try and do that.
So what I can tell you is, there's not a lot of clarity on it. The town charter talks about the building committee basically submitting a report at the close. It actually never even really says the building committee goes away, so Joe is forever on this building committee. I mean, it's never going to happen, right?
Still on here for that.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, that's, that's the problem. And by policy, we could say that we're accepting a building as complete, right? When is it turned over to us? But that doesn't affect, that doesn't affect much with the, with the acceptance. The building does is allows us to go and seek the final reimbursement from the state so that they do their accounting, they do withholding from the money you get. So for New Lab, I think it's about five percent that they're going to hold until the end. So once we accept that building, we can apply. With MISA and with HamAb, the state is actually coming off of its old system. I guess they've, they threatened by the end of the year. And so we want to make sure that these are in such that we can maximize our reimbursement before the state's old system goes away, their Y2K system.
So let me rephrase that, as opposed to going away, even what the guidelines are for when we accept it?
That's up for, that's up for us to actually determine, right? Is it substantial completion? Is it full completion? Is it when they're ready to seek final reimbursement? Is it CO because we've had buildings that we've put kids in on a temporary certificate for years? So I think we do need to actually set some parameters around that. And I would say there are very experienced building committee members that probably have some insight as well. Because I'm sure Joe wanted to do this while we are.
We can answer your questions if you'd like.
Yeah, if you want to. You want to come on? Get your mic.
There's two things. One is these...
Do you want to get the mic over on the...
I'll stand.
Just for the video.
Just got to hit the button.
How's that? Okay, so there's two things that are unfinished. First of all, the building's been finished and occupied and we have permanent COs. We have substantial completions signed off, all the contractors are finalized. So by most definitions in the building business, this is done, done, done. We have two problems that we thought maybe could be broached through the guarantees and warranties with the contractors or with the designers. And the first one is these pipe expansions. And this pipe, the pipes are long lengths of pipes, but have expansion and contraction, but also have ability to carry noise. And because of the acoustic concerns on the project, we were very careful to isolate all of the pipe joints. The architects and the engineers specified a certain pipe joint, which the contractor then installed. And it turned out that the manufacturer of that joint won't stand behind it. In fact, has gone out of business and doesn't make it anymore. So the new engineer that Dan hired says, look, you can't get these anymore. We thought maybe we could just modify them. And they've come up with a new design that's not an expansion joint, it's actually a V that allows things to happen. So we have a new design and we don't think we have ability to go back as errors and omissions or guarantees because of how it was specified. And I think Ralph said it the right way. It got lost between everybody being acoustically sensitive as far as being structurally sensitive. So that's the first problem. There is a redesign for about sixteen thousand dollars to get the, all of the engineering done and everything else, which the building committee can pick up out of its, out of its funds that it currently has. But the actual replacement is what Ralph was talking about and we don't know what that is for these eleven joints. But there's about seventeen thousand dollars of redesign that we have told Dan to proceed with and we will pay for it. So that's one problem. The second problem is the orchestra pit was, was built very deep into the water and that's what you were talking about, Peter. The Cofford Dam was allowing us to build the pit. It has nothing to do with the leaking of the water. Had to do with the contaminated soil and water that was outside. We didn't want to create a gradient or an attraction, let's put it that way, by digging a big hole and having contaminated water or soils coming towards us. So the Cofford Dam was a temporary measure to, for us to build the pit. The pit was built, it had waterproofing as concrete, everything else, and the pit is very deep. The pit's not leaking. This leak is coming up at the stage level and coming down the front walls. And we think it was a result of us making an educated guess of the design team saying, where does the water table reside? And so we were very careful in waterproofing up to the place where we thought the water level was and where it was at that time. And we don't see any leaks on that assumption. When you go higher than that, we're now getting some leaks where it's coming down the front of the persine. Persine March, you know, the front of the stage, like right there on the right of left. And it's coming down at a very high level. The only place it could happen is either in a pipe leak or something like that, which we looked at and there's nothing there. What we think has happened is that the water table has increased all along hillside and whatever. And we have test wells and various things that are showing that the residual water level is now higher. Okay? The good news is that it's coming from hillside, so any gradient or any water that's pushing is pushing from hillside towards the field. So we're not getting contamination that's coming that way. And which we've tested the water. We had, we took swipes of the water and to make sure there was no contamination of this leak. And there is none. So the real question is, is what do we do? It's like a leaky basement, but here it's not the lowest part of the basement. We have a leak and you can either try, you could take everything apart and try to fix it, which we don't think we could do. We've had various consultants in and see where, because we don't know exactly where it is, other than we know it's high. The other thing is to tolerate it and to change the materials so we know that the damage has been on the wood base of the auditorium in the front. That's the part that has been absorbing the water and it wicks up the space and onto the wall. So what we've suggested is to take the wood base out, that's a laminated base, and put in either a metal base or a solid base so that the water doesn't wick up onto the walls. So it's a remedy of what we, and we've got enough money, we think that's about a four thousand dollar fix. So we, we have enough money to do that. So that's what we're suggesting. Other than that, the performance of the building is superb. The use of the building, the acoustics, the interrelationship, how it's being used, the width of the seats. Everything is really good. So we have these two lingering problems. I think Lauren mentioned, we thought that the first leak that we had with pipe broke, the insurance company is taking care of that repair. broke, the insurance company was taking care of that repair. We asked the insurance company to be proactive and say, "Look, these are going to be future claims. Why can't you help us replace these? Or why would you wait for us to claim two of these break in two years from now or a year from now?" And what we found out is, they're not sensitive to that. So anyway, we are, we have looked, we're looking at that. We looked at errors and omissions, we looked at guarantees, warranties, we looked at insurance company. We think we're going to be stuck with this repair, some of which the design we could handle, but the eventual repair of it may not be. You said there's like 32,000 left over, I think?
No, we have about.
You're going to use 16 of it?
50,000 left over.
Okay. Could I just throw one?
Forty, 40,000 left over.
I don't know if it's repair, but the quiet close on the doors to the auditorium have already, in some cases busted. They screw up the recordings of concerts. So if you guys got any money left over, and it's not considered maintenance and it's copacetic, maybe you want to go look at those doors. They all, they don't quite close, some of them don't quite close anymore.
Okay, we'll look at that. Just out of curiosity, do you know what the residual is we hope to get back from the state if we got every penny?
I think we're about 6 million.
That was a number that we never could fully calculate, because there's a significant amount that's not reimbursable.
So from the total appropriation, if you took the full 20%, we were up at 9 million, we received 4.4 million. I would guess, we're hoping in the range of a million, maybe a little bit more than a million still to come back, but those numbers are yet to be determined.
And obviously I'm asking, because if we have to go do the coupling work at least, we can say there's still money coming back from the building. It's, I'm hopeful, right?
Look, if the work has to get done, you have just a case.
You'll be standing with us, I know. And the other Leslie and Lauren promised to. All right, with that, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of accepting the MESA space. That's eight zero, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And you are not relieved of your duties. You're forever on the building committee. And we have other building committees coming up too, Joe, by the way.
No, three in your row.
All right, thank you. I am pleased to announce the next item, which is the donation of the GHS Piano Funds. Mr. Mayo?
We've been working closely with the organization that's been raising money for this for a while now. And they've raised over $66,000 for this piano that's going to cost about 140 total. So we need to, well, you guys do, need to approve this donation so that we can buy the Steinway. I don't think the BET and RTM have to approve, because they already did in their budgets. But that's just me thinking.
Right. You have to release your, you have to. Release your condition once this money is accepted.
Once it's received.
Received. So once we go to accept it and they pay it into us, then you'll release your condition? And I'll double check it.
But this thing was already approved with the $50,000 gift. So what we're doing is increasing, just to be clear, we're increasing the gift and reducing the amount the taxpayers are paying. Is that what you're doing?
That's correct, Peter.
So even, even though we have the RTM's approval, you're essentially handing them back 16,000?
And the condition is just that the money is received, and that was the way it got, the mechanics of it. So any further discussion? Okay, so moved by Ms. Dayton, second from Dr. Francis. All those who love the arts, raise your hand. All right, thank you. Mr. Scher, was that a yes and that one maybe? Oh, it was a yes? Okay. So that passes eight zero, thank you. All right, next up, budget procedures. Ms. O'Donnell, I don't know where the microphone went.
We discussed the budget procedures during last month, and there was some feedback that has been incorporated into this document, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any discussions? Somebody want to make a motion? Ms. Raven?
I make a motion to accept the budget procedures.
Is there a second? Second for Ms. Dayton, discussion, Ms. O'Neil.
Nowhere in this document does it say that, it says, "The Board of Education shall review the superintendent's proposed budget at one or more budget meetings." At no, no place does it say that the board will have any input into the development of the budget early on, as it did in one of the other documents. Now, I admit this, the new policy doesn't say that, but I don't think that this document is pure policy, that we couldn't say that the board should have some input in the development of the budget. Because what we get all the time is a laundry list, and we're stuck with editing a laundry list without having real input into the rationale and so on.
I also want to point out an item that's getting removed, which we voted on to include last year, and then we didn't have the Funding Core, which is a special education program evaluation slash audit. The idea behind that, when we discussed it and voted to put it in, was to engage an external firm to do sort of a soup to nuts review of our program. Because of budgetary issues, what we ended up with is UConn looking at our best practices, and we still haven't had any results from that. I actually would favor putting back in money to do an actual special education audit. You would put it in this document, because this document signals to the administration what we would expect to see in the superintendent's budget when it's presented to us. So I, I'll do further discussion, but I'm probably going to make that motion. Ms. Dayton?
I think that's absolutely appropriate after the meeting we had tonight. I am not that optimistic about our guidelines from the BET and our ability to actually take on that work. But I think it's essential, and we should push forward and convince the BET that we cannot continue with business as usual. We need to reform and redesign our delivery of special education.
Mr. Scher?
I was shocked to see this taken out, so I'm going to move that item 14, an operating budget, we removed the strike through, and it is added to the instructions.
I'll second that motion. Discussion on that motion? All right, any discussion? So the motion on the table is to put special education back in as a, as an item. That the operating budget will include that. So all those in favor of the motion to amend and add special education back in? All right, that passes eight zero, so now the motion is to accept the budget.
Which is, I think we do have that in our agenda pretty early, like October. So I would just encourage us at that October report to really think hard in terms of the design of what we want that special report audit to do.
So I want to make a motion that was there originally. The board will be included each year in the pre-budget planning, and will be informed of options and initiatives early and the timetable.
Is there a second for that? Is there a second for that motion?
I don't understand.
Well, what the budget planning says now is that we will, you know, discuss the budget issues with three budget meetings, but I thought now that we have a budget committee or a finance committee, or whatever we're calling it, that they would be involved in some of the pre-planning of the budget, so that we don't get the usual laundry list we get, that we then have to edit, without having had any real input into why some of those things are on the, on the list. So it seems to me it'd be a good use of the budget committee to be in the pre-planning of the budget, so that we as a board will be much more informed.
I, so I'm, Barbara, the reason I was asking the question, not understanding it, is I, I, I guess I'm just getting lost from a process perspective. Isn't this document the instructions of what they're supposed to do? That's point one, right? That's why we're passing this now. It says, "Don't bring us a budget that doesn't have, that doesn't follow those instructions." Right? Now, I'll agree. We've not always been great when we get a budget, then go back and say, "Wait a second, we told you to do X, Y, and Z." We kind of deal with it like it's a greenfield thing sometimes? So, and I'm thinking that's a little bit on us. The second part is, is that I totally agree with you. We have a budget committee, and that's what the budget committee is supposed to be doing. So I didn't know if we needed to add for that. And the third thing I didn't understand was, I thought it was already on the schedule where they have to give us the initiatives and what have you. So if we have a budget committee, these are the instructions, and they're supposed to give us the initiatives early in the process. I was just wondering, I'm with you, I'm just wondering, what part am I missing here that I'm not understanding? Without the budget committee, there was never a way of dealing with what you're talking about, and it always got kind of missed. Now that there's a budget committee, isn't this the remit of the budget committee to do this?
Well, it's not clear. That's what I want to make clear.
Oh, okay.
I want to make it very clear that that is where they should be involved in the very beginnings of the budget planning. It's fine to get a list of new initiatives and whatever, but.
Ms. Dayton?
I know that we wrote into policy exactly what the budget committee is supposed to do. It's in our policies, it doesn't need to be in this document. We need to move on and finish our agenda.
Is there a second for Ms. O'Neil's motion? Hearing none, the motion on the table is to accept the budget procedures as amended. All right.
We need to do what she's talking about.
Authority to say to the administrations, "You didn't do what we wanted you to do. You didn't include us." Because it's no, it's not written down. It's not written, it's not there, it's not, not in the policy.
Okay. So, so there's no, okay, there's no second on the motion, so the motion on the table is to accept the budget procedures as amended, do with special education. There's no further discussion. All those in favor of accepting the amended passes eight zero, thank you very much. Now we have to flip to the third page of our agenda. All right, the next item is fees, this is the facility rental rates, Ms. O'Donnell.
Okay. I've attached the proposed fiscal year '20 rates for our facilities. It is the rate schedule that's posted to our website that has been in existence for more years than I, I, I don't know how long, for a long time. And my understanding is that the board is supposed to be approving the rates each year, and so I am presenting that to you for my first time. So the current rates are on the website. The last, based on the way these numbers are derived, the base numbers were from 2005. So I looked through the schedule, we did make some changes. The rates that you're seeing here for Level 1 and Level 2, nothing about that process has changed, other than the rates themselves. So the custodial rate is embedded within the basic rate schedule, and that rate has been adjusted based on the contract. And that has been practiced in the past many years, so each year the rates would change. And that was based on custodial contract rate change. But there is also the room rate that is built in here that needed to be adjusted, because that was really outdated. And so, you know, my team looked at some of, some comparable districts to see what they were charging, and we've made adjustments all throughout. So they're here for your approval, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, can we first get a motion to accept this in the session? A motion from Ms. O'Neil, I'll second it. Mr. Scher, you have a question?
Laurie, I, I didn't, first of all, can you just refresh me on what is the difference between Level 1 and Level 2?
It is town departments and, or not-for-profit organizations versus profit organizations. There's an actual schedule that gets a little bit more detailed as to like the specific type of organization generally.
So Level 1 is, Level 1's all town and nonprofits?
Right.
Level 2, we don't really have any Level 2s, but, okay. The other thing you said, which I don't really get, is, remind me that part on room rates, because that wasn't really our policy.
I'm sorry, on room rates?
Well, you said, the way this is always, these rates have, and maybe nobody ever told you this, I presume they did, these rates have always been calculated only to cover actual costs of running and opening the building for them to be used. There wasn't supposed to be charged any additional monies beyond that. So as an example, these rates have always been calculated as, "If I have to have a custodian for this amount of time to open a building, if I have to have," and it actually covers, it's intended to cover every single one of those costs, but it wasn't intended to be beyond that. So that's why when you said, "Oh, I looked at comparable towns," and the room rate, not the custodial rate, the room rate, you've adjusted based on what other people did, I'm kind of puzzled by that.
Okay, so let me clarify, because there are two, two pieces to this. So when you're looking at comparable districts, what they'll do is either charge a room, a rate for the room, just to rent the room, and then they'll say, "Okay, separately, you need to pay for your custodial fees by hour." What we show you here, and what has been past practice, is this basic rate schedule, which is a combination of a minimum of, of basically four custodial hours, plus the cost that you're referring to, which are, you know, true costs that we realize. And so what I'm referring to as the room rate is, is actually our utilities charges. It's an estimate based on what we're spending on utilities. So I think it is doing what you just mentioned, which is only charging back for those real costs that we would realize, and then adding in the minimum custodial hour rate. And that's what you're seeing as that basic rate schedule. And I'm sorry, that's not super clear, I'm happy to try.
No, that answers the question, thank you. So you're essentially saying, if I see, like, a classroom in an elementary room on a Monday through Saturday, right, it's, this is three hours, but I guess it's, oh, four hours, right? Three plus one. So it's saying 63 bucks, which is around 270, plus you added the utility, that's why it's 283.
Yes.
Yeah. Great, great.
Any other questions on this? All right, so all those in favor of accepting the facility rental rates? All right, that is seven zero. Moving on to the financial report, Ms. O'Donnell.
Okay, so, so this is the report for month ending May 24th. I updated you last month under areas of concern, doing the same again this month. We plan on ending the year at, at break even, and so all the measures that we had put into place last month continue, and we continue trying to ensure that, that we will be breaking even. And so we have released a list of open encumbrances to all the departments to take a look at, where we're sure all of our accounting transactions are correct, and we're just going through the year-end process.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept the financial report? All right, we'll get, we'll do the motion, and then we'll do the discussion. So is our motion, it's on the table, Ms. Raven, a second for Ms. Olson. All right, discussion, Mr. Scher?
I just had two questions. One is, one of the financial report. So is it still the case that that $350,000 accounting miss is still there at the same number?
No, so that actually wasn't an error, so that was actually a charge. We learned that afterwards, that everything was okay with respect to the, that had to do with the, the retro pay. That was all properly credited as it should have been.
Okay, so are we back to the original forecast of giving the BET back, giving the Town Greenwich back its 350,000, or did you go consume that money on something else?
I wouldn't say we've consumed it. When you're forecasting, you know, the numbers can change, they kind of, you know, move around. We've been looking at it week by week, just keeping an eye on things, so. And as we've, you know, sort of stopped spending, or asking departments to do a little bit more in terms of year-end cleanup, the trends that we've experienced in the past may change. But our challenge that we found was really more on the salary side, and so I think I noted in the, in the report that we are, we have been working on sort of shoring up our procedures with respect to how we do salary budgeting, and so that's something we're looking to roll out in the next year.
Okay, so I want to hear that one more time, because, by the way, the thing that is most forecastable is. Because, by the way, the thing that is most forecastable is salary. Okay, so I just don't understand what you just said. It said that forecast we had before, less than 30 days ago, is not holding because of variance in salary accounts?
So the salary lines is where we are trending higher than expected.
And why does that happen?
We are trying to firm up our process of monitoring and tracking our position budgeting process.
So is that code word for somebody hired somebody that they weren't authorized to hire?
No, not at all.
Then what is that?
So the challenge that we had here is that the positions that were budgeted, I'm thinking of the budget book. So you have your headcount, your FTE positions are, those are accurate. The salary budget didn't align with those positions. So we're trending over on salaries and having to accommodate it on the non-salary side.
Wow, okay. At 11:30 at night, but that just begs like 500 questions and I'll just leave them for another time.
Position control is being planned to place. This should never be a problem again. Human resources is working directly with finances. It will never happen again. There was a mistake, it won't happen again.
No, she's raising a new mistake, is what, so she was talking about the $350,000 encumbrance to a labor contract that we didn't account for, or an individual agreement with somebody. Okay, fine, that part was gone, wonderful, fix that. Now I'm hearing about something else, which is...
Right, and to be fair, that was our thinking at the time. We were still digging through the data. And since then, we have learned more, right?
Okay, so here's my second question. And, so let me ask, this is kind of a future question. M&amp;C raises, have those been decided yet? Okay, and are they, are any of them above BET guideline? Are any of, is any individual position above those numbers for next year? Yes, because what I'm trying to, there's people who are M&amp;C, right? We went through that raises episode a couple of years ago. There was an agreement made that if anything was going to be exceeding that, that the board would be notified. The reason I'm asking the question is, are any of them exceeding because it relates to this question of salary and position control? I want to be sure there isn't, I'm just asking the question now because this is the time of year when it comes up. And this is the time of year that the board is to be notified if anything is exceeding that. And if the question is, the answer is no, then there should be no issue because it will align to our budget properly for next year. I don't, well, I'm supposed to ask the superintendent. The superintendent figures out.
I want to succeed in that, Peter.
Okay, so we're, so this, because that's the only area where you could have a position control. Because all the other ones are, department heads have budgets, they have headcount, they have total dollars, and they can't be hiring in a way that exceeds their budget. True?
I'm not following, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm just following along with what you said. What you said is, is that the reason there's variance in the budget this year is because we have position control problems. Let's break that down. That says, you, in your department, you have a certain number of FTE. Okay, that's one component. You're not allowed to exceed the FTE without an approval, presumably, right? As well as you have to get the salaries of those FTEs to fit into your department budget that's allocated for salary, right? You can't go hire an FTE at some crazy number and meet your FTE number, but blow through your dollar number for your salary budget, right?
Sure, right.
Okay, so what I think I heard you say is, part of the reason of this variance is those two things are not managed together in someplace. Right?
Sure, that's, right. I mean, I guess that's a piece, that could be a piece of it.
How else would it happen? It's rate times bodies.
Right.
How else would it happen?
So at the time that we were budgeting, this is a manual process. So we have a process by which we know our headcount, we know our FTEs. But we have to align those FTEs with salaries, which most of them are known. And then there are those that are vacant and we have to assume estimates. The amount that was budgeted in FTEs did not align, there weren't enough salaries that aligned to those FTEs. So, you know, where they were, there was a disconnect because it's a manual process.
So now I was just asking the question. You guys are going to get that under control for next year.
All right.
Yes, we've been working on that for the past six months. Because we knew that this was something that we needed to improve anyway. It just so happens that as we're, you know, nearing year end and looking at our numbers.
And the only other place it could happen in the future, because you're going to have those under control, would be the M&amp;C. So I was just asking, the question is, do we have it? So that M&amp;Cs, if nothing's above M&amp;C rate in the future, we won't have that part of variance in that part of the budget next year either. Right? Okay, that's just my question.
Okay, Ms. Tate.
This is a systems problem, not a management problem. We've always known we didn't have position control. From the time we acquired Munis and the BET brought it and said, "The town and the Board of Ed, you guys are on the same system." We said, "Well, there's certain parts of the system that don't work well for the Board of Ed." We've never had position control. It's a system problem, not a management problem. It's going to be fixed. Lumen Shapiro is going to help us. It's going to get done.
Ms. O'Donnell.
I have a question for Bob, just because he got me my Uber eats, so I have to give him a question. So first of all, congratulations. Looks like we've hired pretty much, everything's done. Assistant principal here, right? We have headmaster at the high school, whatever, et cetera, et cetera. But I think you updated me last time, but you updated us again. The director of communications job, because Kim is not going to stay at it much longer. Has that been approved by town HR or where are we on that?
Yes, that was approved by town HR, was posted by town HR on the 12th, which was yesterday. Closes on the 26th. They're going to try and get us a list, you know, score it and get us a list by the end of that week. Tony's hoping that, Dr. Jones is hoping by July 8th, she'll have had a chance to review the list and be able to set up a group of candidates to prescreen and then present those to a committee.
Sure.
So what's the plan over the summer? Because that means that we probably don't have anyone until September. So do we have someone sort of on an interim basis doing Kim's job?
I think Mr. Mayo can speak to that a little bit.
Thank you, Bob. Waiting to say that all year. Anyway, yeah, Tony expressed to me that she could pick up the slack if there was any stuff going on that needed to be dealt with. Because they don't have a communication officer in Fairfield.
All right, so shifting gears.
We've already made plans to pick up the print shop from Kim, so that'll be taken care of.
Thank you, Ralph.
So shifting gears, I want to thank Lori and Dan. So this year, capital projects, 83 projects closed, $370,000 returned to the town. These are projects that have lingered on and on and on for years. Thank you for picking that up and continuing to drive that forward. I love seeing the list of older projects be basically building committees and nothing more. So thank you for all that work. All right, any other discussion on the financial report? Hearing none? All those in favor of accepting the financial reports? That's eight zero, thank you. All right, agenda planning. So before we actually get to the items I wrote down, I note that we have a budget transfer listed as a written report tonight. Were this not a special meeting, I would have made a motion to move that out. And I'll explain why I have any trouble with what's in it. What I have trouble with is, I look at the state statute about budgets, and it is the Board of Education that has the authority to transfer funds. It's not the administration's job. That needs to come to the board. So I know we have that for next year on our agenda plan. We need to keep that as a practice. State statute, it's not kind of a discretionary thing. Anyway, on our agenda plan, so there was discussion earlier about transportation policy and possibly taking that up. Given that there's no, given that there's uncertainty as to the policy, I wonder whether it makes sense for PGC to take that up before we try to shoehorn a meeting onto the summer calendar. Transportation policy, you were the one who asked about it. Before we take it up, I think PGC needs to take it up, so that they can go out and find.
Yeah, no, I agree. I, I, I mean, I know Ralph is not wild about us even opening this conversation, but you know, it's, 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 the administration can only do what the board specifies. So if the board hasn't clearly specified this, then I don't know how Ralph or Tony or whoever operates. So I think we've got to go look at this. I think it has to go to PGC. The question that's going to come up, though, is if we want to make a decision, and Ralph has highlighted, right? The prior administrations were not implementing this, maybe they should. He uncovered it, and we are where we are. You know, it seems to me that, I mean, I don't know any other way to do this other than the board clearly changes its policy. That provides a clear instruction to the administration. Unless somebody wants to say, "Hey, don't change anything until such time as we've had the chance to amend the policy." As Ralph has explained, I don't know how you do that. Because if you, if you say, "Okay, I'm going to keep doing Eagle Hill," right? The policy isn't clear. He has an interpretation of the policy, right? "I'm going to keep doing Eagle Hill," then he feels like he's exposed with Cromwell Academy. So it seems to me the board has to clean this up and specify, otherwise the administration doesn't know how to operate.
I have interpretation of state statute, not board policy.
Well, the state, yeah, but the state statute says we're required to do it above 50. It's silent below that. So it doesn't say, "Oh, by the way, you have to take it away below 50." So that's the part where the board has to step in, I think, and clarify that policy vacuum. And I think we have to do it, and I would encourage it to go to PGC. The question is, how quickly can PGC take it up, look at it, evaluate it, and then potentially bring it back to the board?
I would say the issue is that if there's an opinion of the board, then PGC's job is to try and figure that out. I mean, it's to me is sort of a fairly clear one way or the other. And the three of us can think about it, but it's going to be the eight of us voting on it.
I agree.
So.
Peter said, "Someone has to vet it first." We need a draft policy.
Right, we've learned how this works. We need a draft in front of us. And I will say, the other thing, just practically speaking, is we see these at one meeting, we vote on them the next to go beyond that. Somebody will have to make a motion to suspend the rules so that we can vote on it at the same meeting we hear it. So just telling you process wise how this will have to play out.
All right, this would be unusual for us to do this quickly.
Well, then I'm on a different point. Maybe we let that thing run its price, place. But the question then before the board is, how are we going to solve this problem? I'm in the mode of, I'll make it clear where I am. I understand what Ralph is saying. I understand why he's saying it. I agree with him. He's just trying to be a good fiscal steward on behalf of the board. Thank you, Ralph, for doing all that. I think the decision we've made is not the right decision. The question is, how do we deal with that as a board? The decision that the administration has made is not the right decision, given timing, all the rest of it. And we need to figure out how to give clear instructions to the administration what to do.
Ms. Tate.
I'm not in favor of giving any instructions at this time. We need to turn to our regional education service center, whose mission it is to provide special education transportation, get some consulting, have the superintendent report back to the board.
I'm sorry, just clarification. I think we're really talking about private school transportation. We're not talking about special education transportation. I agree with what you're saying about RISC. I just wanted to clarify, I think we're talking about private school transportation for students who are residents of Greenwich to private schools located in Greenwich. We're not talking about anything else. I'm sorry, but our current, our current is, yeah, that sounds calculated. I don't think that's our obligation. This is where we need a legal clarification.
I think we should look into this, but I think we should look into all the ramifications of it. Eagle Hill is one case, but it could be, impact other schools, maybe not at this time, and what that impact is and what that cost is. I think it's a more complicated problem than just Eagle Hill. And I think we should take our time and look into it and make sure that whatever we develop as a board policy, that it truly did it by Wayne Fox and that we have, we've really looked into this. Not just Eagle Hill, but all the ramifications of all the private schools that we have in town.
None of the other private schools are even close to 50%. They're well over, except for Common and St. Gerhard. They're getting close to the non-transportation statute.
It has a right now to administrative decision.
I just, I mean, I agree with what Mr. Sher is saying right now, just because I feel like we've done it a gross disservice. And I think that it's something that, it does need to go through the proper policies. I don't know the answer. I don't know exactly how to solve it. I certainly don't know how to do it at 11:51 at night. But I do think that we need to reevaluate what we did and how we go about this because we're affecting families, we're affecting children, and that feedback in the Greenwich public schools. And it's upsetting, and something has to be done.
At this point, it's not an action item this evening. If somebody wants to propose having a special meeting and dealing with it then, we can try it that way. If we want to ask PGC to go off and work on something and bring it back at a special meeting. But we need a path forward that everybody agrees on. So, Mr. Sher.
If, you've made the argument this is administrative decision, it's not a decision for the board. I think otherwise. So if this requires board action to do, then I think we need to have a special meeting soon that is about this topic. And I, you know, if I, do you want me to propose? I move that the board schedule a special meeting for the purposes of discussing transportation for private schools this September, to be implemented this September. And that is scheduled as soon as possible.
Second for that? All right, so there's a second for that. Any discussion on that motion?
I was just going to say that, why don't we take it up on policy and then, right. And can we, we can even do it ahead of our July 8th, knowing that we're all available then? We can just...
We would want to schedule a busy separate session because we want to do that meeting as a discrete topic.
Right, I'm sorry, you could maybe make it at like 4:00 or something, I'm just saying. Just because we know that data is available to all of us. But first we take up a policy and then it's ready for that meeting, is my point.
All right, is there a second, there's a second on Mr. Sher's motion, so the motion's on the table. And it's a TBD, so we have to actually find a date anyway, so it doesn't preclude that from moving forward to PGC. Before that, that probably would be very... Okay, and we have further discussion on Mr. Sher's motion. So the motion on the table is to add a special meeting to discuss transportation services with a decision to be made for services for September. All those in favor of the motion? All those in favor of the motion? So eight zero. So we will look for a date to do the special meeting. We'll figure out when PGC is meeting in trip. Okay, so anytime after the 20th. All right, I will shoot an email around for available dates. Okay, the only other thing, let's see. July 8th, 7:00 PM, we have a session with Dr. Jones for goal setting. with Dr. Jones for goal setting. And then Ms. Eaves, I'm sorry, we're not going to adjourn this meeting. That way you're still in our employ. That's my plot. I don't think there's anything else to add to the agenda for this year. We now have adopted our agenda planning for next year. So with that, you have something to say, Ms. O'Donnell?
Yeah.
You can't make the motion, there's your own back.
If we wait eight more minutes, Megan turns 40.
She's turning 35 again.
30, no.
30?
No, no, no. My kid's just turned 10 today. I already celebrated last night.
All right, so with that, Dr. Francis, did you have something you wanted to say?
I moved to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that. All those in favor of adjourning? Yeah, we are adjourned. Thank you for the one.